What? Heck, Ron's case is around here.
Yeah. Yes. Uh-huh. I sit Willie right over there and Mr. Forrest. Uh... Yeah, Willie. That's yours.
That was available.
And bring one up.
James.
Bring that one up for James. Uh, uh, put James, bring yours on over right in there. Yeah, so he'll be sitting right there by Ron.
Hey, how you doing? We can see him.
Okay, uh... Before we get started, I just want to extend a congratulations to the newly elected, uh, city leaders. And, uh, if there's anything any of the... I almost said old council members can do, but, uh, Ron might get a little mad with me if I say that, so I'll say if this old council member here can do anything, I'll give you all, um, my opinion, a little history from time to time. Please call me and let me know. And Willie, in case you didn't know it, that's my cousin right there.
Was that right?
Yeah, that's my cousin right there. You see that, Ron? See, now, I've got some white folks in my family, too.
Okay.
All right. All right. Uh... And Jeff? Where's Jeff at?
Right here.
Congratulations, here.
Well, thank you so much.
Congratulations. I was looking for you. I didn't want to get started until you...
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh... Mr. Bradford, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I know your dad is a good beacon. Would you mind coming up and just giving us a word of prayer, please?
Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for an opportunity today to serve. We thank you for an opportunity to address the issues of the city of Shreveport. We hope and pray that this work session will be progressive and an opportunity to do more for this city. Thank each and every one of these individuals and bless each and every one of these individuals who are gathered here today to do your work. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, young man praying like that.
If you face the flag, enjoy me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please?
Here.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Oliver Davis.
President.
Mr. Corbin.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Shine.
Present.
Mr. Fanderson.
Right. Okay, uh... At tomorrow's session, we will ask for the minutes of the... In the approval of the minutes of the administrative conference and city council. Uh, Mr. Sealy, we have any recognitions from the mayor?
Not at this point, Mr. Chairman, pending the mayor's arrival downstairs. George, you may have some comments or recognitions when he comes down.
I'm sorry, I'll be.
Yes, sir.
Could you send and get, uh, some hard copies for each one of the new, uh, elected officials so you all can kind of follow us on your hard...
Thank you.
Do you have one, Ms. Tyler?
No, sir, I don't have.
Okay, get us one, please, and if... And if... Okay.
But I mean, Councilman Shine, I'm sure you're going to let him use your iPad going forward to get into all this other kind of high-tech stuff that we got here.
Councilman Jenkins.
I may just want to make sure.
You know I need my iPad.
Councilman Shine's using the Google Glass.
Is he on the Google Glass?
He's waving on the iPad.
You know I need my... You know I need my iPad. Uh, Mike and I was talking about that area. I told him I'd have to follow...
Did he help me download a few apps?
Yeah, yeah, indeed, I have to follow. And if you all have a pen, then we'll try to get you... Uh, y'all got... Okay, you got a pen? Okay. So you all can write on them and kind of follow us. Uh, uh... Ms. Tyler, I'm an old-school teacher, and I believe in taking notes, you know? Kids come to my room, make sure you got a pencil and some paper.
That's right.
So you can take some notes. I'm just... It's just a part of it. Okay, uh... A warrant and recognitions of anybody by council members? Okay, newly-elected members, do you all have anything you'd like to say at this point? Or you all just want to sit and listen? I mean, is there anything you all would like to say?
No, we just want to sit... I wanted to sit and listen and learn today.
There you go. There you go. See, that's the sign of a good schoolteacher, you know? You had those conferences, and we sit and listen, so we'd be ready to go back. Okay. All right. Uh, since the mayor's not here, uh... Mr. CEO, you got anything you want to say at this point?
Not at this point, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for the CIO.
All right.
Hey, Dale, when we talked about revenue numbers, and one of the reasons we said our tax revenue numbers are up, correct me if I'm wrong, is some change over at LSU, right? That that...
Part of it.
Part of that entity is now taxable, right? Okay, can you, for tomorrow, or maybe already know this, of that percentage increase, what percentage are we getting, whether it's a whole number or a percent number, as a function of that change? Because I don't want to... We get a little discussion about why our economy's changing. I'm not really sure. It's just now we're getting revenue from some before that we weren't getting any revenue from it. I want to make sure when we're talking about forecasting revenues, we're not seeing a growth number, we're just moving one bucket over to another, and the rest of it is static or declined. And so I want to make sure we're distinguishing that as we talk about revenue generation numbers for our budget for next year, okay?
And that's correct. And it is, as I said before, and we'll talk a little bit more about it perhaps tomorrow with the sales tax report, but between the private... The matters that are now subject to taxation because they're considered private and the second-largest element was the activity at the port, you know, with the construction activity and the durable goods, the big-ticket items that have been bought out there. But I'll get one thing that I didn't include, I sent you guys the sales tax report, but it didn't include a breakout by class. We'll get that. And I think if you look at the last couple, you can see how the class is... The good thing about it, whereas everybody expected to be mining like it is with the parish, it really not for us. Mining actually went down, but you had cars coming back up, you had the health care sales, and you had those large, big-ticket items. But we'll get the breakout by class by tomorrow.
And I just want to make sure that...
And that down.
Because I don't want to, you know, and we're saying, hey, I don't know, that's not really a one-time item. Now, clearly, the port is probably not a sustainable issue in terms of building. Now, hopefully, you had a product line, but I'm sure it's not going to be... The sales are not going to come to the city on a product line. So... But on the other thing, I mean, that's not really growth, it's just different categorization. Now, hopefully, it stays flat, and that's our new norm, obviously, but I don't...
You look through... You can look in other subject line categories, and there is a pattern of growth in some of them. There are some that, you know, may spike one month, and then it's not there. But there is a pattern of growth generally in several categories. I know Dale mentioned cars, but really even general retail and some of those do show sort of a steady... I mean, it's not dramatic, but it's there, so...
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Jenkins, I talked to the sales tax administrator about it and about the hospital numbers, and she thought that a lot of that was because of construction or the purchase of equipment, one-time construction or the purchase of equipment for the hospital.
Okay.
Some of it's because... She said that they had been online long enough that you wouldn't have that much of a spike. And she thought that it was for construction of hospital-related facilities and/or hospital-related equipment, a large part of it.
Okay, so that's not necessarily that particular... I mean, that could be Schumpert's growth at Highland, it could be Willis Knighton's growth at Greenwood Road, not necessarily red to... Okay. So I guess that my question is if there's a way to get fidelity on a percentage, that'd be great. If you can't do it, it's too hard, I got it. But that's globally what I'm trying to be able to assess is what are we really talking about, growth and what's just a one-shot? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Let me send this to the newly-elected members. If it's... If there's anything that you don't understand about the budget and, uh... Ms. Tyler, I know you have worked with budgets before, and you know how important it is to get those budgets right. So if there's anything that you all don't understand, the CIO, uh, Mr. Thompson over there, and that's not really gray hair, that's just a frosty hair, it's like mine, uh, and Jackie who's sitting next to him, those are the people that can really explain to you about what you need to be aware of, what you kind of need to know on these upcoming budgets about sales, taxes, and all of this, because, uh, I've been down here long enough to know that people will talk about you if you don't... Especially when you... Money and religion are two things you don't play with, you know? You need to know, because people with those are very emotional issues, so those people can... And, you know, you can go to them and call them, and they'll come to your office, or you go to theirs, and they'll sit down and explain to you what you need to know, because that's going to be... That's going to be very important. And it's going to be... The money down here is different from you dealing with your money at home. You know, if you're at home and you make a mistake, it's just you and your pocketbook. But down here, if you make a mistake, it's going to be everybody in the audience. And they'll... And we've got some news people here that will have you on the news in a minute. So make sure you got a good idea, a good reference point to deal from. And anytime that you need to stop us and ask us any questions, feel free to do it. Okay. And, uh... Okay, Ms. Farnell. Where is Ms. Farnell? Is Ms. Farnell here? Oh, she just walked out. I believe you check on her. Okay. Ms. Scott? Where is Ms. Scott?
She might be out with Ms. Farnell.
Okay.
There she is.
Ms. Scott, you want to... You want to come up and say anything?
I'd be shocked.
Okay, Ms. Farnell, we'll... As soon as Ms. Scott, we'll be ready.
I don't have anything, Mr. Shine. The bond forfeiture report was emailed to you all earlier today, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have in regard to that.
Okay, Ms. Scott, thank you. Ms. Farnell? Anybody have any questions for Ms. Farnell? Anybody have any questions for Ms. Farnell? If not, Ms. Farnell, you got on pretty easy today. I don't know whether that's because we've got new members here or not, but...
Mr. Chairman, uh, she shared with me before the meeting she's got some illness in her family, so on the pass along, anybody be in prayer for... Who? It was your...
My brother.
Your brother and your...
My grandson.
Grandson. Serious health issues, so we'll keep you in our prayers.
Your grandson would be with you? Good old...
No.
Oh, okay.
He's eight days old.
Oh, just born?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Ms. Farnell, we'll all set prayer for you.
Thank you.
All right. And you know, I'm a preacher's son, so mine's probably going to go on for you.
Yes, sir.
If not, Ms. Farnell, you have anything you want? If not, thank you then.
Thank you.
We'll call on you shortly.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Andrews was sitting there. I thought he had a property standard issue. Ms. Farnell, are you familiar with Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Andrews generally...
I'm on... I'm on... I'm on... I'm on... Yeah, I'm on get to you in a few minutes.
Yeah, I have this information right here.
Willie's still in the process of learning, but I'm on get to you... I'm on get to you in a few minutes. And Ms. Farnell will still be here. All right. Mr. Sweeney, you, uh, have anything you'd like to say? Anybody having any questions for?
I'm pertaining to the master plan update. I just wanted to let you know that we did meet with our consultants, Cameros, and back on November the 18th through the 20th, in which we provided them with comments on the Unified Development Code for the internal review process with all of the city departments as well as the parish departments' comments, as well as my division's comments in terms of what we feel like needs to be addressed with the UDC. The plan is for them to do a second draft of the UDC that will be ready for us by January the 14th, and then we will review that. And my strategy going forward is to start the process for public input, hopefully in March, in which we'll have a series of open houses for the public to attend and provide their comments on the proposed UDC. We will also take that time during that same week in March to go out and do special presentations to various groups, such as the Real Estate Association, Home Builders Association, other various groups that are very interested in what we're doing in terms of the UDC, in order to come back with all of the necessary comments to make it correct and effective and what the public wants to see presented to you for your approval later in 2015. So we have a lot... We have a very intensive schedule coming up, both in February as well as in March, and I will be back to report to you on how we're taking those steps, because unless we get everybody... Well, as many people on board as possible. I mean, I realize not everyone's going to be happy, not everybody's going to get what they want, but if you have the buy-in from the public and the development community going forward with the UDC, it will make it a more effective tool and one that you can feel proud of and one that you can feel comfortable approving when we submit it to you toward the end of 2015. Any other questions?
I have a question. I have a question. Um, you weren't here at the time, but during the time that I served as chairperson of the MPC Subcommittee, my first initiative was changing the UDC.
Mm-hmm.
And my second initiative was to establish the SCORN Council, Shreveport Council of Neighborhoods. How familiar are you with the council on neighborhoods, and have they been meeting? Are there any minutes available, for any minutes that are being held? Because the whole idea of SCORN was to keep the citizens informed throughout the different districts and the different neighborhoods. So can you kind of bring us up to speed on, you know, have they been meeting and what's been the, you know, the source of their meeting, you know, based on...
Sure.
Our... You said sure?
Sure. What basically is, I'm actually not familiar yet with that particular group. I am not aware of the fact that they have been meeting, so therefore that's something that I'd have to go back and check on. I know that as part of their outreach for the UDC, the neighborhood associations are going to be vital to that process and being able to reach out to the neighborhoods to get their input. But if that is a good tool for us to utilize going forward in that process, we'll certainly look into that to pursue that.
Well, actually, the purpose of establishing SCORN was so that the citizens would be, you know, informed ahead of time from any new zoning or development issues that were coming into play within the various districts. So, I mean, if they're not meeting, then that means our purpose has been defeated at even establishing this group. So I'm just curious as to, since we were established from last year...
Right.
Have they been meeting, and what's been the source of their meeting, and any feedback? Are they receiving... Is SCORN receiving any feedback from Cameros and the MPC Subcommittee or Board?
And I would have to go look into that, because I'm not familiar with that. In fact, that's the first time I've learned of it, so I'll have to go back and do some research to give you an answer to that question.
Could you bring us that information on tomorrow?
Uh, yes, we can.
Thank you.
We can certainly bring that to you and let you know exactly what's been done, and if nothing has been done in terms of that area.
Yeah, I need to know.
Yeah. And again, like you mentioned, these are things that predate me, so I'm not being familiar with it.
You weren't here when we got started.
I, you know, I can get myself involved and figure out what's going on and give you some type of a report.
Would you please?
Sure. I know they at least met a few times because they elected officers. I remember hearing that report that they did select officers. Since then, I'm not sure what their schedule's been.
Well, at the time, Dara Sanders was the liaison person.
Right.
She's gone now, and we have an interim person? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, ma'am. I'm actually in the process of getting ready to advertise for a position.
For the job that Dara had?
Right.
Okay, because I worked closely with Dara.
Right.
In getting established. And of course, I was there when they elected officers. I attended, like, for instance, the first two or three meetings, and I'm aware that they have selected officers. My concern is, you know, based on the agreement, this council was to be formed, and in forming this council, this council was supposed to conduct business. My concern is leaving the council, if we actually have council members or any staff that's going to oversee and make sure the SCORN or this council is actually meeting to address issues throughout the various districts, if not, then the establishment of SCORN is in vain. So could you just kind of find out...
Sure, absolutely.
What they've actually been doing, because the community is expecting feedback from, you know, the Metropolitan Planning Commission as well as this council when it comes to zoning issues or developments within the various communities.
Absolutely. We will try to give you something tomorrow.
Thank you so kindly.
Any other questions?
Anybody have anything else, Mr. Sweeney? Uh, Mr. Sweeney, if not, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Job well done.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may, just in the spirit of Ron's recognition of Ms. Farnell, I wanted to note, although it is a very private matter, Ms. Fields is not here today, Assistant CEO. She's dealing with a very tragic situation with one of her siblings. We don't have a lot of details yet in terms of arrangements or what else is going on, but I did want to note that she's not here for that reason. You know, it's ironic in that we're discussing the budget, and that is her, you know, her specialty, but I wanted the council to also enlist the thoughts and prayers of everyone for her and her family, as well as Ms. Farnell and her family.
As well as Ms. Stewart. I believe she lost her brother, is that right?
Yeah.
We've got a lot to go around and did a lot to pray about today for many of our coworkers and employees.
Linus.
Oh, yeah. I understand that she lost her brother. It's an internal audit to Ms. Stewart.
She worked for Mary.
It's a lot going on.
She was working for Mary when she got killed.
And, uh... To the newly-elected members, too, that's a very important person, internal auditor. Thank you, Mr. Jones, of you. Ms. Tyler, I know you've worked with public money before, so you know how important an internal auditor is. They can either throw you under the bus, or they can save you from getting thrown under the bus.
First term. First term.
Willie, that's somebody... Because, well, I think you know already. Yeah, okay. Okay. Uh... Mr. Thompson, we have no public hearings, right?
That's correct.
Uh, any additional legislation?
We have one item. We just received, Mr. Chairman. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city, the Shreveport Garden Club, Study Club, and Kilpatrick's Roseneath Funeral Homes Prematory Forum and Cemeteries. So that can be added to the agenda tomorrow and voted on at the next meeting.
Okay, we'll add that for tomorrow. That'll be something that we'll add tomorrow, and, uh...
I had a question about... Was there some legislation from Community Development regarding the Paint Your Heart Out surplus paints?
Mr. Chairman, I got a title, but I don't have the legislation yet.
Ms. Scott, you want to come? Dress down.
I think it's really just a question if we have everything we need to add it to the agenda tomorrow, I guess.
Better come on up, eh?
Thank you, Mr. Everson. There will be another piece of legislation we will ask the council to consider adding tomorrow. Mr. Everson has indicated that he would be glad to make the request to you. It will be an ordinance from Community Development declaring certain paint that was left over from the Paint Your Heart Out program and the World Changes Program to be donated... to be first declared surplus and then donated to nonprofit organizations. And this legislation is submitted by Community Development in response to an audit finding. So it will be a three-reader. We're simply asking that you put it on the agenda for introduction, and we know it won't be adopted until sometime in 2015.
How much paint are we talking about? It makes the audit... What's the threshold of...
And Bonnie can correct me on this. The finding had to do with the fact that there was no procedure in order to dispose of the surplus.
So one like a material issue? It was just a factor one percent?
No, no, no.
It's like 10% of your budget. It's like, that must be a lot of...
I don't think you're painting the town.
I hate to correct the city attorney, but it was not an audit finding, and we do have procedures in place. It's to keep us from getting an audit finding.
Okay, I got you.
Bonnie, if you'll get that to Mr. Thompson, and we'll just do them all together tomorrow.
Sure.
You get the information to Mr. Thompson, and he'll be glad to deal with it.
I sure would.
He's a very compassionate man. Did I get it right on?
I don't know.
Okay. Uh... If you all don't mind, we just... We only have two people that would like to speak, uh, public comments, and let's get them up, and so that they can get home and go grocery shopping. I'm an old farm boy, and Mr. Bradford probably know what I'm talking about, go out and milk the cow or feed the chickens or whatever. So, uh, Mr. Andrews, would you come up and give us your name and...
How does that Mercedes convertible do on that country road when you're going out there and milking cows?
All of it... All of it being messed up.
Holds up the same as his leather jacket.
Uh, Mr. Andrews, is yours a property standard case?
This is property standard.
Is that what it is? Property standard?
Coming up here.
Uh... Let's... Let's come... Where is Ms. Farnell? Is she here?
All right.
Uh, come up a little closer so you can hear what Mr. Andrews said.
Twelve on the commission?
Okay, Mr.... Give us your name and your address.
My name is Darrell Andrews, 2222 West Argonquin Trail, Shreveport, 7107.
Mr. Andrews, before you get started, Councilman Shine, could I kind of bring you all up to speed?
Sure.
So that the newly-elected official will know that I actually scheduled a meeting here upstairs with Arthur Thompson, myself, and Ms. Dorothy Farnell and Mr. Andrews. And of course, this is his information here that he submitted to me as his representative, and just wanted you all to know that we've actually met regarding these issues, maybe about, what, three, four weeks ago? About a month ago?
Yes.
I mean, he's good at keeping records, but it was...
On November the 5th.
Right. So about a month ago.
This concerns the vacant lot west of 2516 Willis Street. Trees were cut on this lot. The large trees were removed from the property, and remaining branches were put in small piles. Plans were to get the city trucks so that these piles of branches near the street could be loaded. I called the city about getting the pickup truck, but no luck. Additional calls were made on 7/25/2013 and on 8/2/2013. I spoke to a Ms. Lavano Williams about the issue. I finally made contact with a Mr. Terrence Green of Solid Waste about getting the truck. He said he would check on the lot. Later, he called and said he checked on the lot and found it to be, quote, "quite much." I did not hear any more about my request for the truck, therefore, my original plan for removal of the branches that were left was on hold. I feel in trying to get the truck, I should have been notified whether that request was approved or denied, because my plans were to have the small piles of branches put on the truck. I also questioned the amount of the bill that I received, $6,150, and I questioned in this meeting, how was this arrived at? The expenditures that there were, bids submitted. I requested for the bids, and I received three bids. One had no bid on this particular bid, and the other, one of the others, I could not ever find out what kind of business it was for that third bid. I called the business bureau, and they didn't find any information on it. Now, I requested copies that I later got from the SCORN L. Now, I wanted to get... Now, I wanted to get her email so I can make a formal request for copies of the bid. I could not make the request in writing about this. It appears that she misplaced the email that we had, that I gave during this meeting, Mr. McCullough. And as a result, I received this bill of $6,150. Of those three bids, only one seemed to be legitimate. And my question is, is it normal policy to have three bids or two bids?
Ms. Farnell, you want to answer that phone, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may just ask, this is a matter set for appeal?
Okay.
And the question's whether or not the council wants to go ahead and do the appeal now, or just note what the gentleman's saying and take it up in the regular agenda, because Ms. Farnell's ready to present it as an appeal, but, you know, normally that comes a little bit later.
Right, let's just, let's just note it right now, Mr. Andrews, and she's going to come back up at that part on the agenda and then to appeal. Didn't realize that that was an appeal.
Yeah, we can suspend the rules, can't we?
Thank you very much.
We normally do that sometimes.
Yeah, we can sometimes, but let me, uh...
Can we go ahead and suspend the rules?
Well, no, just a minute. Ms. Farnell might not be ready. It looked like she's still trying to get some information, because she didn't know it was going to come up at this time on the agenda.
I thought she was leaving, was it? Is she leaving? Is she going to be leaving?
No, she's leaving tomorrow.
Yeah, she's leaving tomorrow.
Ms. Farnell, are you ready to handle the matter and wait for the normal appeal?
We can let it come up, and Mr. Andrews understands, if she's not ready, you understand, you want to give her a chance to be ready.
When I signed in, I left a copy of the three bids.
Okay. Are you ready, Ms. Farnell?
I couldn't now. I couldn't either.
Okay, right, well, let's, and Mr. Andrews understands, just wait and come up when she's ready, Mr. Mayor. And I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to see you in. I saw Ms. Tyler sitting over there, and I guess I got a little ahead of myself. I called her mayor after watching, after watching the news Saturday night.
Well, that would be appropriate, Mayor-elect, at the very least, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, I thought it would be, but, you know, I didn't want to get ahead of myself. I'm known to do that from time to time. I was, I was born two weeks early, so you know how that goes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. We're going to pull you back up. I believe I got one other here. Monette, is that? I can't read the first name. Okay, okay, Cynthia Monette, right? Okay, come on up, Ms. Monette.
To the council, this was an appeal as well.
Oh, this is an appeal?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, just waiting to miss, Ms. Farnell is ready. Okay, and, uh...
Confirmation on appointments?
Yes, we have none.
Yes, sir, we do. We actually have two boards with appointments pending.
Is that, is that?
I defer to Mr. Thompson on the appointments and confirmation.
Okay.
Whether they're ready?
We have several, Mr. Chairman. The Historic Preservation Commission Board, Tammy Phelps.
Is Ms. Phelps in house?
No, sir. She's not.
Okay, you want to just read the other names offhand?
I know one of them's here because I can see her.
Who is that?
Adrian.
Oh, yeah, all right, all right.
But she's probably pretty well-versed on all these people, I'm going to guess.
Okay.
Just guessing, without, without going very far on that.
Mr. Thompson?
Chairman, for the Greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission, I think we have about nine. Do you want me to read all of them on the agenda?
Please, please, Mr. Thompson.
Reverend Lindy Broderick, Trina Chu, Dr. Adrian Critcher, Dr. Sherri Kerr, Dr. Lenny McCray, Reverend Roosevelt Seaberry, Prentice Smith, Frank Thaxton, Dr. Felice Williams.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Critcher's here in the audience, and she's trying to contact the other potential members, indicating whether or not, I'm not sure who's here today as opposed to tomorrow, but, Dr. Critcher, are any of the other guys here today?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to get any of that on the record officially?
Huh?
Would you like to get any of that on the record? You may want to come forward.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, because you're going to do this tomorrow. We don't, we don't necessarily have to, have to have that on record. You know, I trust you, and I see these other people up here trust you, so, you know, just do that, and we'll be ready for them to come up tomorrow. And I'd like to say this to the new officials. I'd like for you all to see a, see the names of them, since we're on our way out, and even the mayor's on his way out. Willie might be somebody that you might want to add or whatever, and, 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 Ms. Tyler and Mayor-elect, you have a final word on it, and we don't want to tie your hands on something that you might not necessarily agree with, because I wouldn't want you to do that to me. So, and I know all these are good people, but we just at least want to give you all the, the respect. Take a look at them before we pass.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the mayor? Mayor James Flurry, are any of these people from Southern Hills on this, that you're submitting here? Um, I'm not quite sure. Mr. Flurry?
Wouldn't you think it might be prudent to have someone from out there?
I think it's prudent to have a good cross-section. I'm not sure if there's anybody from the Cooper Road either, though.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's what I was about to say to Willie. Willie, you might want to look at and, 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 because you know, so many Brackford's and a whole lot of other people from the Cooper Road that you might want to include. That's, that's what I'm saying. We don't want to just, you know, we on our way out. We don't want to really tie your hands.
Chairman, can I say this?
Yes.
Back in 1991, I was a member of the original Shreveport Human Relations Commission.
Hazel Bead.
Yes, and the, the important thing, and I think, I think representation from different, different areas of the city is important. But I think as, as important is the diversity of the commission.
Right.
As it relates to reflecting this city and to, and to have the common interests of the betterment of the city. And I, if we get into demographics, that, that may create something, but I, I would love to see the faces, certainly. And there's a lot of components that I think should make up the Human Relations Commission. And I'd just like to see those faces to see if indeed, in my opinion, does it reflect such importance that, than I think the mayor has indicated. And, 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 Mr.?
Come on up, come on, come on up, come on up.
And while she's coming, just know that the resumes are available for those new members who may not have seen them. They should be available in the council office to review.
And James, that was, that was a good point that you brought up. You know, you need to, you need to start looking after those folks who elect you.
I'll just, I'll just take a minute. I'm Adrian Critcher, 817 Ontario Street. I think the mayor has sent all the current council members a list of the people he's appointing with a little description about them, but of the nine members, five are female, four are male. We have four African-Americans, four people from the white community, and one Asian. So we feel like there's a good representative diversity. And if you look at the qualifications for the, for the members, everybody brings some area of expertise that's going to be needed on this commission. We have people with MBAs and PhDs in human relations, human resources. We have someone from, Lindy Broderick, from the Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce. Prentice Smith has an MBA and has worked in business as a journalist. We have people who have experience in education and holding diversity workshops. Frank Thaxton is a mediation attorney, because just like in New Orleans, we expect that most of the cases will be handled through mediation. Trina Chu is also an attorney, and she has experience in diversity. So the people that the mayor has assembled on this commission bring a lot of different areas of expertise that will be needed. And I think they represent a really good diverse group. I don't know how many can be here tomorrow. They all are working, but we'll reach out to them and see how many can come. But I think it's just a really good cross-section of people. We have two members at the clergy. Even though religious organizations are exempt from the Shreveport Fairness Ordinance, I still think it's important. Religion is an important component of all of our community, and Lindy Broderick and Roosevelt Seaberry are both ordained ministers. So I think we have a really nice diverse group. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer it.
Adrian, I think that's a good point that you're making, but this is also a political decision.
Sure.
And if you get in trouble with your neighborhood down there, they're going to tell you, let Adrian elect you. So, and this is why, elect mayor, I want you to be able to, to, to take a look at this, and if you all think it's good, then, you know, go through with it. But if you think that there's somebody that, that you need to put on there, I don't want to tie your hands, and James, that's a good point that you brought up. I want you to have an opportunity to, to look at it, because after I leave, I'm down here, nothing I'm going to be able to do for you in Southern Hills. And, and the mayor's not going to be able to get you elected back next four years to keep people from criticizing me.
Okay.
And I was sure that you made that.
Sure.
But I still want to give you all an opportunity to take a look at it, to see, you know, if it's somebody you want to add on there, if you think you need somebody from Southern Hill, I don't blame you. You know, because that's, those are the folks who elect you, if you understand what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, just keep in mind, as you think about people that you might want to recommend, really, there's only two requirements. They have to be a resident of Shreveport, and they have to support the principles of the Shreveport Fairness Ordinance. So those two things are the only requirements. And certainly, it would be helpful if they brought some area of expertise to the commission. But the only two requirements, residents of Shreveport, and they have to support the principles of the Fairness Ordinance. And that's all, that's all available and online.
That's, that's good, but, but, James, there also could be some people that live in Southern Hills who could bring the same qualifications to this. Like Willie said, he was back in 91, and because Willie, I happen to be one of the council members who, who got together with Mayor Bead in order to bring this together. And we had a little, little friction back then on where they needed to come from, what groups they need to represent, and that kind of stuff.
And with that said, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and you said it, and I just want to ask just for yes or no. And you mentioned the Fairness Ordinance twice.
Yes.
One of the issues that we was confronted with was the gay and lesbian representation. Is there, is that represented here?
Yes, there are two gay members, there are two gay people who are on this list, and seven straight people. Yes, and because that is part of the Fairness Ordinance.
Seven people who you think are straight, and you had, maybe three, four.
That's a good point.
Right.
That's a good point.
I've been down here long enough, Willie, to know that, you know, you had to be careful about what you say.
That's right.
You know, you had to be, you know, you had to be a little careful, and you want to make sure you dot all i's and cross all t's.
We're just going by how these people self-identify. We're not trying to out-nobody or make any kind of...
Never know what goes on in that room.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's move on.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay.
Section eight, Mr. Chairman, consent agenda legislation. There are no items to introduction. There is one for adoption. Resolution 230 accepts dedication for River Shape Drive, River D Lane, and River Run Circle in Riverside Village Phase One.
Okay, any questions, a discussion on this? And Reverend, I'm sorry, did you, you got appealed to, right?
Sure.
Okay.
I got it, sure.
Oh, you did?
I was glad to hear that.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, too. Thank you. Okay, no questions, a discussion? Let's move on, please.
Section nine, regular agenda legislation, sub-ay resolutions on second reading and final passage or which will require only one reading. Resolution 212 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and the Parish of Cattle for the private water main extensions and related facilities to serve Maggie Lane. This matter was previously postponed, I believe, for advertising.
Okay, Mike, you have any?
President?
All right.
President?
If not, let's move on, please.
Resolution 213 authorizes the Shreveport Police Department to accept a donation of $14,500 from the Shreveport Police K-9 Citizen Support Group for the purchase of a new police dog. This matter was previously postponed.
Any questions, a discussion? If not, let's move on, please.
223 authorizes the mayor to sign an engagement letter and agreement between the City of Shreveport and BKD LLP for an external audit of the City of Shreveport for fiscal year January 1, 2014 through December 31, 2014.
Any questions, a discussion? If not, let's move, please.
I have one.
Hold it just one minute.
Okay, on that, obviously, that's a fixed-price contract when I read it. Any change in, probably Lenys knows, but, anybody know if there's any different significance, significant delta in that change?
I think there was a change in the number, but I don't think it was huge. I have both contracts, I can get that for you.
I was just curious. I mean, it's, it's a big number for a fixed contract, that's why I was curious.
Right. I don't think it was a huge change, but I can apply that for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Sibley, please.
224 authorizes the mayor to execute a signal maintenance agreement and a mowing and litter pickup agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development.
Any questions, a discussion?
I guess the only question I have is, is that enough to do? I mean, do we get enough, does it, did we generate those numbers? I mean, there's some of those that came in a little lower than I thought that, in terms of the labor required, particularly when I said that litter cleanup deal, I was like, if we did it on an hourly basis, I just want, I mean, if we generated their number, if there's a number per square foot or how that number comes?
Let me, let me say this before you start. And I, I hate to keep referring to this, but Ms. Tyler, as the mayor-elect, this is something that you really need to look into, because if the grass isn't cut, and, and I think that's one thing in your campaign, we're going to clean this city up, and we're going to pick up paper. I'm just making sure you look in it, look, look at this contract. If you need Mr. Harris to properly sit down and talk with you about it, Mr. Harris, I would appreciate it if you, if you would, because she's going to be held responsible. And I might be one of the people out there jumping them down, telling them, look how much trash and, and all the, the grass and all not cut and all this. And, you know, TV cameras will come to me in a minute, and I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to be saying that, and that's why, you know, you need to look at, you need to look at the contract very closely, and see if it's going to meet all of the qualifications that you, and have all the i's dotted, t's crossed that you want in there. And, and Mr. Bradford's been an attorney, you might want to sit down with it here. Okay, Mr. Harris, go ahead.
Mr. Shine?
Yes.
I'm just wondering to answer all of those questions. Would that be 121 miles, 121.37 miles to answer your question?
Yes.
You wanted to know how much per square footage?
No, my question was, okay, so, the amount of money is, according to the contract, $214,060. At least, that's the way I read it.
Right.
And just...
Not to exceed.
Not to, and I think about that, I think, that's a lot of miles to be maintaining the road edge and the litter, and I just wonder how we, do they, does the state give you that number and say, this is how much you get per foot, mile, or whatever, and then...
It's probably per mile.
It's, it's not enough to cover the cost that we actually spend on, on mowing the state highway, picking up litter. I think the contract requires maybe about a minimum, maybe about four mowings a year or something along that lines. We, we mow it probably about every three weeks. And so, it's a, it's areas within the city itself, and we want to maintain those areas at a much higher level than what the state is willing to do.
Okay, so why would we, why would we agree to this, then, if it isn't enough to cover it?
Well, then, the state would then maintain it at that level. If we were to not to sign the agreement, they would just back away. They would say, well, okay, the responsibility back to them to maintain. I think it's been this way for, for several years, based on what I've, I've seen.
Okay, so what does it cost us to maintain this now, or whatever?
I could have to pull those numbers together.
Because, I mean, essentially, we're agreeing to something at 40, 40 cents of the dollar, 60 cents of the dollar, and I mean, I understand that then we kind of control our own destiny, it moves along with our plan, then we can do some kind of economies of scale, concerted effort, really nowhere the money needs to go. I got it. concerted effort, really nowhere the money needs to go, I got, but.
They're paying for, they're paying for minimal, Mr. James, that's what your guts tell you, that's, that's what happens. But what the department does, and you guys recall all the discussions and the mayor's directive, and y'all about cleaning up, the department actually goes beyond what the state is paying for. You know, we, we very seldom get real value out of the state when they're paying for these contracts. But if, if then his guys only cut what the state requires, then you guys would get in a ton more calls than you do, so he's just picking up the rest of the cost within the department.
And that's basically what the state does, and I keep on, Mr. Towah, you worked with the state before. You know, basically, the state doesn't do anything, they pay for minimal. Now, uh, when my friend, Dale, my friend, gets to be governor, then I'll pick up the telephone and call him and say, go, you know, we need a little bit more money being free.
That friend in here, Mr. Sean?
How you doing?
He's sitting next to Dale, right over there, that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, here's.
I was David Villa for Halloween, not today.
Okay, okay.
I didn't know that was true.
So, so, okay, but the way I understand this, right, currently now, and maybe I'm missing, I mean, we talked about this about a year ago, I believe, is when the mayor proposed this kinda idea, I mean, this idea that we're gonna start taking on something, but they're gonna pay us for it. So the way it is right now, we get, the state does some amount of service on these roads.
Uh, the state only maintains the driving. In terms of litter and pickup, they do not do any, anything on these roads.
So this contract is just providing a subsidy to the city to go out and mow.
Exactly.
And if we walk away from the contract, the state will mow it four times a season, where we may, we may use this subsidy and some of our own money and mow it 12 times a season.
That is correct. We're providing a much higher level of service than what the state would provide. They're providing the $214,000, we use that as just a contribution to, to help us to, to accomplish what we want to do. To give you a good indication, also, the sweeping program that we'll be starting up probably in late spring, we'll be sweeping, you know, interstate ramps as well. That's additional things that we're doing that the state does not, I mean, that goes beyond what they do. Our goal is to try to keep the city clean as much as possible, so.
And, uh, Mr. Harris, I'm concerned about that, because I got a couple of interstate ramps that come down in my district, and, and I get calls about it, saying, hey, look, I, you know, it's too many cigarette butts, it's too many paper, too many cans, and all that kinda stuff. And, uh, uh, James, they be looking for you to get on top of that.
Right. And that's also some things we want to address with the sweepers ever gonna get.
Good. Okay, uh, you know, again, uh, Mr. Harris, I kinda recommend that you and the, the mayor-elect and council members-elect, make sure you take a look at it, 'cause.
One question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and, and we're, they're giving us subsidy money to cut state highways. Are we getting equal cuts across the city, or are you just cutting as needed? 'Cause I don't feel that our area gets as many cuts as Yuri Drive does, for example.
Our, what we do is, we.
I think all of them know somebody now.
That must be one of you.
We've contracted out our, a lot of our Boulevard system, the, the mowing, parts of our mowing that requires a little bit more detail, and that's mowed about once every three weeks.
Okay. 'Cause I know, I think it was last year when we, uh, our contractors walked off the job, so to speak, and then we had to take up the slack to do the state highways, and that's the reason we got behind in our inner-city cut.
Well, what we did was, we had a contractor that was mowing our state highway department. What we decided to do was start the mowing of the state highway system ourselves, because we had the equipment, we were better fit to actually do that. Most, this contractor only had like one, one tractor mower.
Yeah, they got their big bush hogs.
Right, we have over 14 tractor mowers, so it was more efficient for us to take over that system.
I agree.
And then in return, we contracted out a lot of the Boulevard mowing that we do right now. And you probably know it's a big change in the, the level of the, the quality of the mowing that we see on our Boulevard systems right now, so. Uh, and so that was a better, better deal for us.
Right, and my last question, the term, so it really is from backdated all the way to July till June going forward?
Yes.
Sorry I brought it up. I mean, when you, you have to argue about a deal if you found much.
It's already halfway done. Anything can handle it.
Okay, sir.
All right, thank you.
Proceed, Mr. Chairman. All right, thank you. All right, Dale, please.
Again, we're on, uh, resolution second reading, final passage. Number 225 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Shreveport and Hope for the Homeless, and this is regarding some Levy Street properties that are being donated.
So, just to give everybody a brief, briefing on this, 'cause I know we've dealt with a few matters at this, generally, the same site. Um, Hope for the Homeless is the area where we've consolidated some of the, um, different service providers that work with the homeless community, um, so that they can share resources. And what this will do is, Christian Services has a, um, has a, uh, a program that they would like to expand at the site, but due to the parking requirements from the MPC, they need some additional parking, this would provide that. And so the amendment is clarifying some advertising, um, language, just to make sure that we don't have any question about how long it needed to be advertised. Um, and then, uh, passage of the full, um, resolution would allow, um, a shared use of that, um, land for the improvements to be made to have parking on-site. So is the 99-year agreement include the improvements as a performance character of the other party of this cooperative? I believe so, yes. Is that, that's accurate, right, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Bonnie's not.
She is, okay, good to go.
Okay, uh, no more questions, observations, Mr. Sibley, please.
Number 227 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Economic Development Corporation and Module X Solutions LLC in connection with the Award of Economic Development Award Program Funds. And this is the old MBI site out in South Shreveport.
Any questions or concern? If not, uh, I'm trying, is, is, is that in Mike's district of?
It's in Councilman Corbin's district, I believe.
Yeah, that's it, okay. He said it is today. Uh, he don't know what it's gonna be tomorrow.
But is this flip over to James's district?
Yeah, James, did you, did you hear that? That's gonna be in, that's gonna be in, in your district. Dale, I'll read that again, so James will be on top of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The railroad tractor, slap.
You want, you, uh, you wanna read that just one?
227, I think he's following, he has it.
You got the written, the hard copy.
227 is regarding the old MBI, the old Beard facility out there in South Shreveport.
'Cause you got a group of people who will be concerned about that.
And it, and it's a 1.8 million from LD, or LED to, for renovations to facilitate the expansion of modular. We're just a passer, I mean, on a deal, right, Mr. Harris?
But, you know, you still kinda wanna be on top of it, you wanna always have your, your A-game.
Yeah, there's some good things going on out there, and I think that the mayor intends to get Mr. Schoonover company here, hopefully not in the distant future, just to update everybody on what's going on out there.
Please, please.
Wonderful.
All right, Mr. Sibley, um.
It represents, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, represents the first good news that we have had in a very long time about the old Beard facility. Uh, Steve Schoonover and, and his wife have taken over this effort, they've taken over, uh, all of the obligations of the old MBI folks. Uh, they've gone from what at best were a few dozen employees that worked intermittently, uh, to now having a commitment, uh, to somewhere just south of 400-plus employees. Uh, and so it is, uh, moving forward, uh, with great growth potential, uh, into the future.
And, uh, I keep on, I hate to keep on saying this, but, uh, Ms. Towah, I'd be on top of that, and that, and you could say, look, what I've done the first six months in office, and James, you took, you can say, look, look what I've done. Now, if it doesn't go good, then they go.
They're gonna me.
No, no, if it doesn't go good, it's just like coaching football or basketball. You know, the head coach always get, you know, if he play good, that, oh, he's a, a super coach. And if he don't, then, oh, look, you don't know what he doing. Okay, Mr. Sibley, please.
Resolution 228 amends resolution number 97 of 2012, which authorizes the expenditure of citywide street improvement program funds for certain street improvement projects. This is regarding the Woolworth, Woolworth Road Bridge Replacement Project.
I'd like to have your, uh, support on that, on tomorrow. The city engineer, I believe, addressed exactly what it is we will be doing.
Uh, Mr. James, good job, great job, okay.
Resolution 231 declares the intention of the city of Shreveport to proceed with the issuance of not to exceed $77 million street improvement bonds in one or more series for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing, paving, and improving public streets in the city, including utilities relocation, and incidental sewer and drainage work required thereby. Make an application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of such bonds, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
I know we're gonna get some, some, some feedback from the mayor, but I'd just like to say, Willie, uh, James, and y'all excuse me for saying, uh, Ms. Towah, I always, I used to call Cedric Cedric, 'cause, uh, Willie, I was old enough to be his daddy. Uh, but this is something that you all need to make sure you be on top of, because, uh, streets, and it's gonna be one of y'all's priority. 'Cause, uh, uh, I got an old Jimmy that I drive up down the streets, and when it's knocked out of line, I'm gonna be coming to y'all complaining. And so I just, you know, and I don't want you to say, well, you know, they tied our hands before we got here.
Well, we're still looking for that fourth vote, so, uh, if you wanna jump on.
No, no, no.
Might save your car.
No, 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 no.
He must make his wife, yeah.
You won't get the fourth vote from me. Definitely, I have to give you that fourth vote, 'cause I want you all to make sure that, uh, and Willie, I think he had a few words you wanted to, uh.
I do, but I, I was gonna wait, but if this, if this is appropriate time, I would happy to address the issue of, of spending.
Okay, well, I tell you what, why don't you go down to the podium now and, and address this issue? Because Willie, if it don't work out, you're gonna be the first somebody I come to. And that's why I want you to say, Joe Sean tied my hands. See, Jeff is gonna be here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and my, uh, reason for coming here is that, uh, I've had the opportunity over the last few days to review, uh, some budgets, especially in regards to the amendments that's gonna be presented to the council for today. The, the issue of the street and the, and the bond issue that was passed three years ago to address some of these streets, I think was, uh, uh, delayed in a way that created this last-minute scenario. I think, uh, any, uh, spending or indebted the city at this juncture, when some of you would not be around to be held responsible for the outcome of the commitment that you would be making by spending, would be unfair to the mayor-elect and to the city council-elect. Again, I, I, my position is that after four years, you've had opportunities to address every issue that would be prudent to this city. I reject any last-minute obligations that you would, that this new council would incur, especially in the, in the areas of, 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 uh, unnecessary, as well as, you know, a spending spree, if you may, you know. Oftentimes, mayors and governors and, and even presidents, company, people who know that they are leaving office, will look out there and want to get rid of everything that they can get rid of, and leave their predecessors, uh, without the necessary resources to conduct business, because we don't know what emergencies may come about, you know. Uh, in my research, I saw where the Riverfront Development Fund even now has a deficit. And we know that the, uh, that the casinos are not, are not, are not, are not responding in the way that they was 15 years ago in, as relates to, uh, funds coming into that, into that account. I'm look, I looked at the general fund budget, uh, the street special fund budget, those, those things are, are there to, to, to be available to, to, to the council. And if we leave any, any funds, uh, use all the funds out of, out of a council and try to balance something through, through the amendments, uh, recommendations of the administration, where we cannot provide the leadership and the, and the decision-making that, that we require, then I think that's unfair to the council. So I'm just saying to you that my granddaddy was in the hay business, okay? He baled hay when the sun was shining, he did delay it, because it was gonna rain one day, and he did not want to see the hay left on the field, okay? You guys have at least two more, two more, two more term, two more meetings before the, before the, uh, next, next council take office. I know the budget has to be approved at least by the 15th of this month. I think it's incumbent upon you to respect us, to allow us to look at the totality of the bonds, of the, I mean, of the, of the budget, as well as the, 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 the necessary spending that we think would be, uh, appropriate to address the needs of this city. Because again, there are a lot of, uh, uh, and I use the words, the swat, strength, weaknesses, obstacles, and threats, but the threats that, that this city will be, uh, would be looking at in the, in the next few years. You know, the risk fund, the retirement fund, you know, I, I'm shocked at the hotel, that obligation to the hotel responsibility, the convention center is not subsufficient. Listen, we, we gonna, we gonna inherit a lot of things, and I'm asking you to, 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 to reject any additional amendments or spending that, that the new council could evaluate and look at, because there, I mean, there's, there's too many issues that are, that are confronting us that for you to tie our hands before you leave office. So, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate this opportunity, and I, 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 I really hope that you will be fair to us, and not tie our hands and impede what we feel would be necessary for the direction of this city, especially with the fact that you won't be around to be held accountable for it. And you said it several times to Mr. Farah, that they can't call Ron Webb.
There you go.
Okay, for, for his vote today, or tomorrow. But they will be calling him, my constitution will be calling me, and they will wanna know. Why didn't y'all say something before they did that? And I'm just saying that to you, who've had four years to address whatever you need to address, not to impede us or tie our hands and allow spending to be done, that it is unnecessary at this juncture. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me say this just for you, will you see? I appreciate you saying that, and I want, and, 'cause it seems like you know it, but, uh, James and the new mayor, those people who supported you, uh, two weeks ago, two weeks from now, will turn right around and be against you. So you gotta make sure that what decisions you make, or what decision is tied up, that you are responsible for. Because, uh, friends will do that, don't mean a harm, that's just business, you know? They, 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 they're your friends now, Mr. Bradford, they went out and voted for you. But, uh, if somebody else makes some bad decisions for you, they'll come right around and say, well, you know, I shouldn't have done that. I shouldn't have done that. So Willie, you are exactly right.
Chairman, I, I, I pardon, I've been, I've been around these chambers long enough to know that even, uh, we here today, you guys, as well as the mayor, have referred to your predecessors as incumbenting you to do your job.
That's right, Willie. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm glad to, to hear, uh, Mr. Bradford, I guess, go on record early, and, and being against fixing the city streets.
Well, I don't think that was what he said.
What, Mr. Chairman? I did it up to him, I'm not going to review, so I'll let you speak until you.
Okay, okay, well, go ahead on, I'm sorry, go ahead on. Let me, let me apologize to you, Mr. Mayor.
No, no need, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm glad to hear Mr. Bradford go on record early, um, as being against fixing, uh, the city streets, um, because that, that's good to, to know and to hear, and for it to be clear. But let me also offer and correct that, uh, in addition, myself, along with yourself, and all of the other current members of this council, uh, we have an obligation. all of the other current members of this council, we have an obligation to lead and serve the citizens of Shreveport, up until the appointed time and hour that our successors take on those duties and responsibilities, and to not forsake that at any point, at any time before then. I can't speak for you, Mr. Chairman, or anybody else, but I know I intend to do just that. Having said that, unlike what has just been represented, this has not been an effort that has attempted to make hay at dusk, just before the sunset. In fact, this is an effort that started in the aftermath of the April two thousand eleven bond issue, a hundred and seventy-five million dollar bond issue, largest ever in the history of the city of Shreveport, that unfortunately only included about thirty-plus million dollars for streets, and of only about twenty-one million dollars of that, that was unencumbered. And this council took those twenty-one million dollars and did not use any sort of system of being able to try and establish any priorities because of the amount involved, and simply divided it equally amongst the seven council districts, and each of you went out and had three million dollars upon which to, to work with the administration to come up with street priorities. In addition to that, this administration, in conjunction with Councilman Sam Jenkins, with the support of four members of this council, proposed an increase in the Swep Coke franchise fee, which took us from two percent to five percent, and created a revenue stream that has now consistently generated, I think, seven-plus million dollars per year. It was our belief as an administration that those monies should not only be dedicated towards street improvements, but because that we have a four-hundred-plus-million-dollar street infrastructure program, a problem rather, that it was no way for us to be able to effectively address that problem by simply trying to go with a pay-as-you-go method. And so we suggested taking those dollars that had been passed in the bond proposal, and then taking the new revenue stream and leveraging those dollars, and being able to acquire a larger pool of dollars so we could go out and be able to make a significant step towards fixing the city streets. Now, we started the first version of that in October of two thousand eleven, and Mr. Bradford and others, unlike yourself at the time, Mr. Shine, who actually was for it at that time, came out and spoke against it. Unfortunately, it did not have sufficient votes to be able to pass. That was the first of what is now eight versions of various efforts over the course of now three, four years, to be able to try and fix the streets of the city of Shreveport. Now, if you don't like that approach, as I've said to you and other members of the council and the public as a whole, let's come up with some other ideas. None of those have been forthcoming. You either continue to try and do the pay-as-you-go method, which will not get you very far on a four-hundred, almost half-billion-dollar problem, or you have the option of trying to go back out for a general obligation bond. There's not any interest or appetite for doing that, although we do have the bonding capacity to do so. You can hope that monies will come from Baton Rouge, but not forthcoming. You can hope that there might be some largesse that may come from Uncle Sam in Washington, DC. That's not happening either. In fact, the six-plus-million dollars that we got as a result of the two thousand nine stimulus program, that could have gone towards street improvements for the city of Shreveport, ended up being required by Governor Bobby Jindal in order to fully fund the I-section of Interstate forty-nine. And that's the portion that runs between Highway one and one-seventy-three, not even in the city limits of Shreveport.
Did you say thousand, a million? Six million?
Six million, I'm sorry. Six-plus-million dollars that would have come as a result of the federal stimulus program that did not manage to make its way into actually improving the streets of the city of Shreveport. But we made that decision because we did not want to endanger the possibility of the governor deciding not to fully fund the remaining three sections of Interstate forty-nine. Dealing with Governor Jindal is something that Mayor-elect Tyler is very familiar with, so that's be something that she will have a chance to be able to reengage once she's sworn in. But either we can choose to do nothing, we can choose to attempt to do a pay-as-you-go method, we can consider the possibility of a general obligation bond, which involves taking up additional ad valorem capacity, or we can look to try and leverage in the manner in which we're doing here, in an effort to come up with a version of a street improvement plan that would be reflective of some of the concerns that have been expressed in detail by this council. We went from a hundred percent pledge of those new revenues through the franchise fee to only half, and that was reflective of concerns expressed by Councilman Everson, Councilman Webb, to ensure that we had still the ability to have a portion of those dollars available to address other budgetary issues, challenges, emergencies, or priorities that might develop, while at the same time still being able to go out and do a significant amount of street work. In March of this year, in fact, Ken Creff with the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association reminded me it was March twenty-first of this year, we managed to get Mr. Creff, who was the chairman of the Street and Drainage Subcommittee, for the two thousand eleven bond proposal, along with his co-chairman, along with the president of the Shreveport Council of Neighborhoods, along with the head of the South Highlands Neighborhood Association, along with the representative of the MLK Community Development Corporation, along with folks who represented the Cedar Grove Neighborhood, as well as a, a portion of other citizens across this city, and we took an afternoon-long tour of the streets of the city of Shreveport, along with Councilwoman McCullough and other leaders, and Robert Westerman, where we went and actually drove and inspected the streets of the city. And the consensus that came from the citizens on that, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, was that we needed to have a street program somewhere in the neighborhoods of about seventy-plus-million dollars to be able to do something about the streets of the city of Shreveport. And so that's where we again find ourselves, for the eighth time, coming before this council, and I think you must have had a senior moment or a Freudian slip, Mr. Shine, because you admitted and acknowledged that as soon as you get off the council, you're gonna be concerned about the streets getting fixed, and if they don't get fixed, you're gonna call back down here and look to hold somebody accountable for fixing your truck if it ends up out of alignment. It's a clear indication...
Well, I'll call somebody, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna be back down here.
Well, and it's a clear indication, Mr. Shine, that the streets are, are in need of being addressed. I'm going to look to try and press that issue up until the very last date, of the very last hour, of the very last minute, of the very last second that I'm here, because I believe it is something that is important to the citizens of this city. In fact, and I will point out to you in closing, that if you go and refer to the Times KTBS poll that was done, who should be the next mayor of the city of Shreveport, as well as one of the great concerns of this city? The number-one most identified concern, Mr. Bradford, was not crime, which it certainly would have been some twenty-four years ago, when I first came on board as the council representative of District Eight. It wasn't crime, much to my surprise, and I guess to a certain extent to my pleasure, because it speaks to the extent to which we have effectively addressed the public safety issue, but bad streets beat out crime, Mr. Shine, by eight percentage points, as the number-one concern of the citizens of our city. That, to me, is a statement that rings very loudly, and that should compel us, as an administration and a council, to come up with some sort of a solution that allows us to be able to go forward. Now, in leading this to this point, we had expressions that came from some members of the council, that once we got to the point of passing the budget, we wanted to come back and reexamine this issue so we could see where we are. I hope that's where we are. I sent out an email communication last week to councilmembers, asking them to see if, if they've had a chance to review the situation, and see if we can have any greater degree of comfort, and, and come up with something that allows us to come up with an approach to go forward. So whether it's this council administration that seeks to address this problem, or the next, Mr. Shine, it's a problem that's not going away. What I'd love for us to be able to do is to be able to not have to allow the new folks who will come on board, the learning cycle that will end up extending the timeframe, costing us more money, because the more time that we waste, the worse condition the streets get in, and the more costly the fix becomes. It's more expensive now than it was in two thousand eleven, it'll be more expensive in late two thousand fifteen than it is in two thousand and fourteen, and it'll be even more expensive come twenty sixteen. And so this is something that we should have the willingness to be able to address, and not ultimately end up having it be another can that gets kicked down the road. This council stepped forward, we addressed the issue of the consent decree. That particular program is in place, it's ahead of schedule, and it's going forward. Issue involving the unfunded liability within the pension program, made a hard vote, did that which needed to be done, that issue is behind us, we went from being underfunded to now putting ourselves in a position to be ninety-plus funded within a reasonable timeframe, going forward. We've addressed that. Let's do the same thing involving the streets, Mr. Shine, and see if we can come to some consensus and go forward.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna prolong this, I don't really think that was what Mr. Bradford was saying, I think I watched some of his campaign, and his campaign letter too, and, and matter of fact, I spent a few days with him, seeing how he was campaigning, and that was one of the things he said. "I'm about fixing these streets on the Cooper Road." Now, when I first got on the council, Ms. Tyler and Mr. Bradford might have still been in high school then, but we had a hundred and twenty-eight miles of oil-dug streets. So, uh, we had so much dust out in Moretown and some of those other areas until, Willie, I thought I was standing up in the country. And I think the mayor was probably in junior high school, uh, uh, back then, and, and we had a hundred and twenty-eight miles of oil-dug streets. It was coming out then spraying chemicals on the streets. I didn't know if the little kids were going out there, and a lot of them would go out there and put that dirt in their mouths. I didn't know what long-term effect that it would have on, on the development of those kids. We got rid of them. So now, I know you don't know any better by saying that we are against fixing the streets in Shreveport, we're not. I understood what Mr. Bradford said. Mr. Bradford is saying, "Look, ain't much you can do in two weeks, no way. You can't even get to the bond commission, no way. So don't be sitting up there talking about, you know, you for fixing the streets right now." Like, I think Mr. Bradford might have said that we've had three years to, 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 to get a hand on this problem, and even if we would pass this tomorrow, I, and Oliver's a good bond man, and Oliver, I'm not gonna ask you, but I don't even think we'd have a chance to get to the, get to the bond commission to get this started. So, Willie, I agree with you. I don't think we need to sit here and tie y'all's hand, because watching Ms. Tyler's campaign, that's what she was saying, we need to do something about these streets. Everybody up here is about knowing something about the streets. And talking about crime, Willie, I believe you kinda, Cedric might have been in high school then, either right out of high school, when y'all got, what was the organization y'all found on Cooper Road? I think you were...
The Kingsmen.
Yeah, the Kingsmen, the Kingsmen. So I know about crime, I've been down here thirty years, and I know about doing streets. So, let me finish now, I didn't, I didn't cut in on you.
I was asking Mr. Bradford, of course.
So, so please, please, let's don't have this lecture anymore, I mean, you've lectured this for the last, I don't know what, and everybody out there know you for doing streets. Everybody up here is for doing streets. I, you know, I just don't wanna tie their hands with a vote for the next two weeks, and that's why I emphasize to y'all, please, take a look at what we doing, because Cedric is gonna be gone, I'm gonna be gone. And, and if your hands are tied and you can't do what you need to do, you all are gonna get the blame. I don't wanna do that. I remember when Barack Obama came in, I guess for the first two or three years, everything was on George Bush, and then it got to the point, "Well, it can't be on George Bush now." So, Willie, I want you to say that this is on Josiah. I want you to be able to make the decisions like you said. So I agree with what you said, you didn't say nothing about you were against fixing streets, because I saw your campaign letter too. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call on Councilwoman McCullough, and then, Mr. Mayor, let's move on, 'cause I know we're gonna hit this tomorrow. All right, Councilwoman McCullough.
Yeah, and we've been kinda hearing about, hearing the proposals that the mayor have been presenting for almost three years now, and so we're looking at a two-week window now, but the mayor has been presenting proposals, as he stressed, eight different proposals to do an overall fix-the-street program that started three years ago after I got on this council, so although we're looking at a two-week window, with the old councilmen's coming off and the new ones coming on, I think what the public needs to know, this is not something that was just proposed to this council, this has been proposed for the last three, almost three years, and it's being constantly voted down, which, you know, coming off the council, I would like for my constituents to know that this is something that I have supported for the past three years, versus, you know, you being led to the fact that I was only interested in one street, I didn't wanna fix any more streets in the district. My support of these proposals was saying, "Look, let's fix a number of streets at one time in the city of Shreveport," and I've been supporting that District Eight for the past three years, and it hasn't passed by a four-vote, four-seven vote on this council, for the record. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman, we appreciate that, and I think you got that over to your constituents when you were running for reelection, but some kinda way, they didn't, I guess they didn't hear. Mr. Jenkins, again, I wanna make sure, you know, I can't call on you sitting out there with you raising your hand. Pass the ordinance, you're supposed to know better than that. You're one of the leaders in the community, you're minister. Uh, Sam, we appreciate you passing the ordinance, bringing the ordinance to the council about increasing the franchise tax for doing the streets. Okay, uh, let's move on, Mr. Sibley.
Again, we're on second reading, final passage, number two thirty-two, suspending facts of certain provisions of Chapter one oh six relative to zoning for property located at ninety-four twenty-eight Forming Road to temporarily allow a mobile home to be used as a dwelling.
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak on that, I'd like to bring the council up to the speed where we're at on this. A constituent called me in reference to, she has moved a mobile home onto the site, it's a one-acre lot, she has an eighty-five-year-old mother that she's wanting to be the caretaker, and at one time, there was a double-wide on this property, and the, her son removed the mobile home two years ago. And so she has since moved the single-wide, excuse me, onto the property. When she went to get a permit, she realized she had put the cart before the horse, hadn't applied to the MPC and all that. Councilman Corbin, I know you're familiar with that particular road, there's very few residences there, and we just recently passed a, a resolution allowing somebody to build a barn or an enclosed building to put his heavy equipment in. But I told her what I would try to do to help her is go ahead and temporary, let her get her permits to get her utilities hooked up so she can move in to take care of her mother, and she has made her application to the MPC, at least I hope she has, I told her to, and she's gonna be down here tomorrow to ask for mercy and to allow her to move forward, and knowing she's gotta go before the MPC to get the approval, and if by some chance the MPC doesn't see fit to allow that, you know, she can still appeal it to us or, or whatever, but if, whenever that process runs out, if it is denied, I told her I'd give her sixty days to remove the mobile home if the council doesn't see fit, and the MPC doesn't see fit to allow that. So I guess tomorrow, I'm just asking for a little Christmas mercy and let her move forward and help her mother out.
Just a question, a question, Daron, and there's three of these things on the agenda, sadly, today.
Okay.
Two down in the, either rezoning deal or some, but anyway, and it's amazing that, I mean, all we've had is that one issue that was a huge issue up here about keeping a trailer on a property. So I have to say that my signals are up there about a little caution on this here. So, understand that she is there care, assisting the caretaking of her eighty, eighty-five-year-old mother, right? Now, not that I wish any will on her, but when she passes away, which will inevitably happen, what, what happens at that point?
Uh, I don't know, if, I have no idea, I mean...
Does, does her use of that lot for a mobile home, is that like in perpetuity, or just...
Legislation says temporarily, but I don't see a date in there where...
Well, there's, there's two things, but when I read the temporary, that's till the MPC's...
Well, yeah, the way their cycle runs until...
Well, yeah, the way their cycle runs until February, and she doesn't wanna wait that long to move in. So I'm basically wanting to give her that until she can get the zoning approval through the MPC, and if it's denied, then, you know, she would have sixty days to remove it unless she wants to appeal it to the council, and, but, you know, I mean...
Let me, could, could I...
Did you see what I'm asking about? My question, I got, I got the near-term deal. She gets it. Now, obviously, the premise is, not sure how long she's gonna be there.
Mother will be a hundred, yeah, what happened to the...
But let's say, you know, and then what happens at that point, because ultimately, that may be a question for the city attorney.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. Can I get the city attorney, one of y'all, to come in on that?
Chairman, I'll, uh, weigh in, and if Terry has something else to say, she can add whatever she wants to add. I think it would depend on what the ZBA did when, when it goes to them, uh, what stipulations they put on there. I know that normally they, uh, their stipulations are not tied to a particular person. Uh, they're, they should be land use type stipulations, uh, but, but that would be determined at that time.
And so, what I'm, what I'm saying is, that's probably more around the line that I'm interested in.
Did you hit a discussion?
I don't want this particular interest to be tied to this land in perpetuity. We're granting this woman, which I think is a very reasonable thing to grant her, and I'm happy to support it, but I don't wanna be hampering the development of that part of the city.
Right, that was the reason why I, I felt compelled to, to help her was the fact that there was a mobile home. I don't know how many years it was there prior, but she can probably tell you that, and her, her brother moved and moved the mobile home with him. So the fact that there had been one there before, you know, just more or less in my mind set a precedent out, and, and if you go by there and look at that property, I, I really would like for every council member to take a few minutes to drive by there and look at it. I think you'd have a clearer understanding, you know, in my opinion.
You, you wanna, you wanna kinda come in on it and give us a kind of, and James, you can weigh in on this too, 'cause if it goes wrong, you know, you can say, "Well, hey, Ron did that." I didn't, I, you know, if you've got some citizens out there, who's gonna complain about it? You can always, you can always put that on Ron. You can always land on Ron. You, you wanna get to a professional standpoint?
Well, I guess the best thing to say is that we've not had really a chance to review this, so I, I don't have any really direct comments about it, 'cause first I learned about it, it was already on the council agenda. Uh, the reality is, is that it'd have to come before the ZBA. I will not presume what their decision will be, uh, and as it was stated, it would be for the February ZBA. Uh, we have, one of the things that ZBA has struggled with in, in recent months, once they've been given the authority to do the mobile homes, is to kinda up, kinda, kinda come up with a checklist or criteria for why they either approve some and they don't approve others. Because they wanna be consistent. They don't wanna put themselves in a position for a lawsuit to be filed or to be claimed that they have not been consistent and fair with people that make applications. So we are working with them to develop this checklist that we think will help them make better decisions. And so, basically, we, hopefully, the applicant will, will, the person will make application with us by tomorrow, uh, and then we can begin to process the application. And again, I'll have to leave it up to the ZBA members to make that, recommend that decision, so. Uh, I don't really have anything that resolves this situation. I think it is important to understand that one of the things they've looked at in the past is whether or not there are other mobile homes in the area, and whether or not that's a, you know, it's, 'cause their, their fear is that if they make a decision that sets a precedent for a, a type of use such as a mobile home, then other people will wanna come in and put in mobile homes. And so, they have to weigh all those factors together to make what I consider a logical decision about that use. So that's kinda where they'll have to stand, and as staff, we will support them and help them in that process.
I fully understand that. I mean, you know, if you had a one-acre lot in Burgundy Oaks, a lot of people would be having a cow if you, you tried to put a mobile home on the property, but location has a lot to do with it. And that's the reason why I, I would like to see the council members go by and take a look at it, and I'm sure the ZBA will probably address that as well. Anyway, well, uh...
And I would like to say that in the UDC, one of the things I spoke very directly to the consultants about just about a few weeks ago was, we feel like there needs to be, be a better approach to mobile homes, dividing that out from modular homes and make it very clear and understandable what that means and how we can implement it in a way that's much more efficient and where it's not such a burden in trying to figure out each case. So we're, we're going to address that issue in the near future, so that's very important to us.
I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that, because we all plan to work till the last minute that we down here.
Yes.
But I just, uh, and Willie, I just look at seventy-seven million dollars, a little bit different from, somebody calling me about some trash that needs to be picked up, different from making any. Uh, and, uh, uh, you know, I think we all got a little sense, and we can all think for ourselves, and, and, you know, working to the last minute is a little different from tying your hands with seventy-seven million dollars that you gotta deal with over a twenty-year period, and we have not done it up until this time. Mr. Sweeney, thank you here.
You're more than welcome.
Mr. Sweeney, just a quick question. Before we take this legislation up tomorrow, if there's a way that you could let us know if she has made her application?
We will. In fact, I, I just spoke to Stephen, I said, we were, we're texting up to the office to see if someone has come in today, and if not, we'll be looking for them tomorrow, and we'll let you know tomorrow if she has made application.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, in the legislation, if she does not make application by the time the legislation becomes effective, then she no longer has a right to do so.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, so truthfully, that would be eight, five business days after tomorrow, I mean, when the mayor either signs that are...
Is there a ZBA deadline in there that is before that date?
The ZBA deadline is December the sixteenth, I believe, and then the last, the, the second deadline is the twenty-third. So, uh, you know, basically, anything that comes in then can be, then be set on the agenda for February.
But we do wanna let her know now she would like to come down tomorrow.
Yeah, I told her to come down tomorrow, and I said, "Please, please, have your application in."
Right, please come down tomorrow, and we won't let that depend on, on what kinda decision, you know, we make, but we, we wanna always let citizens know that, you know, this, this body belongs to them.
Absolutely.
And they can come down and speak anytime they get ready. Willie, you remember my times used to come down there and speak? And, uh, I used to smile, and they all might would prowl a little bit, but we always was happy to see you down here.
They actually live in the mobile home? They're actually living in the mobile home? Someone is living in it now?
No, because, uh, she's, she put it in there because she didn't think it would be a problem, because her brother had one there prior. But when she sent the electrician to get the permit, that's when she found out she put the cart before the horse. So she didn't know that rules had changed or whatever, and just thinking that 'cause her brother had one, that made it okay if she put one in, so...
Chairman, she's running an extension cord to keep her...
Yeah, she's running an extension cord over to the house to, uh, for some electricity, so, you know, she wants to be legal, so...
Yeah, but that's a hellhead.
I'm not sure this is getting any better.
No, it's not getting any better, but I mean, that's, that's the reality of it, you know, and so I said, "Well, I'll see what I can do to help you," so that's what I'm trying to do, so...
And, uh, now, James, this is a problem in your area. I say you need to get on, you know, be aware, and...
I have the same problem, Mr. Shaw.
Okay, so Rose has the same problem, and, and, uh, uh, Ms. Tyler, this, these are some of the problems that you're really gonna be facing, kinda like, you know, when you were superintendent, what would happen, Booker T. of Fair Park, you know, you'd, you'd have to be right on top of it. So I'm, I'm suggesting that, you know, these are the things that you need to be right on, right on top of it, because, uh, uh, this is what you're about when you're public servant, when you're down here serving people. And, and Willie's gonna be a little bit different from, from Willis Knighton. And I, I, I saw a fly, Willie, where, um, you had a big Willis Knighton shirt on. I don't know whether that was good or bad for you, but, uh, but these decisions are gonna be a little bit different, and, and I know you and Ms. Tyler understand that, so, uh, and you're gonna have a lot of these come up through the year. You have a lot of these come up through the year, so, Mr. Sweeney, appreciate it.
Yeah, and I will, we will have an answer for you tomorrow if an application has come in.
Good information. Thank you, thank you very much.
So, Councilman Shaw, I didn't get any clarity, because I have a similar situation on John Quill. Uh, so there's not a resolve if they put the cart before the horse, uh, you know, in, in not going through, uh, what permits in order to bring the additional mobile home in, because I have a similar situation. There's not a resolve to that.
Right.
I mean, that's what you're gonna search, you're looking for answers as to how you would do that if the cart is put before the horse.
Absolutely. We wanna look at all the aspects of, just so that we can give y'all an opportunity to make a, a better decisions when these things are presented to you, as well as the ZBA. The ZBA has been concerned about the fact it has been somewhat inconsistent in how they approve or deny a mobile home, and if you look at their agenda, it's always dominated by mobile homes. And so, they think they've become the mobile home experts, and so they're, they're wanting a greater guidance in that area, and that's what I'm trying to provide them.
I had a similar situation back when I was a parish commissioner on Harper out in the parish, and they denied it, and he had to move the mobile home, and he, uh, he stopped and told me on the election day he wasn't ever voting for me again.
I understand, I understand.
But, you know, you win some, lose some, so...
You did, you did. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Appreciate it.
Continue, Mr. Chairman. There are no items for introduction on to Section B. Section C, introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to January thirteenth, twenty-fourteen. Ordinance one sixty-three closes and abandons an alley to the east of Missouri Avenue and north of Greenwood Road in Lot Nine of the Queensboro Annex and Section Ten, Township Seventeen, Range Fourteen West. This is regarding the Willis Knighton project.
Mr. Sam Jenkins. Oh, that's right, 'cause we, we, uh, uh, we had an explanation on that.
Well, I'm satisfied with the explanation that they brought in.
Okay.
Ordinance one sixty-four amends and reenacts certain sections of Chapter Ninety-four of the Code of Ordinances relative to utilities. I think Barbara spoke to this, in terms of their rate structure, conservation rates, et cetera.
Okay, and this is just a function of the timing, right? You would've voted on it last time, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, no...
Section D, Mr. Jim.
Yes, please.
These are ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance one thirteen adopts the twenty-fifteen capital projects fund budget. There is one amendment.
The amendment is a big cleanup amendment.
Cleanup, okay. Is that something like what, uh, Jack, is that something like a song that Bette Rypke put out?
Cleanup one.
I know Mr. Thompson, they...
And these are all...
This is a cleanup amendment.
Oh, that, oh, that predates that. And 'cause Willie, you might not be old enough to play this song, huh, have you?
Clearly predates me, I don't even know...
Oh, waving, Oliver, come on now. But, you know, Bette Rypke put out a song, Cleanup.
Well, that was the only thing, I was kinda unfortunate about Jeff getting re-elected, 'cause I thought I'd be the youngest, but then...
Hey, Jerry, uh, Jerry's got, uh, got you...
Jerry rolled in too, I was out of luck.
I'm, I'm, I'll still be the youngest, but only by a few months.
Oh, but don't be so selfish. Jeff is, Jeff is gonna have a birthday soon. All right, there you go.
And, um, Mr. Chairman, these are basically the twenty-fifteen budget ordinances. Ordinance one fourteen adopts the twenty-fifteen Riverfront Development Fund budget. There are twelve amendments.
Let me ask a question.
Please.
On this particular one. Have there been a meeting, has there been a meeting to discuss what organizations will actually be funded yet?
There hasn't, and one of the reasons for that, the primary reason for that, is that, you know, in some of the discussions, there has been some talk that, that, you know, there's a three-point-eight, three-point-nine million, something, a hole in there. So there was some idea that some amendments may be offered in this budget, so we felt like it could be disingenuous to hold a meeting telling different organizations that they were going to get this, these amounts of money if that money wasn't in there. So until we, you know how we did last year where we passed an overall amount that was in civic appropriations, then we held that meeting? That's, I think, the idea of what we do this year.
You identify the amount of money, and then there'll be a meeting on what organizations, based on the applications that's been...
And that's just assuming that these amendments pass. I mean, otherwise, the, the mayor's office did make suggestions of who they suggested to fund and at what level, but should some of these amendments, and you see we have twelve, so, I mean, there could be some substantial changes to that budget, so...
But there's no set amounts right now for anyone.
Well, there, there is in y'all's budget, isn't there? Yeah, y'all's budget had it presented, yeah, they had...
Where do I get that list? 'Cause I have, yet to see it.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Jeff, you're, you're not really... There's only a hundred and fifty-four thousand in there, given what we know today. So you couldn't use...
The amount that's expressed...
That's expressed in the budget, just because there isn't, I don't know what the number was, can't remember exactly, seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand or something like that.
So some of these amendments have put a lot of some of the money in the Riverboat Fund for other uses other than the...
No, because remember, you had a three-point-nine negative fund balance, right? So you had to make up for that three-point-nine, so, I mean...
So all of that, all of that is gone except for the one-fifty-four...
I think it's, either one-fifty-four, one-seventy, I don't...
One-fifty. One-fifty something.
One-fifty, but, and I, I'll just say for me, and I'm not gonna debate them, but we have a little different sort of opinion on maybe twenty grand on whether we should be using last year's stated end and counting backwards, or we should just do it from this year's budget. But that's, so, but somewhere in twenty thousand, that's...
Now, are we headed back in another direction where I think last year, and it concerned me last year, where there was an ordinance that came out or was located or interpreted to say that this fund should only go to organizations that have some kinda direct impact downtown as opposed to what we had historically been doing with organizations throughout the city?
Well, I think it was not just downtown, but the, so the original Riverfront Fund was set up for the riverfront, that's why it's called the Riverfront Fund, and then, and also for economic development. So, and that economic development implication is throughout the city. But that was just an opinion of the committee that reviewed it, that made their recommendations to us, so that's not a requirement statutorily, unless, you know, I mean, there could be some interpretation that it is, but...
Let me, let me... But we kind of think so. Rose, one minute, and then I wanna make a, come in on that. Rose?
Yeah, uh, piggybacking, I guess, on what Sam has referenced and, and what I was told this past week, and I think you shared that with me, Councilman Efferson. The fact that the mayor had a four-million-dollar deficit, uh, that there was some consideration today coming from this council, I don't know what amendment, to get rid of the Riverboat Fund. So I just need some clarity on, is that a fact?
Not to get rid of the Riverboat Fund, and it's not my amendment, but maybe the people who offered the amendment can explain the, the details on that. Go ahead.
Is there, is there a four-million-dollar def, does the mayor have a four-million-dollar deficit? That's what I was...
The Charter says that the appropriations, that the amount of revenue that comes into the budget, um, has to be...
Ms. Tyler, he's talking so softly, can you hear him?
I can hear him, yes.
'Cause this is gonna fall right on your desk.
I can hear it, thank you.
Now, let me, let me read the Charter provision for it. It says, "The council shall finally adopt the several budget ordinances with or without amendment, provided that the total of estimated expenditures and no budget shall exceed the total estimated receipts therein, taking into account any estimated fund balance or deficit from the current fiscal year." So there was a deficit coming into the Riverboat Fund this year, and after the expenditures, there was a four-million-dollar, three-point-nine-something-million-dollar deficit. In other words, the expenditures exceeded the revenue by almost four million dollars. So the Charter says, "The council cannot adopt a budget like that." So the amendments, uh, the only way that you can get that down, we could get that down was, the, what we did was, we took the expenditures from last year, and anything that was in excess of that, we eliminated it. And then we eliminated a part of the money that goes from the Riverfront Fund to the General Fund in order to get the four-million deficit to zero. So that's what most of these amendments do. Now, the other things that they do are, uh, last year, some of the entities and activities were budgeted in the General Fund, and some of the amendments put them back into the General Fund and take them out of the Riverfront Fund. Another amendment here, uh, when we looked at the revenues from the riverboats and looked at the latest amounts that we had, it looks like that the amount that the original budget[1791.88] like that the amount that the original budget had in it will not be met. So the revenues are reduced also. So the big item is to make sure that the Riverfront Fund does not have a negative balance, but it has a balance of at least a zero.
Sam. Sam. Your question?
Well, my question really, I guess it's going to lend itself to the organizations that... I understand why we're doing what we're doing. I understand the mathematics of it all. Let's start with philosophy. That's what my concern is. And it's just to make sure that, you know, all of these organizations that can be funded and get a look at, I want to make sure to have them. What concerned me with what I saw last year, and it concerns me again this year, is that we are about to have an approach where all the organizations that are going to even be considered an organization to have some impact downtown. That's not to say that those organizations are not important, and what they do is not important. But I do believe that there are other organizations that are doing something of equal importance outside the ram of downtown, and those groups ought to be considered also. I know that's limited funds. I know it's a tough thing to do. I've been involved in it several times. I know it's not easy. I know everybody's not going to get what they're looking for. But it really alarmed me last year to see it come down to a philosophy where, you know, you only fund an organization that has some impact downtown. Downtown gets a lot of attention.
Has seven...
And it needs it. And it needs it. I'm not saying it doesn't. But I think you've got some organizations out there that are doing some other things, too. Hopefully, they will not get kicked to the curb in this process.
And that review committee that made that suggestion, yeah, last year, has not reviewed and has not played any role in the determination of any of the listings of any amounts of any funding in this budget.
I understand.
Because we haven't had a meeting, right? A meeting hasn't been called.
That wasn't our committee. That was a separate committee that was established with the Community Foundation, the United Way, the, you know, there were several people who were on that committee that made those recommendations.
They were supposed to give us feedback.
And they have not met this year.
They have not given us feedback. So therefore, we can't report back to our constituents that have actually made applications, that are probably expecting to be funded.
You can report back what the mayor... Because those applications are made to the mayor's office, and the mayor's office did make determinations in their budget of what their recommendations were. And those are in the budget.
Did the council receive those?
Uh huh.
The recommendations?
Mm-hmm.
Let me say this.
What's in the executive budget?
Let me say this. It's very seldom that I agree with Rose, but I have to agree with her this time. And Coach, Willie, you and Mr. Tyler need to hear this. You know, traditionally, and I've been down here a long time. I guess when I first got down here, Jeff might have been in junior high school. But Cedric was probably in elementary school. Traditionally, we have used funds from that budget in order to help people in the community, not so much downtown, because downtown gets fed. You have different organizations out on the Cooper Road, in Moore Town, and Cedar Grove, and, 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 Mr. Tyler, those people are generally left out of the budget. Those organizations that those people have out there, their organization might be about helping keep Cedar Grove clean. You might have a little organization out there that might need $5,000 in order to cut grass or to pick up paper and that kind of stuff, that actually helps the city. And, and I have not had a chance to look at the charter to see. But traditionally, those are the organizations that we reach out and help. Those organizations with people in the community who are concerned about that community, because that's where they live. And if you leave those people out of the, you know, out of the budget, and if you leave them out, then they're going to feel like they're not a part of the community. They're not a part of Freeport.
That their representative is not working for them.
Well, not only that, not only that, which goes a little bit further than that, but these people begin to feel like that they're not concerned. And James, you start, you know, that's just like you have some people out there in your area that might not feel like that they're part of Freeport, because they don't get the grass cut, don't get the paper picked up. They don't get this. And then when you go back to passing taxes and that kind of stuff, these people are going to say, well, look, I'm not a part of Freeport. And it's not a whole lot of money that you give them. It's enough to reach out to them and let them know that, hey, look, you all are part of this great city. You know, we're going to make it a great city. You can't just look out for downtown, because downtown is going to basically take you itself, you know?
Thankfully...
Most of the money is, most of the money is going to go to downtown anyway. But traditionally, this is how we have done it. Now, I'm on my way off, and it's going to be left up to you all, Willie, who's going to be down here. And to make sure that you get everybody involved as far as you can. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just one note. I wanted to add an additional option to what Mr. Thompson said, and I don't think it's inappropriate, but the amendments could also supplement the funding to fund all those items that were outlined within that Riverfront Budget. So it's not a matter that the council only had the option of removing the items. Those items could be funded by the amendment that simply transfers money in. The reason we didn't present it that way was, as we explained during the budget process, we presented every possible option available, showed what it would cost. But there are funds available within the budget to cover those, should the council choose to fund those organizations at those levels. We appreciate that amendments don't do that, but I just wanted to, for the record, say that the only option wasn't just to remove them. There was an option to actually supplement funding to cover them.
And, Mr. Tyler, the initial budget like that will come from you. Although the council has the opportunity to amend your budget.
Correct.
And put things in and take things out. But the initial budget is going to come from you, because some of those folks that you voted for is going to be looking for you to lease, if it's no more than $1,500.
Give them something.
You know, to give them something to help keep their neighborhoods clean and attack and that kind of stuff. And that's the way good administrators do. You know, being superintendent, you know, you might not, you know, you book a T or Fair Park or Green Oaks, at least wanted you to notice that they are part of the school system like Captain Shreve and the rest of them, you know?
That's why the NIP program has been so popular, and that's why we expanded funding to the NIP program.
Well, I'm just telling this. You have a lot of programs, but that's one thing that you need to keep in mind. I've, you know, Jeff's been down here four years. I've been down here almost 30. So I'm just trying to give you some history and some information. And I don't mind Jeff looking at his district, that downtown. James, you got to make sure you do something for those people like that, because if you don't, they're going to be coming on you. They ain't coming to jail. They're going to be coming on you. So that said, let's move on, and y'all just keep that in mind.
Mr. Chairman, we're still on number 114. Just one other thing.
Okay.
The, I see now, there's going to be a reduction for MSI of 100,000. So what does that leave for MSI?
100.
How much now?
100.
100.
So originally, they had 200,000, so it's just going to leave 100,000. Right. That's what they had last year. Yeah, okay. This is, okay, it was proposed for the 200,000, but they're being funded at the same amount that they had.
That's pretty much it.
Then the summer jobs program. It's proposed at 400,000. This would put it back at 150,000. Now, what did they have?
Was that what it was last? You wanted to make sure. Was that what it was last, 150,000?
All they have is 150,000.
When raised, did I remember?
No. No, that's not correct.
Yeah, I thought it was more money than that.
350.
350,000.
Right.
Was it in the budget, or was that in the one year we added?
That was not 14. We added to it in 10 or 11.
Now, Bonnie knows exactly what it was.
12. The 12 that we had.
And Bonnie, before you say that, Willie, Ms. Tyler, you know, these are the funds that the mayor have in his discretion in order to help a lot of kids out there, a lot of families, especially kids out there who may be in school, you know, and trying to go to school. It doesn't give them a whole lot. It might give, they might be able to make enough, but they learn, they learn work habits. And, you know, it might be by a pair of genes to go to school, because Willie, you probably didn't have to suffer with this, but Ms. Tyler and I did. You know, we had to, when we went to school, we had to find all the little jobs that we could in order to make a little money. See, now, you and Rose came up, you and Rose came up in a family where y'all had plenty of money, and you didn't have to worry about that, but Ms. Tyler and I did.
16 to 21. Age of 16 to 21.
Age of 16 to 21. And these are kids, Willie and Ms. Tyler and James, because you're going to have some kids out of your district, too. That's going to want to do little summer jobs. And it's not only just the money, but it teaches them how to work. It teaches them responsibility. It teaches them how they have to get up and get to work, the same way they do when they go to school. You got to get up and get in that math class. You got to, you got to get up and get in that social science class. So, you know, this is a program that we've had for a long time, and it has been a very helpful program. And it gives, it gives those people out there a different look about city government.
Yes, sir.
And, because Mr. Bradford, Dad didn't have to worry about that either, because his mom and dad had plenty of money. And, see, those of us who came out of poor families, you know, we, Ms. Tyler, we had to find us a little summer. It wasn't nothing but, because Mr. Bradford, you're too young. We weren't knowing nothing about working in somebody's kitchen, you know, or cleaning up some yards, you know. We, you know, and this is, this is good. I mean, this, this gives a positive image to the city. So, and, and, y'all do a great job every summer.
And Councilman Shine...
Mr. Chairman, she was going to tell us how much was spent last year in the program by?
We spent approximately $350,000 on the program. We provided an extra $50,000 through our workforce investment funds. So typically, we fund about $400,000 into this program.
Bonnie, that was, that was good.
But I'm not sure we're really on the correct question. What was budgeted? I know one year for sure, we definitely increased it over the course of the year. So I'm not going to, I mean, the mayor, I think, is correct that it may not have been last year, and we may have started with it, but I'm trying to...
But this past summer, Bonnie, how much was budgeted?
Approximately $350,000.
350. The year before was 150, and that's what year we supplemented?
No, it's always been at least 300,000.
Always.
Always. One year, you gave us an additional $100,000, which made it $400,000.
But it used to always, it used to also be funded by federal funds.
We had one year of federal funding in 2009. That was a part of the federal stimulus program. But when we came into office in 2006, the program had been long done away with at the federal level. When it transitioned under the Clinton administration, ironically, from being the job training partnership back to the workforce investment program, going forward, workforce investment did not have a summer youth employment program as a component of its efforts. And that's something that we started with the previous council, and thankfully, you all have carried that on with us, because we see the value in benefiting it.
Councilman Shine?
Yes, Rose.
I think it needs to be brought to the attention of the public and the new council that, as far as I can recollect, it was, it was suggested by members of this council, not all of them, that that fund be eliminated. And I think new councilmen coming, new council persons coming on, you know, because of the seriousness of this program that actually help our youth in the city of Shreveport who's saying, we don't have anything to do. This is something that they really look forward to. And so based on my participation here, you know, I thought it was just kind of slight of us as a council body to ever suggest killing that fund.
I don't, I don't think that will happen. And, and, Ms. Tyler, I don't know if you remember, but these funds, too, used to come through the school system, because I think when Cedric was a little boy, I was handling some of the funds on the, on the Cooper Road. We had about 180 slots for, for school kids, you know. And these are very good programs, because Olive is my friend over here. And I don't mean harm, but you know, when the, when the Republicans took over the federal government, it seems like that's what they're doing now. Ms. Tyler, those funds were cut, because you remember, we used to have summer feeding programs, you know, for kids out in the community who didn't have a good meal, you know. And here, we live in the greatest country in the world, and we can't take care of the human needs of some of the poor and less fortunate. And Coach, Dale, I'm not really a good biblical student, although my father was a preacher. I might have fell a little short there, but I think the Bible kind of says that, you know, you take kids that are less fortunate. And that's what government is all about, you know, reaching out, trying to help those who need help. And you all want to find out that this is one of the best programs. And, 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 Ms. Tyler, she does an excellent job with this program, reaching out and helping those. And, and you get a chance to save kids. You know, this is, this is, this is an opportunity to save kids. When we say, Mr. Bradford, am I my brother's keeper? You know, a lot of us say that, but we don't really mean it. You know, we just, we just be talking off. But, Ms. Moore, you all do an excellent job with that. And I have to give Mayor Cedric Glover credit. It's not a very, it's not a lot of things that we see eye to eye on now. But that was one thing that we kind of saw eye to eye on. And I think that amendment was authored by me. I think I talked to you about it, that, hey, look, I appreciate you having that $300,000 in that summer program. Because now, he grew up in a family where he didn't have to worry about working. And, but I give him credit.
Remember, similar to what?
Dale, he grew up in one of those money families. But I give him credit. This is a program that's needed. This is a, this is a program that's needed.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Why, why, why? The neighborhood improvement program, is that at the same level of funding it was?
It was recommended at the same level.
Okay, all right. And Sam, you're right. You need to, you need to make sure that you got some folks out there that don't get a little something, and it doesn't all go to downtown. Downtown folks get enough of my money already. When I go down there and buy some socks, and, well, I haven't had a pair of new shoes, Dale, in a long time.
The administrators and the administration.
Dale, continue, please.
Yes, sir. That was ordinance 114 on the Riverfront Development Fund. Ordinance 115 adopts the 2015 general fund budget. There are 14 amendments.
I have a question about, going back to this. If amendment number four does not pass tomorrow, if it's not adopted, are we to, do you want to add $250,000 to amendment number five? Amendment number five is decrease transfer to general fund by 2,6,300. And in order to get the fund balance to zero, do you want to add that, make that 2,256,300?
I think we might need to work through the amendments skipping number five until the very end, see what passes, and then adjust number five as necessary, if we can do that.
Skip number five?
I can agree with that.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, wait. Make the math easy.
Making the math a whole lot easier on what, Jeff?
Yeah. Wait a minute. I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson. Say that again.
I think the consensus is that tomorrow, when we do the amendments, we will skip number five in the Riverfront Fund until all of the other amendments have been approved, and then we will know what that number needs to be in the...
Yeah. And I can agree with that approach. And, Mr. Chairman, let me just say this. My comments are not, that I was previously making this, that it's not intended to knock anything that's going on downtown. I know how important that is. That's, that's not the purpose of my comment. The purpose of my comments is to make sure other organizations who are also doing things throughout the city will get some consideration also. So this is no, no attack on downtown, or I don't want everyone thinking anything like that, because that's not what I'm talking about. I just want to make sure other organizations, whatever their goal and mission may be, that they get a good look at during this process also.
Sam, that's a good thing. You know, people will take what you say and screw it around where it'll be wrapped around your head.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Thompson referred back to 114, correct, our Riverfront? And we just read ordinance 115, general fund.
And let me, let me say this, Mr. Thompson. I, you know, I might not go along with decreasing the summer, summer job funds to $150,000. I wish you and Jackie would look at that, and Dale, you too. I might ask Mr. Thompson to prepare an amendment to bring that back to $300,000 that it was funded to last year, because to me, that program is too important, and it touches too many people that need a little help. And it shows a little sensitivity, and, and, you know, since we are a Christian nation.
Mr. Shine, you want amendment number 4A to do it at, to fund it at 300,000?
Yes, the same thing was funded at last year. And I hope that, Mr. Mayor, I can get the votes to, to put that back at what it was last year. uh, what it was last year. But this, I, to me, I just feel like the program is too important.
How many students are we talking about, Mr. Chairman? How many students are we talking about?
Uh, Bonnie.
Mr. Shine, the number was 350,000 for last year.
350,000. No, no, Willie, I know, I know the mayor, that's your cousin. And, uh, but that's one thing that, that's one program that he and I saw eye to eye on now. We didn't see, you know, the fixing the streets with the, with the 77 million dollars that we had had this, uh, last year. Uh, and you gotta understand that this money is coming from an ordinance that Sam Jenkins authored, which was pretty, which was a good, uh, and I know Sam doesn't like, doesn't like to take credit for a whole lot of stuff, but, uh, the franchise taxes. And, uh, so that's what...
Franchise fees.
Yeah, yeah, right, well...
But this isn't coming, but this isn't coming from the franchise.
Because if I said taxes, taxes, Oliver, yes, yeah, Oliver.
First of all, it's not coming from the franchise thing to begin with.
Yeah.
This is the Riverfront.
No, 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 not, not doing the streets. That was Sam, that's Sam, that's Sam. Arted that. You see, sometimes you kinda, you kinda have to say it again for Oliver, so he can understand.
I'm a slow listener. Mr. Shine, were you saying that you would have voted for it last year? Is that what you were on the way to say?
Uh, if this had been, let's say, uh, four years ago, sure, I would have, you know, but I don't wanna tie that like Willie said, and I agree with Willie. I agree with Willie on that. I don't wanna tie your hands, and I don't have but two minutes down here.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, and, and 'cause Ms. Tyler, I don't wanna tie your hands either, 'cause I don't have but two minutes down here, James, I don't wanna tie your hand. And we could have done this, uh, 18 months ago. But, uh, Bonnie, how many, how many people did we...
If my memory serves me correctly, it was about 280.
But you see, but, but 280 people that we can help this.
So if you reduce it to 150, that would be half that, please?
Yeah.
We get, we get over 1,000 applications.
Yeah, see, you're right.
And how many hours is, is, is the average?
20 hours per week.
Great program.
Mr. Shine, is your amendment 300,000 or 350,000?
Yeah. What was it last year?
350.
It was 350 last year?
Fifty of it is from Bonnie's.
Yeah, well, 300. Yeah, 'cause looking at it, it was 300 in the budget last year, and, and Bonnie them added 50.
From theirs.
And, uh...
And Mr. Shine?
And Dale, if I, if I have to, I can get a little retirement check, I might...
Kick some in?
Yeah, I might kick some in.
We, we thought that this was another area that warranted, uh, uh, some enhancing, which is why you saw it submitted to you all at 400,000.
I agree.
We will certainly, um, um, hope that the council will not in any way look to be in line with the 150,000 dollar recommendation, but we certainly would hope that you would leave it at its, uh, uh, level as it's been submitted, but, uh, because that represents an actual, um, retraction. Uh, this is a program that, in our estimation, definitely needs to grow.
Right. Now, I'm a compromiser. I, you know, I don't want Oliver to fall out with me, 'cause I need somebody down here that will be able to call and say, "I need some trash picked up," or, or, or whatever. So, um, uh, me, I wanna make sure that Oliver and I get along together, so that's why I'm compromising, say, at the same level that it was funded last year. But now, I don't think, I do agree with you. You know, if it was any way possible, I'd like to do that, because that, that helps those people that, that government needs to help. That government needs to reach out and help. 'Cause I was there one day, you know, James, I needed, you know, James and I were old country boys too from Cleveland Parish, and, and we understand how it is to get up, you have to get up and get the eggs early in the morning, and, and, and when you come in from, uh, school, you change clothes, 'cause you gotta slot the halls. So you got...
Mr. Chairman?
You got a lot of kids out there that need it, yes.
I apologize for, for interrupting the meeting, but I would like to know, will the public know, or will you know, as you consider the, the contributions to the, to the nonprofits that has been submitted, will, will we know who they are?
Yes, yes.
And will they be equitable distributed around the, around this, around the city?
Well, that's what we just got to talking about. That was a question that Rose raised, and 'cause I believe Jeff is, is chairman of that committee, and, uh, and, uh...
The way, I, I was just gonna add to...
I mean, Jeff is chairman of that committee right now. Now, when you all meet, you know, you all, whoever the chairman of the council will be, can, can appoint new chairs to these committees. That's one I thought.
I guess my question is, is that if this is adopted according to the recommendations from the mayor's office, will that be binding come, come...
Tomorrow.
Come tomorrow, come the budget?
Well, yes and no now, and you gotta understand, as a legislative body, you can always, uh, uh, come, come up with amendments. And Jeff, hold up just one minute. Uh, you know, you can always come up with, with amendments to it, so you can change it if you, you know...
There ain't no more money.
Well, that's true. That's, that's what I'm saying. And that's why, that's why we was talking about, you know, we don't wanna tie your hand up right now, but, but you do have that authority to do that.
Councilman Shine, this, this was my concern, that I, I consulted with one of my constituents, I mean, uh, one of my colleagues on, because of what the normal procedure. And of course, we came up with some different qualifications to make applications for, um, nonprofits, and it eliminated quite a few. But what I've been used to is actually having a Riverfront meeting and actually reviewing the applications. And of course, it's my understanding from Jeff that there's a, another committee, um, that's actually doing this. But even in spite of that, as a council person, um, being a member of the Riverfront, um, committee, I have not seen a list. And so I was concerned, because in the past, we have reviewed the list, and we have also informed, um, the nonprofits and invited them to these meetings as well. So my concern is, is that even if we're, I mean, it was, I was told that the reason, you know, we weren't gonna have a Riverfront meeting was because we didn't want to have the people coming with the impression that they were gonna get some money that they might not get. Well, my concern about that was, well, they still need to be informed so that they won't have the, um, impression that they are gonna get some money. I mean, we need, we owe it to them to educate them or inform them as to why they wouldn't be getting any money, or the possibility of them not getting any money after making an application. And I just feel like we fail the citizens when we don't do that, you know, assuming that we won't call a meeting because we're not sure they're gonna get the money. And at the same time, in the past, you know, we have involved them to some degree, you know, whether they were gonna get the money or not, you know, we informed them. But it seems like with this situation, they're not being informed in any case.
I agree with you, uh, totally that. The citizens need to be informed and, and that's the nature of the beast.
And I think that's what you're concerned about, Mr. Bradford.
You know, whether he's gonna get any or not.
He won't be getting money.
Yeah, well, you know...
Yeah, Mr. Bradford is concerned about who's actually gonna be getting money, or the possibility of who's gonna be getting money in District A.
But that would be decided by the council.
And then we'll come back to our...
Let me just say this, is...
The council always decides that.
If we work through, if we work through the budget, and the budget that we approve...
The council always decides. Total budget is the recommendation.
Depending on, depending on which amendments are passed. And I don't know if you had a chance to review the amendments or not. But if we work through the budget, we'll know exactly what pot of money is available for the nonprofits who have made application. And much like we did last budget cycle, then we can come back around in January or February, we'll know exactly how much money we have available, and let those nonprofits come in and ask for what they, what they want.
Out of respect to, to the conversation, I'm hearing two different scenarios. I'm hearing, okay, we're gonna pass, uh, an, an adoptable budget for X number of dollars. The mayor keeps saying that the, the recommendations from the administration is attached to, to the budget.
That's true.
And then I'm hearing that, okay, we're gonna pass X amount of dollar budget for nonprofits, and then we can go back and decide who gets the money. And I'm saying that if it's attached to the original budget, then no folk will think they're getting money.
That's right.
Okay.
That's not true.
I think what he's saying is he would amend that. He would amend the mayor's suggestions into a pot of money amount.
We can, we can create a budget line that is nonprofit appropriations, and we don't allocate it to anybody at this time.
So you're saying you start the process over again, and then that's gonna take how many months to get that done?
It's something we did last year, Mr. Bradford. I know you were here.
See, I was just telling this, don't make sense to me.
But we, we couldn't fund all of the recommendations.
I understand that. But I'm saying, we knew budget was coming up. Why, why didn't this happen?
You'll find out.
No, 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 no.
It doesn't happen that way.
I work at a corporation where we, we are timely in taking care of business.
No, no, it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen that way, Mr. Bradford. What happens is the mayor's office provides the council with a proposed budget.
This last minute, I'm talking, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to explain to you.
I understand.
Once we get it, we have to work through it. Now, a lot of the recommendations that may come with the budget from the mayor's office may not be something that we can afford to do.
I'm saying, getting it on a timely manner, Mr. Jenkins, so that you can do your job. Okay? I, I wanna do my job, and you're telling me that you can't do your job because somebody's not doing their job? See, that's, that's not, that's not fair.
No, that, but that's not exactly what I'm saying. I'm saying the, the process will lead you to where we are going to now, basically.
Okay, I, I miss you, I apologize.
No, 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 no. 'Cause if you don't, if you don't do it right, when you get ready to run again, uh, apologizing to them not gonna, not, you know, not gonna, not gonna mean anything. So you're right, if you have any questions...
We're talking about Riverfront Development. I mean, this committee has not met. No, Jeff has... And we knew that budget process was gonna start in...
Many did not meet to do civic appropriation allocations. Um, basically, I think that's been recapped, is that the budget that was submitted to us had a 3.9 million dollar operating, negative operating balance. Um, so to have met and allocated money, and we're not sure where that 3.9 million dollars was gonna come from...
Did you not have the mayor's recommendations?
We did, and so did every council member was provided with a copy of the mayor's recommendations, and those have been available for several months. So every council member's had those and has had the opportunity to express what was in that to their constituencies and to the people who were...
But wasn't that a starting point? Couldn't that have been a starting point, to meet and discuss?
Well, we did have a, a review of the budget on our budget sessions, which were public meetings, um, and we did review them in the Riverfront Budget Sessions. So, uh, they were reviewed then. So, yeah, there has been some, some looking at this, but I think that until this council votes to determine how much is actually available for civic appropriations, somewhat irresponsible to confirm, uh, the amount that will be going to the various organizations until it's been confirmed what that, what amount is available.
Let me, let me, let me say, Willie, the, the, uh, the budget will start, the budget will start in Ms. Tyler's office.
And, and this may also...
Let me, let me finish, then, I'll, we'll get back to you then. Uh, it will start in Ms. Tyler's office. Ms. Tyler will send a suggested list, a suggested budget to, to us.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we will take a look at it.
Yes, sir.
If there's anything that you wanna add, uh, change in that budget, uh, as a council member, you have that right to do it. If you can get four votes...
I was about to say, you got to have a vote.
Yeah, now, you got, you gotta make sure you have four votes.
You gotta have a vote.
That's not what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman. I'm asking, my question is simple, is a very simple question. Some, some, some nonprofits gonna be left out. That's true. They won't be notified until after, after the fact.
No, no, you see, you know, I don't know what they, I don't know what y'all gonna do this year.
Anybody can make an amendment.
I don't know what y'all gonna do this year.
Okay.
But in the years before, they come down and present to us their budget. Now, we can't tell them on that particular day whether they will get some money or whether they will not get some money.
Yes, sir.
You will come down and present your, your application.
Yes, sir.
Then the, the committee would take a look at the application. You might be asking for $10,000. And after we look at the kind of monies that we have, we might say, well, we're gonna give you 5,000, or we're gonna give you 2,000. You know, we can't tell you what you gonna get when you come down that particular day.
I understand. I'm, I'm referring to those that, that have traditionally received funds, that their budget's gonna be cut. They don't know that until afterwards.
No, they, I mean, there's no way that they'll know that until they come down and we tell them.
I'm fine.
See, there's no way that they will know that until, until they come down and we tell them.
Mr. Chairman, what I saw on the website, and the 2013 budget for civic revenues was over 900,000. The 2014 that the mayor's office approved is 2.2 million.
Okay.
And so what I'm saying...
Let him finish.
Now, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, uh, when you approve this 2.2 tomorrow, it's gonna be nearly impossible to amend it.
Well, uh...
Hold on, let me say something, just so that, and this is, in fairness, is why we spent a whole day on it, is what we've done in the past, we've had different funding sources from general fund and Riverfront. So this 2 million, 3 million, 4 million deficit plus, bit, I'll, I'll just say it from a different perspective. The mayor's budget slash year offered some options for us, and when you put every option in there, you end up with negative numbers that don't adequately reflect. But in fairness, they said, "I know you will not select all of these options, because if you do, you're gonna have a general fund reserve of zero, or 1 million," which, over the last four years, none of us supported a 1 million reserve. But to do it all, to show it all in there how it affected, Sharika did a nice job of coming up, I guess a month, two meetings ago, and said, "Okay, if you select this, this is what's gonna happen to this, and your, your total reserve, yes, you will not transfer as much out of Riverfront, and as a function of not transferring as much out of Riverfront, your total reserve number, as opposed to being at 7 and 1/2 million, would be at 3 and 1/2 million. And then if you decide to fund this, then you would be at this." Now, if you do, and so, we're using these numbers in a, a rather myopic point of view in the sense that, well, this person didn't know this and this, and, well, we had 2 million last year, and we took out 9, but last year, the, the SKEDA Economic Development Funds and some others were in a different part of the budget, so it wasn't showing up in that 2 million. And that's still being funded at the same level. All this to say that unless you go through the budget holistically, looking at these one specific issues, it's just really not a fair reflection. Now, secondly, I do agree with your comment. Well, it is a fact that, that 157,000 of civic appropriations has not been vetted on where, what organizations are gonna get that, and that is, that is a fact. Problem is, you can't take the mayor's suggestion, because if you took that, then you would, function the way the thing went, it would mean that your Riverfront Fund would have a negative bounce, and if it has a negative bounce, then less would be transferred over to the general fund, and there would be obviously less of a, um, a reserve in the general fund. Now, 157, 170 is very close to what last year's number was for civic appropriations. Now, I don't remember exactly what that number is. Uh, I don't know if it was 155 or...
It was in that range.
It was somewhere in between 140 and 170. So that allocation that, what was used last year is still in there. And once again, last year, what we did last year is we took that number, we then outs, said it wasn't, we tried to take the politics out of it, we asked a third party, this is what we collectively agreed on, third party to give us some recommendations, and that came back to the Riverfront. The Riverfront looked at it, and then it came to the council.
Good.
Okay, I don't disagree with you that those people are kind of left in the wind until that process happens, but that's where we are today. I'm, I'm just, that's the way the numbers are.
My last statement, Mr. Chairman, if you will.
No, it doesn't have to be your last. Look, listen. You gonna be down here, so you can ask enough.
I want to know, the nonprofits in District A, are they, are they, are they gonna be allocated some funds? What I've seen so far, and I, and I'm saying this in all sincerity, I don't want only the mayor's friends to have the benefits of this thing.
Now, you're right.
Okay? Because I'm, I'm seeing some, I'm seeing some organizations, I've seen some organizations, okay, MCI, for instance, okay? They, listen, I'm for the needy, not the greedy.
Okay.
Okay? Let's share the wealth of this, of the resources of this city.
Okay, and let me say one other thing that...
Oh, just one thing, Mr. Thompson, answer that for a minute, we're gonna come back to Oliver.
Well, let me say one other thing, just so you know. The Neighborhood Investment Program is funded at the exact same level as last year, and there are a lot of, I'll call them district-specific...
Deadline for submission.
Groups that receive money from the NIP. So, don't, I don't want to confuse the two. There's one in particular that you and I are both aware of, that does, that do receive Neighborhood Investment Program funds. So, it doesn't come out of civic appropriations, it comes out of Neighborhood Investment, because they apply for that funding through that mechanism.
I think your question was too, was it anybody in District A that...
I just want to see.
Yeah, he just want to see. Do you have a list of that, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I, I want to make a couple of, a couple of general comments. One, Mr. Flores, you talked about what was the mayor proposed. The mayor proposes a budget, but the council actually adopts a budget, so it's not a real budget until after the council adopts it.
Good point.
Secondly, as it relates to who's funded, in the past, what has happened is, there's a, an amount for nonprofits, and then there is a resolution that is adopted by the council which states which nonprofits are gonna be funded and what the allocation is for each of those nonprofits. So, even if another committee makes recommendations to the council, the council makes the final determination as to what, who will be funded and how much they will be funded. So, you will see that, or at least the council will see that. You'll know exactly before those people are funded.
And...
The third thing is that we were wrong, the amount that was budgeted last year was 300,000 rather than 150,000. So, if it's a consensus of the council, we'll change it to 300.
As summer jobs, right?
Yes, as summer jobs, and we will reduce the amount transferred out by the same amount.
Right, right, 'cause that, that was...
But that's a consensus.
Can I have your...
Willie, just one thing, before you say that, and, Mr. Flores, it doesn't matter what kind of committees you set up, you don't want ever outsource your political power to make those decisions on that, because those people, those people on that committee can elect it like you. And you can't go back and tell those people in your district that, this wasn't me, this was that committee, and what they're gonna tell you is that, well, next time, we're gonna elect that committee to do that. So, don't ever, don't ever give up interview authority to make those kind of decisions to any committee. You let the committee bring their findings back to you, but the buck is gonna stop on your desk. This matter, buck is gonna stop on your desk. So, it's good to have input from committees. You know, just like men at school, boy, you know, the, the, the curriculum is gonna stop on your desk, and, and if you don't balance that budget, if you don't do what you need to do as superintendent, hey, they're not gonna be looking at some committee out there. They're gonna be looking at all that Tyler. Say, look, you got us on a deficit. You remember, even in your campaign, you said, look, when I came as superintendent, it was, the budget was this, and when I left, it was balanced. And this is what they'd be looking for, because if they don't, and, and, I'm not telling you nothing you don't know, they're gonna tie it around your neck. And no matter how much they love you, even when you go to church, they're gonna be saying, you know, Al ain't doing nothing down there, and got us in all this debt, and Willie, the same thing with you. You know, and, and I'm just, I'm just giving y'all some, some old-fashioned information from being down here a long time...
In other words, Mr. Chairman, you're not gonna be Bush, we can't blame Bush.
There you go, there you go, there you go.
Blame shine.
No, you can't blame shine.
Can't do that, okay.
You can't blame shine, all right, Willie.
My question to, uh, is that, you, you said we almost now presently has a, almost $4 million deficit in Riverfront, Riverfront money.
Correct. Well, that's budgeted, yeah.
You're gonna try to eliminate that by adjusting whatever to get to a zero balance, so we'll be in compliance.
Correct.
So, that means that how, how would Riverfront Fund be replenished if the, if the revenue coming into that fund is, is very weak? That means we would not have...
Reducing the transportation.
No, no, I'm asking, will we have discretionary monies, or we will have to transfer monies from other areas for emergencies?
Well, no, you would have, you would have to get the money from somewhere else. We don't expect an emergency in the Riverfront Fund. It's a special revenue fund, there are not many functions in that fund, but if something should come up short, then you have to get the money from some other place. If money is needed generally in the city, the, probably the only other place to get it would be the operating reserve, whatever monies would be there, and in the street special revenue fund. Those would be the two parts.
So, in your opinion, uh... And we, we talked about some other risks. What would the state of our, if the council voted tomorrow and adopted with the amendments, in your opinion, where, where will we be as it relates to our financial strength or weakness?
We will have money in the, in the general fund, the operating reserve will be about $5 million if the amendments are adopted, and, and the street special revenue fund, if the amendments are adopted. That is, if you don't fund the bonds for the new streets and you don't fund the pay raises, then there will be a, I believe it's eight, about an $8 million fund balance there.
You're talking about the merit, the merit pay raises.
Right.
But not talking about the one-time...
Bonds on for the employees.
That's what I'm talking about. You're talking about the merit pay.
If you don't fund those.
And, and Willie, the other thing is, and, and, 'cause James and Ms. Tyler, you, you need a good reserve. That's so when, uh, you and Ms. Tyler get on that plane and go to New York to sell these bonds, you can get good interest rates. Now, if you, if you, if your reserves are down around $1 or $2 million, you're not gonna get the same interest rates that you would if your operating reserve was at $8 million, at least 10% of, of, and, and this is what you have to, this is what you have to think about. You have to think about your operating reserves, when you sell those bonds, you can get a good interest rate, because if you don't get a good interest rate, but Ms. Tyler, you know, a good interest rate...
Yes.
Uh, you might, you might pay out $20 million over 20 years more than you would if your interest rate was down. So, this is why it's so important, Willie, to make sure that your, that your budget is balanced and you got a good, uh, uh, operating reserve left in there. And this is why it's so important. And, and look, now, Willie, you all are doing the right thing. I mean, this is what you have to do. I tell you, anytime you're dealing with money and religion, James, you're gonna run into this, and you all know that. And Ms. Tyler, you know that. Anytime you're dealing with money and religion, uh, 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 you, you know, some folks gonna like it and some folks hate it, but you gotta make sure that you do what's right. You do what's right, because that's what's gonna come back to you. I'm gonna be gone, Willie.
Can you tell me, Mr. Chairman, what is our obligation to the hotel and to the convention center?
Uh, uh, Mr. Bradford, I can't pull it right off the top of my head, but Dale, you...
Come to that.
Yeah, we're coming to that.
You, uh, you, uh...
So, so, so make sure that you get it directly from the horse's mouth.
Yeah, I see. See you.
I think those are the kind of things that, you know, in the course of all the budget meetings and budget hearings...
I'm sorry, Willie, can you hear him? Can you hear Dale?
As, as we sit down with, with, with Ms. Tyler and the new council members, you know, there's a lot of information we can give them, it's very difficult to do in a meeting like this, because the answers aren't as simple...
Right.
Or, or, you know, they're not single-word answers they can give, and there's a whole lot of background that everyone would need to have to really even understand where we are. So, I, I'd rather we do that in a different format, where we really can educate these guys on the budget and some of the assumptions behind it. It's just difficult to do sitting here today.
Okay, I, I can, I can understand, but I just wanted to make sure Willie got an answer as, as old farm boys, right, directly from the horse's mouth.
Because there are actually contracts and agreements that back those, those situations that would need to be looked at...
That's right.
...explained and read through.
But they're all liabilities, is that right?
That's right. Okay, yes.
I also want to, since we are in a public meeting, to, to offer some clarification and to, to ask a question. Mr. Bradford made reference to a, a group known as MCI. Don't know...
MSI.
MSI. Oh, well, that's good to know, I didn't, didn't realize you'd be against the Minority Supply Institute. But I want to be clear that there is a process in terms of how we put for the executive budget, where the various groups that are seeking funding have an application deadline, where they have to submit their proposal to the administration for review and consideration to be placed into the executive budget, and that's a part of the council's process as well. And so, when you refer to, to my friends making it into the budget, Mr. Bradford, what you should be aware of is that the folks who are included within this executive budget are actually the folks who submitted these applications. And there is not an application that was submitted that did not make its way into the budget. So, I look forward to being able to carry the dialogue on with you as we go forward through the end of, of this term and on into yours, but I want to make sure that we use accurate information when we're describing exactly what the situation and circumstances are. These are not folks who are my friends, they are folks who have actually submitted an application requesting funding from this source and that we reviewed, and in fact, that include in the executive budget, the proposed budget that is before this council right now for consideration.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You are welcome.
Uh, and Willie, just let me say, that any questions that you have, please ask them, and, and it's not because you fall against anything. I, I hope that you're asking for them.
Yes, and I want to make it to my constituents and to the council as, 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 after I take over, I would, I would be happy to be held responsible for any action that I, that I will engage in. Whatever questions, whatever, whoever I ask, whoever I, I don't want to support, I could, I would be willing to be held responsible for that decision, and I would face the consequences. So, I, it ain't personalities, it's just fairness to this, to this city. If, if we are funding people, I want to know if the city is, is receiving a good return on our, on our, on our tax dollars. That's all I'm saying.
Right, and I, I understand that, Willie. I, and I'm glad that you made that clear, that you're not against fixing streets, uh...
Of funding anybody, but are we receiving this bank file?
There you go. All right, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's on 115, about an hour ago.
I think that's what we stopped. Yeah, 115, the general fund budget with amendments.
Okay, now, Amendment 14, it talks about the...
Amendment 14?
I don't know. Amendment 14 of 115. That's the Black Cultural Arts Coalition funding of 50,000.
Right, that's an amendment to, I mean, I was, I was, I was, I was, I was told that if, if the amendment that's presented to eliminate the Riverfront, uh, funding passes, then myself along with Jeff Efferson would co-author this amendment to include $50,000 for the coalitions.
Well, hold it, this, that's what I'm trying now. What amendment is there to eliminate?
There is not any, they're not eliminating it. It's, I think, I think that's a, I mean, I think what we're talking about here is, there was an amendment to reduce the amount of funding to SRAK, and so what this does is goes back and adds in funding for the Black Cultural Arts Coalition at the same level that they're funded this year.
I thought SRAK was, uh, they haven't been reduced, have they?
200... There's an amendment offering to reduce their funding.
Mr. Jenkins, I...
This would keep it, this would protect the funding for the Black Cultural Arts Coalition at the same level that it is now.
I think the confusion may be here, in the executive budget that was recommended, those numbers were larger, and, and what the council amendments are doing is reducing those numbers. And I think what Ms. McCullough is doing is, in the event the Black Cultural Arts money gets caught up in the reductions, they have an amendment ready to put that money back in. So, I think when you hear talk about numbers being reduced, that's from what was presented in the executive budget, because that's what all these amendments are doing. These are all council amendments, their impact in the executive budget.
Let me just be sure, SRAK is being funded at the same level?
200 and...
15.
On this, it's at 200.
That's a reduction?
From the recommendations in the executive budget, Mr. Jenkins. The, the executive budget recommended funding them at a higher level, and it recommended funding the, the Black Cultural Arts Group at a higher level.
If you, if you passed the budget with the SRAK funding as submitted within the administration's executive budget, then there would not be a need for Amendment 14, because it would provide full funding for the Black Arts Coalition as it would come through the SRAK budget as it has in, in, in years past.
Okay.
I'm assuming that Amendment 14 would only be necessary in the event that the council chose to cut the funding for SRAK from what it is as submitted to you all in the executive budget.
All right, so now, what, what I thought we did, what occurred, uh, in last year's budget, SRAK was funded, the Black Arts Coalition, under their formula, get a part of that money, and that was an additional $50,000.
Right. Right, so the executive budget this year just combined that and submitted it for the increased amount. For example, last year, if they were scheduled for 50, you got to double that and gave them 100,000. So, the executive budget for this year simply said, give them 100,000, and you wouldn't need to do what you did last year. But the amendments may take that out, then you need this amendment to give them 50 to put it back into the budget.
Now, we got 14 amendments, so I haven't looked at all of them.
Well, he was asking for that particular one, on Amendment 14, which is, I think, your amendment, Mr. Thompson.
The funding as submitted for SRAK includes the $100,000 for the Black Arts Coalition.
And what, what is, what is our amendment? What has happened on our end? What has our amendment done to SRAK? That, that some proposition to reduce SRAK?
I think the, the administration's budget suggests SRAK, uh, funding SRAK at $640,000, which includes 100,000 for the Black Cultural Arts Coalition, and I'm not sure whose amendment it is, I'm, I'm sorry, but whoever's amendment it is that reduces the funding, reduces SRAK's funding from 640 to 215, and so the amendment...
And then offers back 40,000 for a couple of NEA matching grants.
And there's a match.
There's...
Right.
I don't know if it's two sets of 40, I can't remember.
Which amendment is it?
Two sets of 40, so that's back up to...
15 is the one we offered.
300-ish. I mean, that, I mean, the bottom line is, you take, whichever way you do, you're taking money from somewhere, right? I mean, it's, you gotta subtract that amount from somewhere else. And I, I mean, it all sounds great, and I'm not saying you can't do it, but you need to think to yourself, if I'm taking 50, putting 50 more in, in, whether it's SRAK or whatever, then you're either taking 50 out of your 150 for your civic appropriations number, or you're reducing your general fund budget. I mean, that reserve, I mean, that's, those are, where we are now in this deal, that's the way you need to think. So, you got 150,000 right now in civics appropriations, okay? That's earmark, it isn't specifically designated, as we've discussed, but that's clearly a weakness in this transition. But you either take out of that 150, and you have less, or you take out of your reserve side, yeah, you don't really take, because you reduced the amount you transferred, but ultimately, you are reducing your reserve number. Now, that, just, I think we need to just dumb it down to the simplest, those numbers are only coming from one of two things. So, that we know, you can sound very, more confusing than it is, that's really where we are now.
And to, to, to be further clear regarding the SRAK number, that 640 number, 100 comes out to the Black Arts Coalition, and, correct me if I'm wrong, of that which is remaining, 50% of that is also re-granted. So, you're talking about another 200-plus thousand that does not go to SRAK, but in fact, goes to other arts organizations, which is their purpose in serving as the central re-granting entity for arts funding for the city of Shreveport. So, when you boil it down, you're talking about, essentially, about 200,000 that actually goes specifically and directly towards the other functions and responsibilities for SRAK as a whole. The other 300-plus thousand ends up between Black Arts Coalition and other arts organizations across the city of Shreveport. Hence the reason as to why we thought, after more than a few years of tightening the belt, it was time to restore them back to where they had been prior to 2009.
And tomorrow, will you be at the meeting, so in case, uh, you can come up and, and explain this, uh, directly, uh, how you all re-grant this money out? And, and Willie, Willie, for the...
Oh, Ms. Gibson.
For the Black Arts Council...
Yes.
Uh, this money goes to...
Five different...
This, this money goes to help a lot of kids, it helps keep them off the street, it, 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 it teaches them a lot of skills, and, uh...
Arts.
And it's, and it's really for those kids, a lot of them live on the Cooper Road, uh, and, and, and a lot of times... And a lot of times, these are job money skills that they learn through these different programs. It's really, it's really a good program. Mr. Sibley, let's move on, please.
Yes, sir, that was ordinance 115, the general fund budget, 14 amendments. Ordinance 116 is adopting the 2015 retained risk fund budget. There are three amendments.
I think I remember what the process was there. We're just going to use the actual numbers from last year. I'm sorry, I didn't... You're talking about the retained risk?
Retained risk, correct.
In order to get it balanced, you're just going to use the actual numbers from last year, is that right?
Well, I think there's 200,000 something that's being moved just to balance that fund out. I think that's what Mr. Jenkins was asking.
And the retained risk fund, we're trying to figure out what's going to be spent this year.
Right.
And make sure that the revenues equal that expenditure. That's how we got that. Now, go beyond that.
All right. Is it the intent?
Okay.
So we have an idea of what's going to be spent, right? With all of these estimated appropriations and all of that, we do have an idea about three million?
And it's kind of based on what's been paid annually over the past several years because it's hard to... These are all estimates by lawyers in terms of what a case may settle for, what it may cause. So you just take what you spend, get what you're holding finance and get an idea of how much do we actually spend every year as opposed to parking eight or nine million dollars there that may just sit there.
Really have some leftovers?
Okay. If not, Dale, let's move on.
Ordinance 117 adopts the 2015 Metropolitan Plan and Commission Fund Budget.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Now, what actually are we... I mean, I reviewed that, but what actually are we... It's 1,005,000?
And there are no amendments there.
1,500?
Little over 1 million, looks like 1,83,400. And then the parish contributes their share.
And were we giving something back to the cattle parish commission and saying?
Six hundred.
No, that was something else, okay. That was something else that I saw, okay.
All right, Dale.
Ordinance 118 adopts the 2015 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. There are two amendments.
Okay, any questions or concerns about those two amendments? You want to read those two amendments, Dale?
Let's see, Mr. Chairman. Amendment one decreases their allocation from Riverfront by 250,000. It also decreases the mayor's summer program by 250,000.
That one will be amended and that figure, the decrease will be 50,000.
Based on earlier discussion.
Based on earlier discussion.
And amendment two, Mr. Chairman.
The mayor's summer budget.
Right.
And amendment two...
We're going to bring it back to what it was.
It's already changed.
Okay, yeah, it's changed, okay.
And amendment two, looks like it allocates the 5% that the council authorized community development to use out of the NIP monies for administrative costs.
Okay. Okay, continue, Dale.
Ordinance 119 adopts the 2015 Grants Special Revenue Fund Budget. There are no amendments there.
Okay, any questions or concerns? If not, please, Dale.
Ordinance 120 adopts the 2015 Shreveport Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund Budget. There are no amendments there.
Any questions or concerns? Now, Mr. Bradford, make sure if you've got some more questions and concerns, please raise your hand and ask them and if not, it won't be perceived that you're against something, that you just want to know some information on something.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Continue, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Ordinance 121 adopts the 2015 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. There are no amendments there.
I just want to throw a little hint out to you and the mayor. Downtown is something that you're going to need to really stay on, especially the entertainment district. Because you want to make sure that you're still on top of that because you don't want nobody down there playing Indians and Cowboys. Because if you don't, just Tyler, you remember the superintendent, you don't want to be at the high school football games playing Indians and Cowboys because if you did, you know, it's going to come right back on your desk and it's going to cut out on the participation at these football games. And the same thing about downtown. You want downtown to be a place where people can drive in from Spring Hill and Arcadia and Homer and Haynesville. You see, I'm... See, James know about Clayton Parish, driving in from Homer and Haynesville, come and spend some money. And that makes the tax base good. All right.
Continue, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ordinance 122 adopts the 2015 Golf Enterprise Fund Budget. There are no amendments.
Any questions?
I can't believe there's no amendment.
Right, we'll have somebody from SPA tomorrow and if y'all have any questions about the golf... There she is back there. Ms. Tyler, I don't know, maybe I'm putting the hot before the carpet, but she's one of the best administrators. She is super. Shelley has done a super job and she knows this city. Thank you, Shelley.
Ordinance 123, Mr. Chairman, adopts the 2015 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. There is one amendment.
You want to look at that, please, first, Dale?
This answer.
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah, it will increase the operating reserve by 9,700. It's not a large number, is it?
Okay.
Increased by what amount?
Nine thousand.
Nine, I thought you said...
Nine million, yeah, you did.
Yeah, it's nine thousand.
You didn't say it wasn't a large number.
Yeah.
Nine thousand.
I thought he was trying to... Dale, I thought he was trying to trick somebody. Well, you know, see, it comes from a family, you know, nine million dollars ain't no money. If you from Webster Parish and you've got a lot of oil wells on your place, Ms. Tyler, nine million dollars ain't no money.
It is really, right now.
That's hate.
Versus nine thousand.
Yeah, nine million and, you know, and you're getting all that oil and gas money and, you know, that's not... James, that's not very much money.
Continue, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ordinance 124 adopts the 2015 Water and Sewerage Fund Budget. There is one amendment.
Summer jobs.
You want to look at the amendment?
Hundred for more.
All right.
This is an administration amendment, but what it does is it increases the operating reserves in the water and sewer department because I think they needed that in order to, when they go out for bonds and that sort of thing. And they're switching one project, one or more projects to their capital budget, not paying for it out of this budget so that they can increase the operating reserves.
All right. Continue, Mr. Chairman, please.
Ordinance 125 adopts the 2015 Budget Funding Contractual Services provided to Sportran by Metro Management Associates Incorporated. There is one amendment there also.
It's 150,000. Sportran said that they were going to have to reduce services and lay off employees unless they got, well, it was about 600,000, but there was consensus in the budget meeting to fund them through the first quarter with an additional 150,000. Then the new administration will have to decide what you're going to do about it at that point.
That's correct.
Willie, you and Ms. Tyler hit that because when they start cutting out bus routes out there and off the Cooper Road and, you know, you're going to get blamed for it and you need to look at it and one thing that people look at too, Ms. Tyler, when you've got companies coming in, jobs coming in, they want to know what kind of public transportation you have for their workers to get to the job. And even, you're talking about helping to grow places like LSU and because Willie Knight is drawing out that way, they have employees who don't have transportation and, you know, they're going to wonder, they got students who need to go to Southern and LSU, Willie, who are going to need the bus service. I'm going to jump and scream if they cut out bus service at that point. It might make me run for the council again and I know Cedric doesn't want me to do that, but I would advise that you all be on top of this. Yeah, it's coming up. All right, Dale, I'm sorry.
Orderance 126 adopts the 2015 Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund Budget. There is one amendment.
Okay, you want to look at?
It's an amendment to purchase meters and some equipment.
Okay, no questions? Dale, please.
Orderance 127 adopts the 2015 Convention Center Enterprise Fund Budget. No amendments.
Any questions or concerns?
Or maybe...
If not, I think that was kind of what Willie was talking about.
He has the number needed.
A while ago, so I just want to make sure Willie, everything is covered. Please, move on, Dale.
Orderance 128 adopts the 2015 Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund Budget. There is one amendment.
Please, let's look at that amendment.
This is a hotel?
The hotel.
The Hotel. This includes 202,000 to make the expenditures equal the revenue and this is basically to make sure that there's enough money to pay the note.
Okay, any questions or concerns? And Ms. Tyler, I know you're going to have time to really look into that because that's going to be stabbing on your desk. All right, Dale, please.
Orderance 129 adopts the 2015 Debt Service Fund Budget. There is one amendment.
Let's look at that amendment, please.
And then, I believe that amendment anticipates a potential millage rollback in 2015. I believe it's proposed by the councils, they've already allowed for those funds to come off the debt service.
Yeah, this reduces ad valorem taxes by 6,970,000 and that will be made up by reducing the reserves in this fund. And there's adequate money in there to do it and I think legal is happy that we're moving in that direction.
And that was suggested by a good Republican friend?
Because really, I wanted the mayor to take credit for lowering property taxes twice in the same term. That is really an out...
Trying to get him on the Republican side.
I'm trying, I'm going to leave my little form right there and see, because there's a lot of opportunities statewide in Republican offices right now. So I want to make sure he gets a chance at them.
But it looked like, Dale, it looked like I saw the paper this morning, I can't remember if that was on the front page or next page where Oliver's friend was in a Republican meeting. Was that on the front page or what?
Who's his friend?
Which friend was it, just so I know?
Brother Patrick Williams. Was that on the front page or...
It was second page.
Oh, second page?
Second section, I mean.
Okay, second section. And I, you know, I tried to look for Oliver on there and I looked, I said, that's Oliver? I said, no, that's too old looking for Oliver. And then...
He's more of a Tea Party, really, is what he is than I am. I'm more of a middle roader.
Oh, okay, then, okay.
I think that's what the voters figured out.
Well, now, I'm not...
I'm not necessarily going there. I was just a little bit on the side making a joke, I wasn't trying to...
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure backpedal from there.
Yeah, I'm not getting into that with Oliver. Yeah, I'm not, because anytime...
I was referring to the individual in the newspaper, being the Tea Party, not Oliver.
Oh, well, Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that. I don't... Nah, nah, nah. Ms. Tyler, he ain't going to get me into that.
Let's go on, 129, are we on 130 yet?
I didn't hear that last thing.
130, we're on 130 and it's interesting.
Pressing time here.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, I just want to get one clarification because right in line with what Councilman Oliver Jinkas referenced, we are in fact, we're proud of multiple millage reductions, tax reductions during the course of both terms of this administration. I just want to ask of staff, is there any concern?
Charles actually came, and Charles came in with, that's the number that he proposed.
Well, and I want to make clear with Charles for the record, is there any impact?
Is Charles back there?
He's there, sitting just in front of Shelley. Is there any concern about what this does to our general obligation bonding capacity? Because I do not want to saddle Mrs. Tyler or the incoming council with any less capacity to address the GOB needs of the city than what we currently have.
I'm so glad to hear you say that.
Because while I would love to add this to my extensive and exhaustive resume, which we'll detail at a later time, I want to... No, no, we'll get to it before the book. Publishing takes so long, Mr. Shine. I want Charles to give us some input as to whether or not this has any impact on our GOB capacity. I know that number right now is about 300-plus million, or at least it has been. I want to see what this potentially would do to that.
This has no effect on our capacity to borrow as far as what our limit is. It's just if you were to go out and spend another 200,000 or something like that, at some point, the millage might have to be kicked up a little bit to cover that debt.
200,000 or maybe, Charles?
But right now, this lowers the mill, this will lower the millage, five mills next year to 17 mills for debt service from the 22.05 we're at now, which gives us plenty of money to cover our debt. The refunding and the rest of our debt that we have out there will fall off in 2019, which would then just leave us with that 200 or that 175 million left to pay. And depending on what could be added, there should be enough coverage to even issue more debt without raising that millage back up above where we're setting it next year.
To be clear, by 2019, all of our existing debt, with the exception of 2011, will be paid off.
And 14, yes, yeah, right. The 81 and the 93 we just sold.
And the only thing that'll be left will be the 175 from 2011.
Correct.
And in the event, because this is very crucial in terms of any future needs that the current administration or the next council may have, one of the ways in which we were able to effectively establish our case to the voters for the 2011 bond proposal was that it would not increase their taxes.
Correct.
Is there anything that we are doing here that would prevent Mrs. Tyler or this incoming council, in the event that they needed to go out to the voters, from being able to make the same claim and be able to offer a proposition under the same terms and circumstances?
Depending on when it was sold and with the fund balance we have right now available, I would say probably not.
Correct.
But if it does, it's going to be a very small increase.
And Charles, that's wise because, you know, this is your own record and some of us will go back and pull this stuff up. I saw Bill Clinton had said something 15 years ago and they went back and pulled it up the other day, so that's wise. All right, and I just want to, and Ron, I just want to make you, just make all of y'all who come in aware, be careful of what you say because when I first got on the council, if you said something, they'd have to go back through a stack of newspapers, pull it up. Now, the only thing they have to do is hit the computer. It's right there and they can bring it back to you. Charles, appreciate it, thank you.
I want to be very clear, so you're saying that they will be able to do that without having to have an increase in millages because an increase in the millages reads as an increase in taxes and we know that the ability to be able to effectively counter the Tea Party community and other folks out there who would be against any sort of potential...
Now, why are you looking at Oliver when you start talking about the Tea Party community?
Because I know Oliver's not Tea Party.
Oh, okay, then, okay.
But I wanted to say, before you... It is illegal for us to collect more... Before we get an answer to this on the record, it is illegal for us to collect more than we currently have and I'm not doing a political discussion here, I'm just, so that we don't get him in trouble, it is illegal for us to collect more than we owe to pay that debt service.
Well, now, I'm going to trust the word of Charles who has decades of experience at this. As much as I respect you, Mr. Jenkins, I want to hear what the subject matter experts have to say because what I do not want to do, in the event that there is a decision for whatever the needs may be, we may end up with some catastrophic circumstances where this next administration, this next council, needs to go to the voters to be able to ask for the ability to go out and sell some general obligation bonds. And if they've got to propose that or package that as constituting a tax increase, then their ability to be able to successfully convince voters to vote in favor of that becomes exponentially higher than if you tell them that we can do this without any increase in your taxes. And so I want to make sure, as much as I would love to be able to take the political credit for what's being proposed here, that we do not, in line with what Mr. Shine has admonished numerous times prior to this point, do anything that's going to place the incoming administration, incoming council in a negative posture in terms of their ability to be able to go out and address the needs of this city. I know, Mr. Jenkins, that there are those who would not have any problem at all with us ever issuing another bond of general obligation debt ever in the history of the us ever issuing another bond of general obligation debt ever in the history of the city of Shreveport, but with the infrastructure issues and challenges that we have, that's not a realistic possibility, and so I do not want this measure, as well intentioned as it may be, to place the city of Shreveport more and above the Tyler administration, the Glover administration, and whatever else may come thereafter, I don't want to put us in a posture to where it becomes more difficult for us to be able to go out and establish an effective case for addressing the infrastructure needs of this city than what we had in 2011 in going out before the voters at that time, where we could tell them, in all earnestness, that this proposal will not result in an increase in your taxes, because had we had to go across that hurdle, then we probably would have ended up with a much bigger challenge than what we had. So, with that, Charles, back to you.
And you see, Charles...
And I will put it this way.
See, some of us...
I cannot, I cannot guarantee that you will never have to raise your taxes again, but I will tell you this, that come 2019, there is $15 million, or, let's see, $12 million in debt, over and above what we are, what would be due at that time, being collected. So there was, basically, there is $12 million that could fund future debt based on what we're currently collecting.
That starts in 1919 or current?
19, and some of it drops off in 16, but all of it drops off in 19.
Any more questions for Charles?
Is there a need to address that before 1919?
No.
So...
Because you've got a 50, $2 million fund balance in there also, that you're playing with.
Reserve, that's already baked in before we even would get to that number.
Do we have a legal obligation to do that, which Oliver has indicated?
It would have to be reduced some, we are reducing it a little bit more than we are legally obligated to, but it is not endangering our, the fund in any way.
And what's the difference between those two reductions?
About two mills. It'd be three mills instead of five mills, which is, you know, a couple million dollars.
If I were the incoming council and the incoming mayor, that would be a difference that I would want to see at least be known, and have that as an option for discussion and deliberation before this council ends up making that decision. Mr. Chairman, you made a big point about us not committing them to fixing the streets. I, I think this is a larger point, that we not put them in a position of diminishing their revenue stream, because that diminution, diminution of their revenue stream ends up, I think, having much larger implications than us deciding to fix or not fix the streets, which is something that we should have done three years ago, but this, I think, is even a larger consideration than that, in that it ends up putting them in a posture of not having available to them resources that this council has available to them now. If three mills is what would be appropriate, then that's what I would suggest, and leave the option of the other additional two mills to them when they come in and take a, a look at this situation.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know whether you don't hear well, or your perception of what people say is so bad. I have been a part of fixing 120 million, I'm, I'm sorry, 120 miles of streets in this, in this town, and I would never go on record saying that I'm against fixing streets. Now, I will go on record again, saying what I just got through, saying of agreeing with Mr. Bradford of tying the hands of, of Ms. Tyler and the, and the council members who are coming in, and I think the people who voted for them got enough sense, they had enough insight to see that these people said that their number-one job would be fixing the streets in the city of Shreveport, and I think the citizens, Ms. Tyler, had enough confidence in it, that that would be what you would jump on. So I wouldn't want to tie your hands within two weeks, saying that, look, I'm for this, and, and in two weeks' time, we wouldn't even have a chance to pass nothing across this council that would be a binding. I have the utmost of confidence that you all are gonna get on the streets, you're not gonna kick your can down the road, so...
I want to get some clarification, Mr. ...
Oh, who is that?
I want to get some clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That was them in the back saying...
There's some concern that passage of 129 could present some future problems with bond issues, or the capacity to do bond issues, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
My, my concern is that if you are lowering the millage by five, when what's only suggested or necessary, according to Charles, would be to lower it to three, then you have potentially put the city in a position that in the event that there's a need to go out for a general obligation bond issue that has to go before the voters, rather than being able to say that this does not result in any sort of increase in your taxes, you may end up having to package it as an actual tax increase, a millage increase, in order to be able to serve, effectively service the debt. Part of what made, I believe, the difference in passing the 2011 bond issue, 175 million, largest ever in the city's history, by 75-plus million dollars, was that we were able to say to voters, without any fear of contradiction, that there will not be any increase whatsoever in your current tax burden if you vote for this measure. And, and what I'm concerned about, while I agree that we certainly should not collect any more than what's necessary, I don't want us to end up going too far in terms of ratcheting that down, because it could put us in a posture to when that next time comes around, and that could be one of the options that's needed to address some other aspect of our city's infrastructure, or some other capital need, is to go back before the voters, and you end up, instead of being able to say that you can do $300 million, or $100 million, or $75 million, and it does not result in an increase in your property taxes, you may end up saying, unfortunately, that we need to do $100 million in projects, but in order to do so, we need to increase that results in a tax increase, and we know, within this political climate, the difference between being able to effectively offer a, a measure that does not result in a tax increase compared to one where you're actually suggesting a tax increase. Those are completely different sets of circumstances, and what Oliver Jenkins has proposed would be a five-mill reduction, what Charles has indicated is that what would actually be in line and keep us properly from not collecting over what's due would be a three-mill reduction.
Right, just so we're clear, Oliver Jenkins initially approached, proposed a number significantly more, because I still, this is, to say that it's not even, you've gotten this letter from the state that says we're overcollecting, okay? So I went back and then backed into what our number should be, so there would never be a discussion, and I came up with a number north of about 10 mills, maybe 11 mills. Then I approached Charles, and I said, now, I understand you have a plan to get this in line, and he said, yes, this is my number, and so I thought, well, he's a subject matter expert, so I'm not going to debate that. We have 1.7 times the required amounts in our reserve, I mean, so we could not collect for a whole year property taxes, still have enough for our reserve, and then do a whole another year, and we get about three-quarters of the year through, and still be able to pay for, I mean, now, the problem is, and it's a little bit of the discussion that we had the last time when we did the bond thing, the question was, well, how can y'all take on more debt and not have to raise taxes, because we were asking for too much from them? And I don't think we can go with the theory, well, we're gonna ask, we're gonna incur more debt than we need to with the, in the event that we have to ask the voters to take on more debt, because that's the opposite way that the program is designed. Now, I don't think there was anything, any malfeasance or any suggestion, what happened, we got much lower rates than we initially, when stuff rolled off at 7%. We were able to rebase line them at four, and then when we incurred our debt, we were getting three and a half, and so there, I know you want it on record, there were some good financial management plans taken on by the city that reduced that debt obligation. I agree with that, but I don't necessarily say that the argument for keeping more than what's required is the opportunity to take on more debt in the future without raising taxes, because that is, whether it's against the law, I'm not going to debate that, certainly not if in the intent of debt and why you have a debt service fund, because every time you agree to a GOB bond, that premise is that the city of Shreveport can make whatever financial obligations it needs to, to pay off that debt.
Where did the five mills come from? Where did the five mills number come from? How did you land on the five?
This, this year, we, we collect, we collected 22.05 mills for debt service. Next year, we will just collect 17 mills for debt service.
And my intent was just to put up what his plan was in the budget, rather than wait to do what we did previous year, which we just got to that number, and then we got to the, y'all came up with the proposal to roll it back, and I said, well, let's at least indicate that that's our intention in the budget, because obviously, once again, it's really just the budget, because you still have to enact the ordinance come April or whatever, April or May of whatever, that actually physically rolls back, but I, Oliver Jenkins' intent on this was just to assume we're gonna do what he had planned to do and, and reflected in our current budget, which, at least, for certain sake of answering the mail, it shows that we are doing something to reduce that amount of debt that we're, that the taxpayers are paying for when we don't need the obligation today.
Um, Mr. Tyler, I would just suggest this, as an old politician, I suggest that you would look into this, and to see, um, what your suggestion would be, I'd get with Mr. Bradford then, and, uh, because whatever we pass, you're gonna have to live under it, it's gonna be your responsibility. Circuit is gonna be gone, I'm gonna be gone, because Oliver will be down here with you discussing this like he's doing today, but, uh, I was just looking at this, and, and Mr. Bradford looked at the legality of it, and, and then I looked at the financial ramifications of this, and if you have a suggestion for tomorrow, we'd be glad to accept it before we vote on this, and if not, once we vote on it, you're gonna have to live under this, and Willie, you too, and James, you too. So I'd, I'd look at some of these changes that we're talking about, yes, ma'am?
I just want to ask a question.
Okay.
So are you saying we will not have an opportunity to do any amendments after you pass on it?
Well, you know, you would have an opportunity to do some amendments on it, yes, I mean, anything we do, you will have some opportunity to do some amendments on it, but if you have some input that you want to do before we do that, then you can do it tomorrow, if you want to suggest that we could postpone this and, and hold on to it for a minute or two, then we, we do that.
Chairman?
Yes.
Of course, the budget has to be passed by December 15th, so, and also, all amendments have to be in writing.
And you don't, you don't want an amendment that appears to be increasing the mills.
Right, right.
I understand, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
Right, right.
I mean, I know you have to pass the budget by 15.
You really don't want to do that, but now, if it, if it, if we pass this, and then it comes to the point where you have to do it, then you have to do it, but like Sam said, you really don't want to have to, uh, do this, and this is why I'm giving y'all an opportunity to, to, to give you input. Now, you know, the budget can pass, but this doesn't have to pass in the budget, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna pass the whole, we're gonna pass the budget tomorrow, but if you think this is not good for the city, or if you think it's good for the city, uh, believe it or not, this is, this is a big step, you know, because you don't know, you don't know what might happen down the road, you know, we, we don't, we just, you know, we've got a few fortune tellers, but I've found a lot of the fortune tellers can be wrong from time to time, and you don't want to put yourself, you don't want to put your back up against the wall if you don't have to. Now, if it's, if it's all right to do it, then do it, so this is why I'm saying, I, if I was you, between now and tomorrow, I'd get with Mr. Bradford, and maybe you want to talk to the finance director, and, and see the, the, the merit in this, you know, and I'm not telling you it's bad or good, I'm just, I'm just giving you an opportunity to, to take a look at it, and Sam is right, and of course, Oliver is right, too, I, I think it's, 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 uh, it's, it's kind of illegal on the, on the legal side, and Mr. Bradford, I'm not an attorney, sometimes I do practice a little law, but don't turn me in, uh, uh, I think it's kind of illegal, too, to, to collect more taxes than really what you need on the people, but, um, I'm not, that's not one of my areas, but that's why I ask you to, to look into it, you might want to call the state, you know, you might want to get on telephone tomorrow and call the state, and, 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 Ms. Tyler, you know, you, you have called the state a whole number of times when you supervise it, because you have to do that, you know, to make sure that you're within the state law, so we're gonna leave it at that, and if y'all have any questions, we, we do that.
Chairman, I want to be clear, if you don't mind.
Please.
You have an amendment that would reduce the millages by five, correct?
That's what the amendment is currently written, yes, sir.
And, and the point is, is whether that reduction should be five or three?
Right.
Or 10.
Or 10.
Or 10.
Whatever it is, the, the, the concern is, is that it would end up at some point with, bless it, with millages having to go up, if you've lost the difference between three and five, then that's going to constitute a millage increase that has to be voted on and approved by the next council and signed off on by the mayor. My point is, if you're giving those up, you may not ever get them back, and you may end up putting the city...
You know, right, I mean, you don't want to have to go to the city, I mean, you don't want to go to the people during your administration and raise this, because if you do, then you're gonna get stuck with, hey, Oliver got in there and raised our taxes. Yes, ma'am.
You know, I just want to ask...
James, you're gonna be a part of that, too.
I have one other question, I mean, we're talking about rolling back.
Right.
Instead of...
Rolling up now, right, we're talking about rolling back now.
How far?
Yeah, how far?
Go back five or go back three?
Right, right.
See, if we roll it back too far, you might not have no opportunity to go out and do some more bonding, unless you go to the city, I mean, unless you go to the people and say, hey, look, yeah, right, we gotta do this, we gotta increase that. So that's one thing that you have to think about, whether you want to leave it where it is, or whether you want to roll it back three, or whether you want to roll it back five, and...
Or you could think about it, you could think about it, we may not have to act upon the amendment at all.
Right.
And it does not affect you passing the budget?
No, we're gonna pass the, the main legislation, you just may not act upon the amendment. I'm not, you know, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying there are a number of options here. One of them is, I mean, this council doesn't have to act upon the amendment, I don't think right now, just have to act upon the main legislation, if you guys want to come back and look at it, but it's still be here.
Right.
Let me kill it altogether.
Actually understands it, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Sam Jenkins, let me kill it altogether. Only if you want to give this administration credit for once again cutting taxes, do you want to pass this one. If you want to deny this administration credit for cutting taxes once again, then you want to not pass this change.
Interesting technique. You're a real man on this politics. You're real, you, you try, see, you know, you tried that on me, my first year, and now I see the way you're going, I got it. I mean, I, I mean, say my motivation is anything but pure in this, man, this is absurd, but that's okay, start again.
I think they're John Charles with you.
But the truth thing with me, for you to look at this, Ms. Tyler, and I don't mind getting credit with the mayor with lowering the taxes, but I don't want to put you in a position where, then you gotta come back and raise them.
I know.
You know, so that's, that's, you know...
Proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Ordinance 130 adopts the 2015 Streets Special Revenue Fund Budget. There are two amendments, and I believe those two remove the merit pay proposal, as well as the streets bonding proposal from that fund.
Okay, move on, Dale. I'm sorry, wait a minute, wait a minute, Sam over here.
What was that again?
I'm trying to distract Sam.
Ordinance 130, the two amendments, I believe one removes the merit pay proposal, and the other removes the street bonding proposal out of the Streets Special Revenue Fund, those two amendments.
Carry on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We, we just want to say from the administration's standpoint, we believe that one of those two options, this council should give consideration to. We either need to fix the streets, or we need to give our employees a rate, to deny the citizens of this city a chance to see improved street infrastructure... To deny the citizens of this city a chance to see improved street infrastructure, um, is wrong. And at the same time, to also deny our city employees a much-earned, much-deserved raise is wrong as well. One of those options, uh, is more than viable, more than doable, and it should be something that this council should be willing to do. Now, the thousand-dollar one-time lump sum, that's great. Wonderful. That's not gonna do anything come January. It's been since two thousand nine, since there's been anything other than a two percent cost of allowance, a cost of living, uh, allowance increase for our non-civil service employees. Uh, we propose six percent in consideration for that length of time, uh, since we've had merit pay raises in the budget. Uh, at the very least, we would hope that this council, if you don't like the six percent, then give consideration to a four percent. But to just simply say no to these employees, uh, who have done so much with so little for five years is wrong. And I would hope that this council, uh, would give some consideration, uh, to, uh, one of these two considerations. Let's fix the streets, or let's give our employees a raise. Uh, but let's do something that allows us to be able to address one of these two glaring, long-ignored problems that we now find ourselves in a position to have the resources to do at least something about one of them.
All right, um, uh, Ms. Tyler and Willie, James. I trust you all to do something about the streets. I think y'all campaigned on them, about fixing the streets. And, uh, I trust you enough, uh, because, you know, you're looking at maybe two weeks. And, you know, I, I trust you all enough and, and, and I don't mind going out of office with my vote. And I appreciate the mayor's position over that, and I appreciate him saying that we don't wanna fix no streets, but I know he's, uh, telling the fear when he says that. Because I think everybody up here wants, want, want the streets to be fixed. And, uh, uh, I think we wanna, I think everybody up here wanna give the, uh, employees a raise. And I know you all wanna do that, but, you know, you don't have two weeks.
To go for it, Mr. Sean?
And, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you saying that, but I think I was probably voting before you were voting. And I don't really need anybody to tell me how I need to vote, and I appreciate you doing that. And that's what I'm trying to tell you.
Vote for it, Mr. Sean.
That's what I'm trying to tell you, let's wait two weeks. Don't tie these people's hands, let's don't tie James' hand.
But it's this council that has the responsibility for passing the budget.
Now, you, well, you
Now, the next council, the next administration can amend the budget
Let there.
to their leisure, but it's this council that has the
I have an obligation to pass the budget
charter-driven obligation to pass the budget by December fifteenth.
To pass the budget, how
And I'm saying either fix the streets or give our employees a raise.
I see mine.
Don't, don't deny the city
I don't vote for you, you don't vote for me.
I have an option, Mr. Sean.
Dale, 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 let's, let's, because me and the mayor, we, we'll go outside and get this on. Go ahead, Dale.
Ordinance one thirty-one.
I'll see you outside, like you say, I'll see you.
You got plenty of room.
Yeah, I see you outside. Yeah, I got plenty of room. That's right, Rose. Come on, Dale, please.
With all due respect, Mr. Sean.
Please, Dale, Mr. Mayor, you can tell me this after.
I, I know you only mean that within the verbal context.
Just that ain't need to go there.
Ordinance one thirty-one, Mr. Chairman?
Dale, please.
Ordinance one thirty-one adopts the 2015 Downtown Development Authority Budget. There are no amendments, but we do anticipate having to amend this budget at some future point to allow for the purchase of new parking meters. We're still trying to put those numbers together.
Right. Any questions or comments?
Dale, second.
No amendment at this time.
All right, Dale, please.
Uh, ordinance one thirty-eight amends the 2014 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. This matter was previously postponed, and I believe Bonnie, we're ready to go forward with this one today, or tomorrow.
Bonnie, ready, I can't see you back there.
She said, yes.
And I, and Bonnie, I don't hear well, I see better than I see. I mean, I see better than I hear. Thank you, Bonnie. And I know somebody has heard you, but I, I like to hear for myself. Because I found out a lot of times that you're in the court of law, and people, no, you didn't hear, that wasn't what I said. Okay.
Ordinance one thirty-nine amends the 2014 General Fund Budget. This matter was previously postponed, and this matter involves public works, doing some internal movement of funds around, and the purchase of three additional knuckle boom trucks.
Any, any questions for the, uh, public works? And I, and I applaud those, uh, those new trucks, because, because, uh, uh, Ms. Tyler, I'm gonna be the first one to call you. If, 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 if you drive around this city and you see trash left everywhere, because I remember that was a part of your campaign problem. I wanna make sure that the city's clean.
And those trucks are in direct support of the bulk collection program.
Right, I appreciate that, and Mr. Harris, I, I, I hope that you would get to Ms. Tyler and explain to her what those trucks are doing. Okay?
Anything, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Dale.
Ordinance one forty amends the 2014 Airports Enterprise Fund Budget. This matter was previously postponed. Uh, this is some internal movement within the airport budget to move funds out of their operating reserve to a specific project to address some security concerns.
Any questions? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I heard that Airport Director would be going somewhere in California. I told him if I wasn't so old, I'd pick up and move with him, but I'm, I'm just too
On beach.
But Tyler, you're gonna be worried with me from now, because I'm too old to move anywhere.
Last day will be December fifteenth, Mr. Chairman. He has been selected as the, uh, Director of the Long Beach, California Airport.
I told him I'd love to go with him.
Eighteen thousand employees.
That's right, you wanna, you wanna, uh,
Eighteen thousand.
Can you, you, you think you can have him down here tomorrow so we can let him know how
Actually, I had hoped to do so, he is traveling, he's going to be here tomorrow? Very good.
He's gonna, he'll be here tomorrow.
He had indicated that he might have some difficulty in being here, but, uh, Bill is indicating yes.
Didn't wanna, didn't wanna
Bill's back there.
Bill's back there.
Bill, come see him back here.
I see, yeah, and, and Bill, you've done a fine job.
One, one of their biggest collective accomplishments, Mr. Sean, council members, is that they took the airport reserve from a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, at the end of the, uh, uh, parking fiasco that was facilitated by one of our other local elected officials, uh, to now being over six million.
Now, what did I tell y'all? What, what did I tell y'all? What did I tell y'all? You see, I had a comeback to bite you?
Now, 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 that was not a local elected official, it was not elected at the time.
Well, that's all right.
Functioning in a consultant capacity, shall we say. Uh, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar reserve has now gone to over six million dollars.
That's, that's, okay.
In a span of just about, how many years, Bill? Four years. Outstanding leadership by Bill.
That's, that's what I tell you, get him down here tomorrow, and, and we wanna let him know that we appreciate it, don't wanna say goodbye. Uh, I'm just too old to move with it. You know, I don't put too many years in.
Ordinance one forty-one, Mr. Chairman?
Well, well, Dale, I forgot though, if, if I go out there, they would send me my retirement check, it, it Yeah, this, yeah, Ron said they'd send it to me.
It just won't go so far along.
There you go.
Ordinance one forty-one, Mr. Chairman?
Said we gotta be calling you. I don't know whether you can help me or not.
One forty-one.
Come on, Dale.
One forty-one amends the 2014 Golf Enterprise Fund Budget. This is to provide for concession services at Huntington Park.
We got Shelley, is Shelley still back there?
She is. No, she's
She's on the other side.
Shelley, I'm gonna get Ms. Stool to sit on there, so I can see that back there, I'm kinda short anyway. Uh, you, you all have any questions, or anything that you all wanna ask Shelley about, uh, uh, on the Huntington Golf Course? And James, I think that's in your area.
Uh, no, it's
Your area?
No, it's, it's in council, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be yours, yes.
Your district, yes, sir.
The airport?
No, no!
Huntington.
Huntington. Yeah, Huntington Golf Course.
Ordinance I don't think there are any questions.
All right, thank you, Shelley.
Got taken out of, uh,
Yeah, I was, you know, I was I'm gonna come out there and play some golf, it was in my, it was in my district.
Ordinance one forty-two, Mr. Chairman, please. Amends the 2014 Budget for the Water and Sewage. Ordinance one forty-two amends the 2014 Budget for the Water and Sewage Enterprise Fund Budget. This matter was previously postponed. We'll ask the council tomorrow to remove this item. This was the item in Water and Sewage that was coming out of operating funds, it's now gonna come out of capital funds, so we'll ask that one forty-two
That's one forty-two.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Rose, I'll accept the motion from you tomorrow to remove that.
Oh, tomorrow?
Yeah, on tomorrow, to remove that from the agenda.
Ordinance one forty-three amends the 2014 Riverfront Development Fund Budget. This matter was previously postponed. This matter would transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the current SKEDA budget to Project Celebration, excuse me. Did I have that right? Project Celebration for Domestic Violence, had to, can read the notes.
Yes, I, with Dale, uh, I was a pretty good penmanship, uh, teacher, so
I may need some lessons.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get together and, and give you some lessons on penmanship.
Ordinance one fifty, Mr. Chairman, amends the
Uh, Ms. Tyler, I don't think we do much of that now in the school system, when you and I was coming up, you know, you used to teach penmanship.
Oh, yes.
Teach kids how to write. Cedric, you remember that? Cedric had a terrible handwriting.
Still do.
That left-handed thing. Ordinance one fifty.
Left-handed and upside down.
That's what I was about to say, you know, left-handed people can't write no way. I hope the left-handed people didn't hear me say that.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance one
That's why I'm this left-handed.
Amends the 2014 General Fund Budget, appropriate funds therein for HR, Legal, and IT. Uh, we previously discussed that some internal movement to allow for end-of-the-year, uh, expenses. There's one amendment, and this amendment provides the Marshals Office with the ability to provide their employees with a lump sum payment. Uh, the Marshals Office took this out of their discretion every Monday, so they will transfer that amount to the city of Shreveport. But because we're their fiscal agent, we had to accept it and basically allow for them to give their employees the one thousand dollars.
Okay, my only question is, is this labeled okay, even though it doesn't mention Marshall?
Uh, in the amendment, it should.
In the amendment, it does, but in the ordinance heading, it says HR, Legal, and IT, and when I click on Amendment, it talks about the Marshals Office. And I, my only question is
I heard him miss class.
I think the title of the ordinance probably just says amending the general fund, and that's all you, that's your parameter.
Okay, got it. But you see what I was saying more, and I have
Thanks, Julie, I knew she'd be on top of it.
Yeah, that was just telling him what he does, this adds to it.
Okay.
Ordinance one fifty-one closes and abandons a sidewalk dedication in School Park Subdivision, Section thirty-five Township eighteen, Range fourteen. Otherwise provides with respect there to this matter was previously postponed.
Willie, ask. Yes, it'll be in your area. All right, any questions?
Ordinance one fifty-one.
If not, Dale, move on, please.
Ordinance one fifty-two closes and abandons Pennix Street and an adjacent diagonal alley between Huron Avenue and Missouri Avenue in the Queensborough Annex, Section ten, Township seventeen, Range fourteen. Otherwise provides with respect there to this matter was, was previously postponed.
Ready to move forward on it tomorrow.
All right, Sam. Okay, move on, Dale, please.
Ordinance one fifty-three closes and abandons the alley in the twenty-seven-hundred block of James Avenue between Greenwood Road and James Avenue in the Bel Air subdivision, Section ten, Township seventeen, Range fourteen, otherwise provides with respect there to this matter was also previously postponed.
Ready to move forward on it tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, let's move on, Dale, please.
Ordinance one fifty-four accepts a bid for the right and privilege of placing and maintaining bus benches with advertising on the public right-of-way, granting the right and privilege, and otherwise providing with respect there to this matter was previously postponed.
Uh, any questions? If not, let's move on, please.
Mr. Chairman, that, that might
I think we have somebody down there from, uh,
Mr. Washington's here.
Mr. Washington, the bus company, anybody have any questions for Mr. Washington?
I, I don't think I really have any questions, but you may have some people come down tomorrow to talk about this. I think the existing company that does this work seems to have some issues, I guess, with this process. Uh, you know, I, they did contact me, I told them the best thing to do is come down and maybe talk with the council and let the council know, but I know we have public bid laws that we have to follow.
That I level?
Yeah, I level, yeah.
I got a letter and mail from I level.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You wanna come up and maybe give us a comment?
Well, it's not really, it's, I'm not sure he needs to say anything, but
Right.
I'm not gonna get him in trouble if he says
I'm certainly not questioning
I might wanna ask him some questions.
Okay, all right.
There was a bid put out earlier this year that referenced an RFP for, sorry, uh, referenced a proposal for a bitch advertising here in the city. Uh, what we decided to do was, we had a selection committee that came up, looked at each bid, scored the bids independently, was put together as a collective effort. And at that point, um, the vendor that we chose, which, uh, which is a New Orleans-based company, was selected. Um, the current contractor has had the bitch proposal for twenty-seven years now. And hadn't been out for bid. Of course, we started getting pressure from other, uh, bitch, uh, bitch companies wanting to, um, have the right to have that proposal. So we put it out for bid, we talked with City Legal.
And I think y'all did the right thing.
So we did what we were supposed to do and try to make sure we clean up the contracts, uh, and make sure it's been bid out fairly.
It sounded like I level was interested in maintaining the contract, right?
They, they were interested, they, they did submit a bid. Um, their bid was not, uh, I think they came in as the number two spot. So the number one person denied itself, then it went to the number two spot. Uh, but it's at this point, they lost the bid
Oh, they've lost.
according to the committee that was put together to evaluate the proposals. And I don't have liberty to go and say, look, I'm gonna pass it to I level, because they
I'm told that that's the American way.
Yeah, I mean
Y'all did it
They've done a fine job for us, I will, I will say that I level has done a fine job for us, but in all due respect to the process, we wanted to make sure that we, uh, put it out for bid.
And I agree with you, did the right thing. Okay, any more questions for Mr. Washington?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Could you quantify the, the revenue difference between the two?
Mr. Bright has all the numbers.
Especially since we're already talking about a budget amendment to provide additional funding for you guys to be able to maintain the current level of service here just for the first quarter. And if not facing the possibility of, uh, of a route reduction, what, what's the revenue difference between first to second, and how far over down you can go?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, the revenue we're currently getting from I level is one thousand ninety-five dollars, uh, a month. Uh, the minimum guarantee from Go Graphics is double that, uh, around two thousand dollars a month.
Y'all, y'all did the, y'all did the right thing.
Let's talk about not what's in the current, what's in the proposed, what's in the difference between I level's proposed, as opposed to the first, the one that you all selected.
It's about the same. Uh, the I level, uh, is seven dollars and fifty cents per bench, um, and Go Graphics is ten dollars per bench. Um, where we're gonna see more revenue is, uh, we expect revenue above the minimum guarantee. Uh, and that's based on a percentage of gross advertising sales. Um, I level, uh, their benches are sixty dollars per location, um, flat rate across the city. Uh, I think they may charge a little bit more for, uh, political campaigns, so if you're paying more than sixty dollars, uh, I think they said in their proposal, they do do that, uh, about seventy dollars, uh, for political campaigns.
Well, on, on one candidate, uh, Ms. Tyler, I don't know whether that was you or Willie, well, but they showed me a whole lot of money.
Wasn't ours.
We didn't have a whole lot.
Because they had a lot, they had a lot of benches who, uh, who, uh, and, and Jeff said, don't look at him, now, because he didn't have that many.
I had a couple.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff said he didn't have that many.
One of the other things I definitely wanna point out is, we didn't just look at the revenue dollars that came in, we're trying to rebrand the system and make sure the system is putting out a positive image throughout the community. So one of the things where we look at the, the bitch they're gonna be providing, are they gonna really be cleaned up, and they're gonna be really putting out, uh, something that's gonna be a fine product for what we, what, what the city of Shreveport wants, and also what Sportray
Good.
is earning at this point.
I agree with y'all. Okay, any more questions? If not, uh, Dale, please.
Ordinance one fifty-six amends Chapter one oh six of the Code of Ordinances relative to planned unit developments and planned building groups. This matter was previously postponed.
Any questions or discussion? Mike? I see your name. Okay, Mike is ready.
Hope everyone supports it tomorrow.
All right, Dale?
Ordinance one fifty-seven declares the city's interest in certain vacant lots as surplus, and our intention to donate certain vacant lots acquired by community development for Phase Three of Concordia Place Development to Habitat for Humanity of Northwest Louisiana. This matter is not to be adopted prior to December twenty-second, twenty fourteen.
Dale?
Uh, well, we still have to wait another, um, meeting on this, but this is, um, some land that has been, uh, acquired, like it said, through community development. Phase three of Concordia Place, uh, is the infill portion of it. Phase two is the, um, extension of the first part of Concordia Place, which is in the Stoner Hill community. Um, and so this is the third, this is the infill phase of it, so it would be going into the neighborhood, uh, to put houses back in place where there are currently empty lots.
Okay, uh, Dale, please?
Ordinance one fifty-eight amends the 2014 Retained Risk Fund Budget. This is to allow for the lump sum payments for the employees that are paid out of that fund, and that is four of them. Ordinance one fifty-nine amends the
Sam, you had it. Okay, because I, I was wondering if you was putting a little bit in there for Christmas party.
And ordinance one fifty-nine does the same thing for the Metropolitan Planning Commission for twenty fourteen, if the council recalls. If the council recalls, those two rules were not, uh, covered in the, uh, initial legislation, uh, provided by Councilman Webb that we amended to provide for those lump sum payments. So that will cover those two areas. Ordinance 160 zoning matter, C 6214. It's an ordinance submitting chapter 106 of the code of ordinances by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Ellaby Road and east floor North Lucas Road, Shreveport Kettle Parish from R8, Residence Agriculture District to B2, Neighborhood Business District Planned Unit Development.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, uh, ordinance 160 and 156 are both associated with the Forbing Life Project. And I know that we will have a number of people from out of town in our audience tomorrow. And what I would propose to do is when we get past public comments tomorrow, ask that we suspend the rules and take up both ordinance 156 and 160.
We'll be glad to entertain it tomorrow. Okay, Dale, please.
Ordinance 161 is zoning matter, C 7914. It's an ordinance submitting chapter 106 by rezoning property located on the south side of East 70th Street, 650 feet east of East Kings Highway, Shreveport Kettle Parish, from B3 Community Business District to B3E, Community Business Extended Use District for ice cream manufacturer distribution with site plan approval.
All right, now, Dale, you know, for ice cream, Ron and I gonna be for that. Cause we love ice cream.
Chairman, are, are we getting down to table legislation on the?
We have one more item, Mr. Wilson. Uh, ordinance 162 is zoning matter, C 8514. It's an ordinance submitting chapter 106 of the code of ordinances by rezoning property located on the north side of James Street, 170 feet east of Velva, Shreveport Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from R2 Suburban Multi Family Residence District to B3 Community Business District with site plan approval. That concludes the scheduled legislation, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? I don't, let me, let me give Jeff an opportunity, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, uh, included in a, this is part of the presentation that we heard a couple of weeks ago, um, for improvements around the Willis Night and North area. And if anybody has any questions, happy to answer them, but I think we're happy with it.
Uh, Willis, if you've been pegged with Willis Knight, you got any questions about that?
No, I, I appreciate the, uh, position of the council to allow Willis Knight to continue to grow.
That whole, that whole area over there, I mean, I, you were not here, but, um, uh, I think Willis Knight has done an excellent job now. Some of y'all might not be old enough, Ron and I, and maybe Art remembers when Willis Knight, uh, was probably about biggest two houses. And, uh, they've grown nine to, uh, a $4 billion company. And, and, uh, Mr. Tyler, that's, Willis Knight is gonna be one of your main economic engines, uh, in this city. You're looking at somebody who employs between, uh, uh, six and seven thousand people. And for a city like Shreveport, and cause they, they, uh, are in the top 50, uh, healthcare services in this country. And, and that's a, that's an honor that you can talk about. Uh, once you get on the plane with, uh, Mr. Bradford and y'all flying to New York or San Francisco and order to recruit businesses in here, you can tell them to, hey, look, uh, uh, we got one of the best school systems in the country. Uh, I know that because I ran it and, and we got one of the best healthcare, uh, systems in the, in the country here. So if your employees come here, they don't have to worry about, uh, uh, top notch healthcare services. So, uh.
Chairman.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to suspend the rules to bring, uh, go to do ABO appeals next, but I had a lady been waiting out there over four hours, so if, cause then we go into a property, uh, we're gonna be on that for a while, so.
Okay, if it's, if it's, did y'all, did y'all hear, Ron?
Well, I, we got some constituents that have been here for a while too.
Well, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules to bring up ABO.
Okay, you heard the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we would bring up the ABO hearing. Let's vote, please. Okay, it passes with a, huh? Okay, it passes with a seven oh vote, yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna, thank you. Tab number one is Ms. Jasmine Proctor. I do appreciate you hearing this case, she's, um, she's waiting to go to work depending on what the council decides tonight.
Oh, yes, where is she?
Right here.
Okay, come on up there, we'll just see you. I like to look at, uh, what I'm voting on.
She was denied for two different reasons. The first one was, um, she failed to put a couple of charges down, which I talked to her about on her application. And if, you look, I'm just not gonna go through each one, but there's actually four different charges she was denied for.
Is that number one? Excuse me, is that number one? You're saying she, but I'm saying he here.
Jasmine Proctor should be there.
Jasmine Proctor.
Jasmine Proctor, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, she had four different charges that would actually preclude her from an ABO card. I've talked to her extensively since then. I usually don't say things like this, but she's really cleaned up her record since then. Um, she's really tried to do the right thing and usually I just say, just don't give her a card because it doesn't meet the qualifications. But in this case, um, if you want to be lenient on her, um, the police probably have no problem with that and a site specific or something like that.
Um, Ms. Proctor, I know, uh, Ron is gonna make the motion, but we just want to at least give you a chance to say something. He's convinced me already, so. Come on up to the microphone and give us your name and.
My name is Jasmine Proctor. I know I have a bad, like, record, but I've been trying to change my life. Um, I feel like God gave me another chance to do things over the right way. So I'm asking you guys for a chance to, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm fully employed, work double shift, six days a week, I have no problem with that. I'm trying to support my family the right way. I know the first one is how I was living, but since I've been working, I haven't had any problems and I've been working over like five and a half months there, I haven't had any problems. I'm not late, I always go to work. I just would like the opportunity to keep getting my life on track.
Ms. Proctor, I believe that I am my brother's keeper, so Ron, I'll accept the motion.
Second. I can make a motion to grant her the ABO card.
It's been moved by Councilman Ron Webb, seconded by Councilwoman McCullough, did I hear that, Rose?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, all in favor of giving her her ABO card? And I know she's cleaned her life up and, and Dale, she goes to church on Sundays, I believe, and.
Harvest Temple.
And, and, and maybe, um, um, uh, Sunday school mornings and what is that, Wednesday nights to go back for a prayer meeting? And, and Ms. Proctor, we just appreciate you doing that, let's vote, please.
That's Southern Baptist.
Yeah, she's Southern Baptist.
At church like we do, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a Harvest Temple right there.
Yeah, see, she goes to church. I could, that Rose, I could, I didn't really know, but I could just look at and tell. Uh, that's a gift that I have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can just, I have that gift of reading. Okay, uh, seven, seven oh vote. Uh, Ms. Proctor, please, keep your life going in the pot.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Oh, you guys too, happy holidays.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Next one's tab number two. It's actually an alcohol permit appeal. It's Valencia on Cross Lake at 6100 South Lakeshore. We've had cases like this before where they failed to meet their 60-40 requirement. And the only reason they did not meet is cause.
The business person here?
Yes.
Yeah, she's here.
Okay, come on up.
And basically, the only reason they did not meet it is the way the ordinance is written.
All right.
Um, they actually met, if you discount in the food alcohol ratio, they're well within the 60-40 requirement. But the way the ordinance reads is all gross sales, so you have to take everything in account, which means all the money they pay to use the facility and everything. Because of that, um, she doesn't meet the 60-40 requirement. So until the ordinance gets rewritten, we'll probably have some more like this. But, um, in this case, she didn't meet it for the way the ordinance is written.
Rose out, and that, that's your district, isn't it?
Well, she lives in my district, but her business is in Sam's district.
What, what, what can we do to?
Where, no, you're out by Fort Park, no, that's in my district, but it's saying District G here.
Valencia on the lake.
Valencia on the lake, that's in my, that's in me, yeah.
Yeah.
It has District G here, though.
So you want to help, all right?
Oh, yes, because I've attended several functions. I mean, it's an event, um, type structure.
Well, you make the motion, I'll second it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it has been moved by Councilwoman McCullough, seconded by the chair, that we would do what, what needed.
Needs to be done in order for it to operate because she has a wonderful.
I, I almost asked Willie to vote on this, but I forgot, he can't vote until after 4:00.
I was thinking about letting him come and just fill in the rest of the time.
Yeah.
You think I can still get paid and let him just fill in for me?
Well, but he can't vote for you. Willie, if it wasn't for that, I'd, I'd let you come down here and, and heck, I'd pay Rose out of my pocket. But since we, since we can't do that, um, let's vote, please.
You know who this is. You remember Cynthia Mayshack, the Mayshack that taught him? That's Cynthia, the oldest girl.
Oh, you could.
Right there in MLK, right next to Willie Bradford's headquarters.
I knew all of those Mayshacks up there, Ms. Tyler, I taught a couple of those for a long time.
Well, that's her place, it's a real nice place out on the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I won't come out there and have me a Coke then, I'm, I'm, I'm a preacher's son, so I can't drink, you know, if I had a drink, Ms. Tyler, my daddy would turn over in his grave, so, you know, I'll come out and have a Coke. But yeah, Cynthia, I remember you.
Well, you'll help, the helper calls then.
And, uh, Councilman.
You got more sales on the company. Maybe have dinner. Well, if you have dinner, you can help the boy.
She lives off Hersody Wilson.
Look how good, you gonna get your street fixed.
Could I ask real quickly, Russ, can y'all provide, um, can y'all provide a suggestion for language that would, uh, or work with, um, you know, legal to determine, uh, language that would correct that?
So what has been done? I don't know where it's at right now, it's where he actually did it when the Hilton came up before you.
Yeah.
I suggested, so I'll make sure the city attorney gets a copy of it.
Great, yeah, cause we just need to get that passed, cause this will keep coming up to us again if we don't fix it.
Uh, Ms. Mayshack, uh, they will work.
Yeah, we don't make it happen.
I would say get in contact with Mr. Thompson and, and, uh, you can thank Rose for that. And Rose, I appreciate you bringing it to my memory.
Yeah, you talked to, to Ms. Mayshack.
Uh, this might be, this, this might have been a little.
Tell him his age now.
Oh, don't tell his age.
A little forgetting my memory and, you know, Ms. Mayshack, when you get my age too, you'll forget a few things now and then.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Merry Christmas.
Good family, there.
Happy New Year.
Good family.
Your family was in a lot.
How you doing, neighbor?
Oh, that's your neighbor too?
Yeah, he live on Hersody Wilson too, that's her husband.
I'd like to. Make a motion to go back to, next time, we'll be again, Mr. Sanders.
We're on property standards, yeah. I'll second your motion, the attorney.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and seconded, we'll return back, let's vote, please. All right, we back. Oh, I thought I had known. Yeah. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Shannon, on the, uh, table items, uh, the property standards, I mean, uh, community development, what resolution of the 195 and the.
For the action plan?
Yeah.
We ready, Bonnie? Yes, yes.
What is it, one what now?
195. 195, it's item number seven. Uh, we need to bring that off the table and to.
Can I get a motion?
No, no.
That's right, tomorrow, okay.
Thanks, Mr. Thompson.
All right, uh, appeals.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Good evening.
I like your new, I like your new glasses. They look nice on you.
Thank you. Uh, our first case is, uh.
Uh, Ms. Tyler, I've learned that you always show the ego of the ladies that come down here. Ms. Farnell, I like your glasses.
Thank you, sir.
That's all right.
Uh, our first case, um.
You know, uh, B, I have to be a little careful, cause I don't know whether my wife be listening in on this. And, and, and.
She just texted and told me to get on you.
I'm too old to be going through divorce court.
Told you to quit talking too much, if it don't with me. Good times are charms, Mr. Tyler.
That's all right. That's all right, might be a charm for you, but it won't be one for me. I'm smart, I don't got to be henpecked now. I used to didn't be, uh, Ron, I used to didn't be henpecked, but damn, I don't got to be henpecked now. You know, once you get over 60.
Louis say as long as your hen that's doing the pecking is all right.
Well.
That's what my husband say.
Okay, well, I'm just, I just know I'm over 60, so I'm henpecked, Willie.
I mean, I got that.
Willie be 60 soon. Willie about 56 now.
And property standards, what's coming up?
All right, Ms. Farnell.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, our first case is 1622 Crestwell, the owner is present. This is in Councilman Efferson's area, as you can see from the screen.
Having, is he here?
Yes, he's right here.
Right where, oh, come on around.
Where we are right now, uh, the garage needed to be torn down. This was a structure that Mr. Smith was going to rehab or demo. However, uh, some issues have come up. Uh, Councilman Efferson, you and I have talked and I have agreed to give him 45 days to find some alternative measure to.
So I'd like to make that motion, thank you, Dorothy, and thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, I'd like to make the motion to give him 45 days to figure out.
Okay, it's been moved, uh, uh, my Councilman Efferson, uh, seconded by Councilman Webb today. I went, okay, we were given 45 days. Yeah, let's vote, please.
Mayor, we have some.
Well, did not expect today's session, that would be, tomorrow, we make those provisions. Wasn't expecting to be here quite this long today.
Was that 45 days to provide a plan?
Well, now.
Yeah, he has, he has 45 days to, um, come back and check with Dorothy to make sure that he's in compliance or has made other arrangements.
Right. He is trying to.
He's gonna sell the property.
So we're giving him, since he has demolished the garage, which we wanted him to do, we are allowing him 45 days to.
Just the 45 days postponed.
To postpone, yes, sir. 45 days to postpone. Our next case is 3815 Cornell Drive, Mr. Jesse Watson, he is present. Councilwoman McCullough, this is in your area.
Is he in here?
Yes, sir.
Come on up to the front there.
Coming up, sir. This was, uh, the burned structure. All of the wall studs have been replaced, as you can see. The owner has removed the damage, uh, lift off the carport and he has shown significant process. So we are.
Progress.
Progress, yes, ma'am. So we're asking that, uh, you give him additional 60 days to complete.
Uh, Jesse, did you go to school on a couple of those?
Actually went to Mississippi College.
Okay, okay, how about your, how about your undergrad?
Undergrad.
I mean, I mean, did you, you know, like, high school?
High school.
Mississippi.
Oh, okay, then, okay.
Mississippi.
Yeah.
I've been at Galilee Baptist Church for 20 years, so.
Oh, okay, then, okay, okay. Been moved by Councilman, uh, Rose McCullough.
Second, right.
Oh, I mean, who was the move, who, who, who made the motion?
I made the second.
Okay, uh, Ron made the second. All in favor, let's vote, please. And that was for what, 45 days?
Sixty days.
Extension of 60 days. Seem like you're doing a nice job, Dan.
That's fine, too.
All right. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
And when you get it done, I'm gonna come out with Rose and we have a cup of coffee here.
He gonna buy it, I'm just gonna come and have coffee and look at it. He gonna buy it, and I'm just gonna come and have coffee and look at it.
Oh, Rose, I thought you was gonna buy.
That's in your community.
Yeah, that's in your community, Rose. Put your money back into the community.
That passes.
Ron, Ron did. Ron seconded.
It's, she was saying it's seven.
Oh, a seven oh vote, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. B, I tell you, I don't hear well. I see better. I'm just kidding, B, I hear well.
Our next case is in Councilman Shine's area again. This is, uh, fifty-nine thirty-six Second Street. Owner is not present. I spoken with him. Um, he has requested that, um, we proceed with demolition. He does not have any intent to rehab or demolish the structure. Um, and what I would ask is that we proceed with demolition. He will have thirty days to appeal.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved by the chair, second by Councilwoman McCullough, that we would go through what the property standards committee has suggested.
Okay.
All right, seven oh vote.
Our next case, just one second.
Oh, Jackie.
Yes.
I'm sorry. You know me sometime. I might miss one or two.
By the way, no need for.
Our next case is eight twenty-two Lake Better. This is in Councilman Efferson's area.
Is a person here?
Uh, no, this is, um, a rehab. We are asking that you overturn the property standards board order for demolition and request that the case be closed. I would like to show you, though, some.
Yeah, I've seen this. It looks really good now, doesn't it? Uh, yeah.
Is that a motion, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to overturn the property standard board and close the case.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Efferson, second by Rose, and I hear you.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, uh, second by Councilwoman McCullough.
Yeah, it is now. Looks great.
Close this case. All right. He's ready for a third.
Is that beautifying Joe's district to become into your district? Is that what I'm understanding, Jeff? That can be in your district after the. But it's in my district. Yeah, that's in my district now. Although the owner, although the owner lives in Joe's district, but the property is in my district.
Yeah, Olive Men a little messy right now, but that's all right.
It went crazy.
Now, James, you see, you got to be worried with a little messiness coming from Olive over here. He didn't mean any harm. All right.
The next case is in Councilman Shine's area, six hundred West Seventy-third Street.
Is the owner here?
I don't think he is. The owner has not made any improvements in the last, since the last, um, time we met. Um, so what I am requesting that we continue this case for thirty days so that I can make contact with him.
So moved. Sam, okay, Mike, seconded. Uh, let's vote, please. It's a thirty days extension. All right, uh, seven oh vote.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I got to stay up and down.
Our next case is a bill dispute, uh, twenty-five thirteen Willie Mays.
Andrews.
Uh, Mr. Andrews and Mr., um, this is in Councilwoman McCullough's area. Just let me say that, um, this case started back in two thousand thirteen. Um, just trying to get this up so that I can. Okay. That's a lot of, um, trashing, I mean, uh, limbs and trees that was cut. What happened was, we sent him a letter because there was trees. We wanted the grass cut, we wanted the fence rolled clean. And instead, and he did get notice, and what happened was, um, there were trees that was cut down.
Mine.
Once the trees was cut down, we opened another case, which was the second one, and. The first one was in Octo-, uh, the first one that we had was, uh, June of thirteen. So we closed that one out because there was a partial compliance, because then there were trees cut down on the property, and so we had to go back in and write it up again for a care premise. Uh.
We're gonna let you talk.
So.
He had his note.
Mr. Andrews, all of these things were on there. Mr. Andrews did a partial compliance.
He got everything.
We waited several months before we ended up having to send him another notice, which was the third one that we initialized. And since that time, nothing was done. He cut the trees down. It remained as it was. We then, since he failed to comply, what we did was we, uh, had a bid of several contractors on this property. The lowest bid that we received was six thousand dollars.
Oh.
I understand, I know that he's saying that he called to ask for Public Works to come by. I did contact Public Works, Mr. Fred Williams. There was no, um, call that was made, he said, as far as them coming to this property. Additionally, the property, um, the trees and debris was never placed on the right away at all during this time. It was still on the property. So even at that, Public Works would not have come on private property. So, uh, we abated, we abated, uh, and this is what, oh, we abated the property, cleaned it up, and that's what it looks like now. Incidentally, we did get a lot of complaints on this property. It is near a church, and as I said, he did have time to comply. I did tell Mr. Andrews that we could assist him with his, with the cost of this, because we do have a payment plan scheduled, but we did due diligence. He was notified, and as I said, this was an incident that started from two thousand thirteen. Um, so that's where the problem with the bill as far as the cost, and that's what we, um, that's what property standards did on this.
But to the council, I think Mr. Andrews' concern is, and I think maybe.
Mr. Andrews, come to the mic, please.
I think his biggest concern is, based on reckless records, uh, and I have some concerns about it too as well, um, is when he called, uh, Public Works, wasn't it?
No.
That was a.
Called for, uh, Terrence Green.
Yeah, Terrence Green. Solid waste. Terrence Green, um.
Ms. McCullough just want to know, Terrence doesn't work in solid waste.
I mean, it wasn't solid waste, it was, uh, he talked with Terrence Green, according to the record. He talked with Terrence Green. And the one thing that concerns me is that when he inquired about, um, I guess, getting, having the trees picked up, he was, he wasn't told, well, you know, we can't come by and pick up.
Excuse me, please.
Let me say this. Why don't we let you give your version, and then we'll let the councilwoman come in.
Yeah, let him go ahead.
There were trees on this property that I had cut down, and they were removed. Now, there were branches left from this removal, and those were put in piles. My idea was to get the truck so I can have these piles of branches put on the truck. I never could get the truck. When I finally got to speaking to Mr. Terrence Green, he said, I need to look at the lot. Later, he called me back and said, I've been by there, and I found it to be, quote, "quite much." Then I did not hear any more from Mr. Green, nor Ms. Farnell, about the use of the truck. Instead, they got a contractor to move the rest of those branches without my knowing about it. I was simply trying to get the use of the truck so I can get those piles of branches that will still remain. The trees were moved. I paid to have the trees removed. What was left, I had planned to get, make use of the truck. I would have some men to load the truck, getting the rest of these branches. But before I can get that done, they got a bid and had somebody to go there and clear those branches up without my knowledge, you see. And then I inquired when we had this meeting with you, Mr. McCullough.
About a month ago, that was in.
Yes. Uh, I was, I explained that I would like to have the bids. Was it a bidding process? He said, yes. I, I finally got copies of the bid. There are three sheets representing bidders. S.A. Doral and Associates, which has the address of four thousand five Lakeshore Drive, was one of the bids. And on this bid, it shows the Willis Street, six thousand dollars. Then there's a, at two thousand five Seymour. I have no idea what this reference is here with this Seymour, four thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, the other bid, Lakeshore Development Enterprises, which has the same address, four thousand five Lakeshore Drive, as the Doral bid has. On the Lakeshore bid, there's no amount of the bid. You just say no bid, and this Seymour thing is still on this particular one, but for four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And then finally, the person who got the bid was H&amp;H Lawn Service with six thousand dollars on this bid. Now, I was under the impression that bids were done in, there were three bids. Normally, you would have three bids. I have three papers, but one bid says no bid. And the other one, I could never even called, uh, Better Business Bureau to try to locate this Doral bid that has this address, four thousand five Lakeshore Drive, the same as.
The first bidder.
The same as the Lakeshore, and.
So it seems like you got only one bid.
Yes.
So, but my concern is, Councilman Shine, is that not, I'm not, I'm not directing it toward any, I'm not, I don't wanna call names, but I don't know if you wanna say, I'm looking at it on a professional level, but if I tell you it's a bit much, I mean, that's not good enough. I need to be able to say, you know, you don't have it piled correctly, or, you know, it's a bit much, we can't pick it up.
But I mean, that's not, but that's not property standards, right? You, you're not, he's talking to property standards in this discussion, not solid waste. So let's make sure we're clear on that, because what, what one person is saying is in a context of one thing, not in the context of the person who's coming to pick it up.
But we should have been in position to give him a referral. I mean, if, if, if I knew that he was talking to the wrong department, I'd say, well, sir, we can't help you. Let me direct you to solid waste. But the city of Shreveport didn't do that. Instead, we went ahead and we, you know, we collected the trees and we put a six thousand dollar on them. And based on what he has, we only have two, two, I mean, we only have one bid there. So I'm just a bit concerned that he has that amount attached to his property now, and I just don't feel like we handle it in a business manner. We didn't handle that in a businesslike way.
Uh, Ms. McCullough, again, like the mayor said the other day with me, and he was agreeing, I said, I don't know what's happening, but I agree with you again. Uh, uh, I really think as a city, and especially when it's not a life or death situation, uh, 'cause I don't, I'm, I'm not saying that Mr. Andrews isn't a rich man, but I'm just saying that, uh, we need to make sure that our citizens understand.
Are educated and directed in the right direction.
Especially when we get ready, uh, uh, put a bill on them.
Yeah, that bid.
Put a, put a bill on them, 'cause, uh, I get a little old retirement checking, I know, um, and, 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 you know, I know Cedric would just love to knock me out, but I'd be down here in his face, you know, and then I'd have another hospital bill to pay off.
No, I don't, yeah.
Uh, now, unless Willie, he can think about his method of upbringing. Now, if he can think about his method of upbringing, then he'd throw his arms around me and hug me. And, but I, I, uh, yeah, Ms. Farnell, I do agree with, with Ms. McCullough at this particular point. Uh, but, you know, I think six thousand dollars is, is, would be a pretty good look. Uh, uh, 'cause Mr. Andrews, you look, he might be like me on a, on a, on a pension check, and, you know, pulling six thousand dollars out of a pension check for picking up some limbs is a.
But even, man said, even besides that, see, I had planned to get those branches as, they moved the large trees off the property. I paid to get that done.
Did they let you know before, did the city let you know that we're gonna send somebody out there?
No.
If you don't pick them up?
No.
Send somebody out?
No, I never could get the truck.
Right.
And I never heard back from this Mr. Terrence Green, who's in charge of the truck, was my understanding.
In charge of the truck. He's with property standards, but I would have wanted him to direct you.
But who removed the trees? The person who cut down the trees?
I had someone, I hired somebody to cut down the.
Tree.
The, the trees, and they hauled the trees off the property.
They would, why didn't they take the branches off?
Well, that was the agreement, that they would haul and they would put the branches in piles so I could get somebody to take the branches, put them on the truck that I could never could get, you see.
What was the timeline between the two? The length of time that after they hauled the trees off before they came out?
Oh, I don't know exactly, because I heard from a friend who, who had passed by the property, and he told me that this truck had moved those branches off of the property.
Right.
Yeah, but when you had the tree, when you paid someone to move the trees?
Should have removed.
How long was it before we came and did what we did?
I don't know exactly.
I mean, a week, two months, three months?
Oh, probably, uh, about maybe, what, three or four weeks, I would imagine.
Well, you know, my, my position was, it was not a life or death situation. And, um, uh, Ms. McCullough, you know, I, you might have to ask the city attorney what we can do, but I don't see a good selling you with that kind of debt.
Especially when we have, we don't have the three bids. If we, but in terms of the bid process, we still didn't get three bids.
Just hold on one minute. The other point is, I think you should have been notified.
Yes.
You should have been notified that you got X number of days to move those limbs, to clear that up. And if you didn't do it, then I can understand. But my point is that they did not notify you.
Right.
May I, may I?
Yes.
Um.
Uh, uh, Ms. Andrews, move to the side, let her get in the mic.
I just want the record to reflect that we did notify Mr. Andrews. We notified Mr. Andrews three times by certified mail. Mr. Andrews signed each one of the notices. And we did everything legal, we did everything by procedure, we did due diligence. With him signing that, he had noticed and had the time to abate the violation.
Well, Mr. Andrews, I have, wait, hold, 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 hold. I have to take another look at it, then, if they notified you by, in writing, that you had X number of days to clear it up.
That's why I hired people to cut those trees down, remove the large branches, and the rest of the stuff, he, uh, was put in piles. And I had planned to get those piles on the truck that I would get from the city, but I never could get that.
The city doesn't.
And I don't.
I wasn't expecting the city to move it. I would have my men to move those branches to the truck, which was.
Now, what you wanted was a trailer. You wanted, you wanted Public Works to bring a trail out there and let you.
Pile them on the trailer.
Yeah, and let you pile them on the trailer.
That's what I talked to Mr. Terrence Green about.
But.
He said he would go and look at.
But look here. But look here. Forget about Mr. Terrance Green, because you got the wrong department. And I guess Mr. Terrance Green should have told you, "Ms. Andrews, I'm sorry, but that's not what... That's not a part of what I do."
He said, "I'm going out there and look at the lot." And then he called me back and said, "This, I've been out there, and this is quite much."
And, Ms. Andrews, I understand that, but we're trying to tell you that Terrance Green, that was not his... You see the man sitting right there behind you? See Mr. Harris right there? That comes onto his department, not Terrance Green. You see the lady that's sitting right... Standing right there beside you? That's Terrance Green's boss.
Councilwoman Shine?
Yes.
But what should we have been... I mean, as a city, we were obligated to redirect him to the right department.
I agree on that. That's what I'm saying. I agree on that. I agree with you.
And with him being a senior citizen, you're looking at him.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
You know...
Because he doesn't look as old as I do, but, uh... And Ron, Ron, don't look at me like that. I'm not a senior citizen yet.
I was going to say, I agree with you.
He was actually trying to fix the... Correct the problem.
I'm just 57, mister.
I just wish that we could have directed him in the right direction.
Well, he's got his numbers back.
So legally, what can be done here now? Is Attorney Scott here? Can she help us out?
Oh, Mrs. Ter... If I may, just on behalf of the administration, you know, on all these cases, the thing that we tell the department to do is to follow their procedures. If they do that, they're fine. If the council chooses to do anything differently in that, then certainly that's within the council's purview. But I confirm with Ms. Farnell, the notice went out, as usual, the cards were signed. You know, I don't know about the conversation with Mr. Green and what may have happened there, but, you know, it's hard to say that there was something flawed in the process when there really wasn't. If the gentleman needs some relief, we understand that, and the council should grant the relief. But it's not that the department did something wrong in this case. They did the notice, they were... Perhaps it's under... It sounds like he didn't quite understand how the process works, or that the city couldn't send a trailer that he could then have somebody load the truck for him.
It sounds like you didn't have one.
But that in terms of process...
No, you don't have bids you got.
If you request three, Ms. McCullough, and you only get two, you only got two. You don't have to get... You request them, but if someone chooses not to bid, they choose not to bid. And you don't hold up the whole process until you actually get the number of the three bids.
But I think what we're getting to too, Mr. Sibley... I think what we're getting to too... Hold up, hold up, Ms. Ellington. I think what we're getting to too is, the only way you can find out whether the city went through the proper procedures is to ask questions.
Exactly.
And when you ask questions, and I've said this time and time again, that's just like... And I'm used to people asking questions, Ms. Tyler, because when you're in your classroom, you ask your teacher... You ask your students, "Now, son, if you don't understand, ask questions." Don't sit back there, you know, asking a question when test time come up and you make a zero on the test, and you say, "Well, I didn't understand that."
And it sounds like he didn't quite understand everything that was going on, but I just wanted to...
And he probably did. He probably did, and that's why we're asking the questions, so we can get at the...
Councilwoman Shine?
At the bottom of it. Yes, ma'am.
Can we get Attorney Scott to look at the bids and see?
Uh...
To revisit the bids?
It's... That's a lot of money for what I heard was done.
Right.
So I said, the only question in my mind is, can that be reduced some kind of way? I guess that's really what I'm trying to figure out.
That's what we're going to get to.
That's a lot of money for what I heard was done out there.
That's exactly what we're getting ready to get to now. And let me ask the mayor, because the city attorney works for the mayor and the council. Dale, is it all right if the city attorney comes up and say, "I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, is it all right if the city attorney comes up and tells us what legal course we have in order to give him some..."
I think even Julie can do that as well.
Oh, Julie, you can do that? Okay, okay, well, Judy... I'm sorry, Judy's up here. Come on, Judy.
Well, I guess what I would say about it is that, under the ordinance, because there's an appeal process, the council has the ability to affirm, modify, reverse the decision of the board. You shouldn't do it just for everybody that comes up and asks. You should have a rational basis for it. If you think that this is a unique situation, it's not the same, so that, you know, the next person that comes to ask, you don't necessarily... You're not necessarily going to have to grant a reduction to everybody that comes and asks. But if you have... If you feel like it's a unique situation, and you have a rational basis for it, you know, I think that's probably something that is within your authority.
Let me say this, and then we come to Oliver Rose. I would hope that you made that, because that was a rational basis. That's what I accepted, and this was a unique situation.
We would like the legals to take a look at the bids.
Well, that's the other thing that I was going to say is...
Yeah.
I don't believe that there is any legal requirement to get the three bids. I think property standards, it's a service. It's not a public work. So I think property standards does that in order to try to be fair.
Hundred ten thousand.
I don't think that is decisive in the case.
Oliver.
Yeah, I might get a different reading here. To me, without... It's difficult for us to see pictures, and I don't know what Terrance had said to you. But that number, that $6,000 number, without me knowing anything, and that seems like a high number for branches. Now, if you said, "That sounds like high to me," I would have guessed that would be a $3,000 cost item. I'd turn around and propose that we quit... We only make it a $3,000 burden to the gentleman. But there's got to be some number of what... And maybe you say $6,000 is really what that type of thing costs, but clearly, that's a high number for moving branches.
With those, Mayor, let's speak... This process started with the grass cutting and picking up branches. Mr. Andrews cut down the trees. We didn't ask for the trees being cut down, and that's what was removed. There was trees and things there, and there were piles of them. Yes, some of his people may have come and moved some, but there was an abundant of them still left, and it was a large acreage, so...
So it was trees and grass cutting and a whole...
Yes, that's what this all started at, so...
Okay, so that's the part that I was having a little trouble... Now, I can't see it well enough on the photo to tell if it's six and branches, seconds and...
Can you give us some pictures? Maybe pass them around?
Yeah, because, you know, I'm getting old.
But it was hard to see up there.
Yeah. Uh, did y'all hear what Oliver said?
Yeah, my pajamas on by now.
But you see what I'm saying? I thought we were just talking about picking up 15 branches.
Well, the results...
Councilwoman Shine?
Yes.
Of those.
Now, from just making... Just observing everything and sitting in on the meetings, it appears as if Mr. Andrews was trying to help solve the problem. I mean, it doesn't look as if though he was just sitting idle and doing nothing. So I just would like to make a motion if it's in order to reverse the decision of the board.
Okay. It has been moved by Councilwoman McCullough.
How much were the administrative... Are there some administrative fees or costs involved?
Yeah. One point of clarification, Dorothy, you need to clarify what he's actually being assigned, if I'm not mistaken, Dorothy, is what the city paid to have the field debated. So I don't know that it's a board decision. They just simply be waiving that fee. And Dorothy, please clarify that so the council knows exactly what they're doing.
What we had asked to do was to cut and remove all grass and overgrowth from off the fence, rowing away from the property. Remove all piles of downed trees. That's what these were. Tree logs, the sticks, the limbs, the branches away from the property. And the pictures do reflect that this was a large acreage and the piles of trees that were there.
And what does the $6,000 represent, Dorothy?
It also represents the administrative costs.
No, what does it represent in terms of what was paid? What is established that for the council, please? The contractor was paid...
Oh, the contractor was paid for the removal of all of this. He was paid $6,000.
So you're asking what the council would vote on is to waive that fee?
Or to reduce it.
Or to reduce it.
Right.
Okay, plus, there's an administrative fee on top of that, correct?
That administrative fee is $150. So the $6,000 represents everything that the contractor did, the hauling it off to the dumpster, the cleaning. And he actually leveled and made every... The ground leveled and everything, but he removed everything there. So that's what the $6,000 was cut.
So he did some dirt work also?
Not more dirt work. He leveled the property with everything there. It's more or less like taking your track hoe and just moving it around. That's what it was.
What, moving the dirt around?
So, Councilwoman Shine?
Yes.
I want to make a motion to waive the fee, all with the exception of the administrator's administrative costs.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
It has been moved by Councilwoman McCullough, been seconded by the chair, that we would waive some of the fees.
All but the administrative costs.
All but the administrative costs. And, Mr. Andrews, I don't know how this is going to come out, but let this be a lesson. Now, new administration coming in, we don't know what their policies will be. But anytime you get a notice from the city, uh, parish, or state, any governmental agency, if I was you, I would... I'd make it my business to contact them as soon as I could. And I'd make it my business to...
Can I see the pictures?
To contact the right people as soon as I could.
Okay, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to reduce his fee from $6,150 to $2,150.
Okay. Wait a minute. Rose, did you hear the substitute motion?
What was that now?
Uh, tell them again. I'll sort of come directly out of my...
My substitute motion is to reduce the fee from $6,150 to $2,150.
Second.
And there is a lot of work that needed to be done, and...
It is...
It is beyond confusion that somebody could mistake that.
Yeah, some of it need to be covered.
Right. Let me carry the motion through until we get to, I see, any discussion. Uh, Mr. Andrews, did you understand his motion?
Yes, I understood his.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you understood it. Now, I'm not asking you to say nothing. Not right now, I'm asking you that, you know...
Mr. Terrell, can I ask one other question?
Yeah, I tell you, let me do this. Let me take it to him, and I'm going to get through to when I say question.
It's part of my vote, though, that's what I mean.
Okay, okay.
He could still qualify for some kind of payment plan on this, Ms. Farnell?
Yes, sir, he can.
Okay.
Okay, it has been moved... I mean, it is a motion that we would give you some help, some reduction from $6,000 to... What is it, two and a half?
No. $2,150.
Okay, $2,150. Uh, and it was seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Now, do we have any more discussion on this? All right, Mr. Andrews, I'm going to ask you for your comment on this. I don't usually do this, but I'm going to ask you for your comment again on this.
I had all intentions of getting that light cleared. At first, I had the trees cut, and I had them moved. They moved the trees. I paid for that moving of the trees. They left branches in piles. My plans were to get the truck and put the piles of branches on the truck. I contacted a first... This Mr. Terrance Green. He said, "Okay, I have to look at..."
I keep on telling you that it does not matter what Mr. Terrance Green said. That was the wrong person. I just wanted you to know... I wanted to make sure that you understood the motion. All right, let's move on to the motion.
It's a substitute motion.
It's a substitute motion. A substitute motion. All right. Uh, the substitute motion passes with a six vote for and one vote against. So, uh, uh, Mr. Andrews, since you're like I am, you own a fixed income, I would advise you to get with Ms. Farnell and see if you can work out a payment plan like I do when I go to Sears, buy some tires. I'd work out a payment plan. I'm not like Mr. Sibley over there. I don't have the money to go and pay for tires cash. Okay.
You got to show it.
Oliver, you keep on being messy over there. All right. Thank you all. Is that...
No, no, sir. That was really...
Your miles.
Mr. Terrell?
Yes, sir.
Dorothy, Ms. Andrews, just want to make sure. Are you clear, Ms. Andrews, in terms of the action the council's just taken?
I understand the bill has been reduced to $2,150.
Now, 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 hold, hold, Ms. Andrews, now, any other... Explain it to the mayor there, because we're going to move on. We've given you an hour almost, so we're going to move on. And that's why I asked you if you understood. And I don't know whether the mayor was listening to me when I asked you if you understood. So you said... Yeah, Mr. Mayor, he said that he understood, so, uh, uh, uh... Ms. Farnell, let's move on, please.
Yes, sir. The next case is in Mr. Shine's area.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, y'all got to hold it past. We didn't... We do that in the church tomorrow. All right, go on, Ms. Farnell.
It's 3932 Miles Street, Mr. William Fouchon.
Is Williams here?
Yes, sir, he's here. Mr. William Fouchon is here. Mr. Fouchon, this is the way the house looked prior to... As you can see, he's living in that, and he purchased it, and it looked like that the last time we were here. We had suggested that if he would just remove some of the back portion, which was the worst part. So what he has done today, he has removed the back part of the house. He has, if you can see the back part there, what he's done is the entire back that was rotted has been removed from the house, and it is in a state of demolition. The debris has been hauled... Is being hauled off slowly under the black weather stripping. The owner has replaced the...
Yeah, pictures of the rest?
Are you expecting that to be on the monitor?
Yes.
It ain't on there.
Charles or whoever's in back?
Okay.
There we go.
See, he's removed the part that was on there before when he came. So he is working on the property. He's shown a lot of progress. That inside part, he's replaced it with wall studs, and he's slowly re... Removing things. So what I'm doing is requesting, since he is complying, 60 days.
I'll come up to the mic there, so he can hear what you're saying.
I was just trying to see...
And wherever you look at it again.
As far as the scraping and everything for the house, I had called, like, Sheriff Williams and a couple other paint companies. They told me the best time to paint is in the summertime, because, like I said, the coal air and the dew and all that. Instead of make the paint, I'd be wasting money around this time. But other than just the back part, that's basically all the thing I'm... I'm going up with the back part of it, and I'm closing it on out, so I can put it off or pop the standards and clean it up. I mean, it's been successful. It's just been slow because of the weather, you know? It's been some real bad weather. So, uh, I just need some time, you know, just, you know, because, you know, I had to quit my job.
All right, is 60 days enough, or you need some more time?
It's enough to see if he's making progress.
Well, that's true, but I just want to give him an opportunity.
That's what I wanted to see, the progress on it. I wanted to see how much progress he's going to make on it and having to come back and...
I agree, but I just wanted to reach out to him and...
Yes, sir.
And extend an opportunity for him to say how many days, because I wouldn't want a pastor that had to leave out now and say, "We're not sensitive to your needs."
Okay, well, all I need just is taking off demolition.
Okay, now, with 60 days, but yeah, I guess you're still on... Will 60 days be enough time for you to make an effort in doing what you need to do?
I didn't replace all the windows and repair all the floors. Only thing I have to do is just go up to the back part of the house, put the wood on the back part of the house.
But you're still not answering my question. You're telling me what you have done. I don't want to know that. I want to know if 60 days, or 50 days, or 70 days, give me a number.
Well, um, I was trying to see if I can get 180 days.
Now, we want to look... Now, what we're going to do, we're going to give you 60 days. We're going to give you 60 days, and then you come back in 60 days, and we will see whether you made any kind of progress. You don't need 180 days for somebody to come out there and see that you're making an effort at it.
But I had to quit my job, so I had to go back and look for a job. Now, I mean, it's just been certain I had to do to it. You know, I don't have the work. I had to stop working in order to have a place to stay.
Is that where you live?
Yeah, that's where I stay.
You live in there?
Yeah, I stay there.
Okay, then, uh, Ms. Farnell, we'll give you 120 days. And 120... 120 days. And, uh, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty days, uh, uh, give me your name again.
William Fouchon.
William Fouchon.
Mr. William Fouchon. Mr. William Fouchon, you come back in a hundred and twenty days, and we'll take another look at it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, you can.
What all I need, what all I need for us...
Thank you, Williams. And you, you're, you're a nice-looking young man, so somebody oughta hire you out there. There's nothing just for you to be around so they can look at you. Yes. All right. All right.
Uh, the next case is fifteen twenty-four Gilbert, and it is in Councilman Efferson, Mr. David McGee.
Is, is the owner here?
This is a, uh, structure that...
You said Gilbert, is that, is that Oliver's? That's Jeff's?
That's Councilman Efferson.
Okay. Is he here? Is he, is the owner here?
He's not in the chamber.
No, sir. It struck if that was him.
I don't think so.
Okay.
He filed an appeal, and there was a, um, fire some time ago. The problem with this is, I think that he's filed the appeal because he doesn't believe that he's responsible for it because of the fact that he's a tax buyer, and he had requested that the city attorney, um, look at this, and she's prepared to give a statement about it because he purchased two properties.
Well, he, he has an interest in it, isn't he?
Yes, he does.
That's the nature of the beast.
Well, then, yeah, I, my motion is to uphold the decision of the property.
Second.
Okay, been moved by Councilman Efferson, uh, seconded by Councilman Webb, that we would uphold, uh, your decision. Let's vote, please. All right. That's it. Dale, I used to be strong enough to do it on one leg, but since I done got past sixty, now I don't know.
How can the guy live on four thirty-four windows and not go by the property?
Ms. Farnell?
The next one is in Councilwoman McCullough's area. This is thirty-one twenty-eight Montana. This is, uh, owned also by Mr. David McGee. He purchased that in a tax sale. Uh, this property, we had it up for demolition. Uh, there's a lot of repairs that have to be done. And we had it up for demolition, to repair the window. He has, uh, placed the ceiling, the roof is deteriorating, and it's also a health and safety issue because all the doors and the windows are open, so, um...
Rose, what are you suggesting?
I'm just wanting to know what the history is, I mean, I mean...
Bought it at a tax sale.
Oh, he bought it at a tax sale?
Yeah.
Did he put the bricks around, did he put the bricks around there?
No, this was already, he has not done anything to the house. This is the same man, and he's asking the same question as to why he should be responsible. That's why he appealed.
Okay.
Asking why he should be responsible to do anything to the property because he has a tax interest.
Moved to demolish.
Okay, been moved by Council, uh, McCullough to demolish, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Uh, let's vote, please. All right, seven oh vote to, uh, demolish, B.
That's the end of, uh, cases that I have, sir.
Mr. Terrence, I want, uh, I want to...
Get one more, Ms. Farnell.
I, I, I cut through, uh, Vine Street, Jeff, where we had that house here last year that they wanted to refurbish it, and we said, "Tear it down."
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The second story's caved in and still sitting there. What's being done with it?
What's being done is, they filed an appeal to first JDC. We've gone to court several times.
Good, great.
And it's, we're almost at the end now of it. Um, and as soon as legally possible, we will be getting some bids and demolishing that structure.
I figured it must have gone to court.
Yes, sir. And she, she filed the appeal herself, so...
Wow. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, and...
Anything further?
And Ms. Tyler, you and, uh, Mr. Bradford, James, y'all understand that a lot of decisions that we make here, people appeal and they go to the court.
To the court.
Right, so that's why we can't move right off. Okay, uh, Ms. Farnell, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, if I don't see you no more before Christmas, Merry Christmas. And if I run into Santa Claus, uh, I'll tell him, "I mean, Mr. Bradford, uh, think that you've done a fine job, and you might need some for Christmas."
Thank you.
Bradford, you see, I obligated you because I don't have no money.
Starting.
All right. Uh, Dale, please.
Yes, sir.
What else we...
I think that could close all the property standards.
Yes, it does.
Do you have a question about these two MPC appeals?
Yeah, we have MPC.
Okay.
So what, I mean, whether it's in Joe's district or Jeff's district?
I can't open it. I mean, that's the first I'm seeing it.
I can't, I can't open it, and we got, it's like the day of the, it's like the day of the mobile home. That's all I can say. We hadn't seen a mobile, we seen one mobile, we got three of them in one day.
Uh, I, I think, uh, uh...
They probably gone home.
We had rep a man...
No, they wouldn't be here today.
Uh, yeah, we want... Yeah, BAC, uh, eighty-two fourteen. Uh, uh... I thought we voted to send it back to the, uh, to the, uh, MPC, uh, Mr. Thompson, did we?
Yeah, but this, this is different, Mr. Shine.
This is who?
This is a different case.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, for Monday, December the twenty-second.
Oh, it is. Oh, okay. Oh, we got plenty of time, okay. It didn't show it on the thing, and I couldn't open my, couldn't open my deal.
Yeah, for some reason, for some reason, most of the attachments from any of the appeals today, I've had a real hard time opening. I mean, some of them have opened, but I don't know what.
Tonight, I couldn't even read it last night, so...
There's something wrong, or some of the attachments are being funny.
Uh...